Would call to order the study session of the Newport Beach City Council of May 10th, 2016. Roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Okay, first, current business. Clarification of items on the consent calendar. Any comments, council members? No? We now have a proclamation recognizing Poppy Month, and I will read the proclamation. Do we have someone here to receive our proclamation? Nope? Okay, we will do that later. National Works Week proclamation. I know we have someone here to talk about that. Wait, hold on, let me s— okay. Mr. Webb, let me read the proclamation. Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our residents' everyday lives and serve as the foundation to society, and whereas the support of an understanding and informed citizenry and elected officials is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets and highways, harbors and waterways, public buildings, parks, and solid waste collection, and whereas the health, safety, and comfort of this city depends on these facilities and services, and the quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction, are vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works and municipal operations officials and staff, and whereas the efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel who staff public works and municipal operations departments is materially influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform, and whereas the year 2016 marks the 56th Annual National Public Works Week sponsored by the American Public Works Association, and this year's theme is "Public Works Always There." Well, I'm glad to know that. Now, therefore, I, Diane Brooks-Dixon, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of May 15th through 21st, 2016, as National Public Works Week. Mr. Webb, do you want to speak to this?
I do, actually. Thank you for the opportunity, and I'm really excited to be part of the public works community and actually have a week to be honored for public works, staff, and management throughout the country. It's a great occupation. It's the backbone of our civilization, and particularly in Newport Beach here, we have public works things going on, as you know, all over, particularly in District 1. I was out there today. We have a lot of work going on. I'm excited to be in a city that takes it seriously and puts a lot of infrastructure effort into its plans. It does show off, and it helps the citizens and just the value of our community. So, I'm happy to represent that today. I also have a bunch of managers here with us today. Our municipal operations, public works is done differently in many cities. Sometimes we're all together. Sometimes we have different components. Sometimes there's a water utility or an airport, but it's all about the same infrastructure we're doing here, and we're proud to represent the city and do a good job for you. So, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, staff, for all the fine work you do. It's busy out there, but it's taxpayer dollars at work.
I'd love to have all the managers come down, Mike and George, and our folks in front, if we have any of the other municipal operations folks. Take a picture with you,
Okay, study session item number four, Arts Master Plan Update, Arts Funding, and we have Mr. Hetherton to speak on this, please. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. I'll be presenting a brief PowerPoint that encapsulates the staff report, and I'll commence now. So, the Arts Commission has prepared an update on the master plan, and it really focuses on arts funding. The idea is the Arts Commission has crafted a three-year plan for arts in the city that has the following goals for funding and staffing, and the first one would be to create a long-term, self-sufficient arts program that will provide the necessary support to fund existing arts, what we're already doing in the city. And then the second goal would be to expand that programming with private funding and to reduce the reliance on the general funds for the arts. So, what is that current budget we have? How are we relying on the general fund? Well, we take $35,000 for arts programming, $40,000 each for cultural arts grants and for our contract labor, and then about $12,000 and some change for marketing, insurance, internal services, all the administrative costs. And on the private side, our foundation generates about $5,000 on an annual basis, and as a one-time source of revenue, we have the Balboa Performing Arts Theater Foundation Funds. Those are funds for performing arts programming with a preference on the Balboa Peninsula. So, based on council direction, the three-year plan would include the following steps and possible funding mechanisms. The first one would be to complete the master plan. The Arts Commission feels that the master plan, you know, it creates the vision. It provides the future direction of arts in the city and the kind of programming and arts events and infrastructure that would drive successful fundraising. And this plan will be brought to council in June or July, and it goes to the Arts Commission this Thursday for approval. Okay, the second goal would be to invigorate the current arts foundation. Part of this would be to use some funds from the Visit Newport Beach funds to hire a development manager for the arts foundation. We would ask the arts foundation to add some new board members who are adept at fundraising. We'd ask them to revise their bylaws to ameliorate this, and we'd ask them to increase their membership. And then, generally, there's a really good example of a thriving foundation in town, and that's the Library Foundation. As an example, their membership is high. It's 2,500 members. They provide the library with an annual gift that tends to be around $200,000. The foundation has their own staff. They have an executive director who does the development. They have a program coordinator, and they have an executive assistants. Now, in addition to providing this large annual gift, they do a lot of programming, which not only engages the community, but also offers opportunities to raise more funds. So, that's what we would try to base the arts foundation on, that same template. The third point would be to use the Public Arts and Cultural Facilities Fund to fund Phase III and Phase IV of the sculpture exhibition. While the sculpture exhibition is—it's a rotating exhibition, the Arts Commission feels that it's permanent and that there's an established site for it, and it's a recognized program. And in the future, after these Phase III and IV, we would like the arts foundation newly revitalized to raise the funds to pay for the future phases of the exhibition. Lastly, contract labor. We want to use contract labor to manage, coordinate, and consult on arts commission's projects, and then hire contractors to perform task-specific functions until the foundation is established and can assist with these tasks. So, I know the staff report itself is a pretty lengthy, detailed document. I tried to take the essence of it and present it to you, and I would ask the council to consider. Thank you.
Thank you. Council members, any questions or comments this time? No? Let's— oh, excuse me, Mr. Muldoon?
Just in the comparison of the arts—or the library, could you go a couple of slides back?
Sure.
I'm sorry, to the $200,000 revenue amount? So, are those tend to be donations and checks, or is that from the book sales? What's the chunk of that dollar?
Well, that's actually from the foundation, and they receive bequeaths. They have annual membership drives. You know, they—people pay an annual due. People make designated gifts for collections or technology or resources, and they also raise funds from their events. So, it's kind of a multifaceted thing. We're fortunate that we also have a thriving support group in the Friends of the Library who sell the used books from the library, and they also generate a pretty sizable check on an annual basis.
I know that you and I had discussed—could you go a little bit into how the money would circulate exactly? I know it's kind of a vague question.
In terms of the arts foundation?
Yeah, arts foundation backed to us, whether it's going to involve other entities. How—what do it look like?
What it'll look like, I think, is that for that three-year period, that we would hire a development manager for the arts foundation that would be sort of monitored by benchmarks and kind of metrics, that the first thing, for example, we'd like you to do is increase the membership, and, you know, that's your first goal in order to reach this compensation, is to get 250 members of the foundation. You know, it's—the idea is that the Library Foundation sort of thrived from early time because they had sort of some major players behind it, and they had a building that they were raising funds for, so there's a tangible goal. The arts foundation really is tethered to the Arts Commission in that their mission is to support arts programming, and that the idea with that is that you kind of conveyed to the public in order to expand arts and give the kind of things that engage the public and the public wants, you would have to raise money for, and you sort of demonstrate the value for that. But, it really needs sort of that professional leadership to raise funds, to do a membership drive, to create an endowment fund, you know, to do programming, to do friend raising, to advocate on behalf of the arts foundation to the community.
And the foundation, what legal entity is that going to be?
501(c)(3) with a—hopefully, an MOU with the city that tethers them to the Arts Commission and, you know, strictly kind of defines what their role is and where those funds go to.
So, any foundation staff now or down the road would be an employee of the 501(c)(3)?
Correct, just like the Library Foundation.
There's no pension issue?
If it is, it would be for the foundation and not for the city.
Okay, yeah. There's no city pension issue? Yeah.
No, no, sir.
And if that person does not perform, it's on the foundation's—it's their decision to terminate the individual if they don't meet those benchmarks you said?
Correct.
And are there any repercussions for the city? I'm just trying to understand all of the liabilities and risk here.
Well, I may be out of my element here, but it would be my understanding that a foundation employee would be the foundation's responsibility, and it's pretty strictly—it's kind of separate. In fact, I look at the Articles of Incorporation for the Library Foundation, and they do specify the separateness of it—
[coughs]
—of the two entities.
So, you probably know one reason why the art—the Arts Commission exists is to advise us?
Correct.
What controls will we have if we don't think the art represents Newport Beach, or we quite frankly think it's a waste of money, or it's—you know, the neighbors say this is, you know, kind of offensive to look at, or, you know, those kind of items?
Well, my feeling is that the arts foundation is still going to have to be responsive to governance, and that's the Arts Commission. The fact that, you know, they are tethered to the Arts Commission, and as an advisory board, you know, the Arts Commission does come to council, you know, to weigh in on things and make the final decision, and I just think that's how art is in a government setting. I mean, that's—I think that's an expectation, and I think—I can't speak for the Arts Commission, but I would assume that they're fine with that.
So, I guess it's leading back to the question I asked you originally. Council under the advisement—the Arts Commission advises them that they don't like a particular program, or they feel it doesn't represent Newport Beach in a positive light, and we dictate to Arts Commission what to do, and the Arts Commission then dictates to the foundation what to do. Is there any liability in that chain?
I don't think so. Again, I go back to the example of the Library Foundation where, you know, our agreement with them says that we present them with an annual wish list, you know, of things we'd like them to fund. They weigh in on and decide what they'd like to fund, and on they generally—they agree with things. But, if the arts foundation were to approach the library and come up with a program that we didn't feel benefited the public, or, you know, was just not good for the city, you know, the library would say, "Well, no, we don't want to go in that direction."
You help me understand a lot better. Thank you much.
Sure.
Any other questions? I don't—Lilani, I don't show my—I signed in, and it's not registering that I exist here. Do I—am I here?
I'll hit my question.
Would you like to go ahead while she's—sure.
Tim, in your presentation, you said what we want to do is have two more years of funding for the sculpture, then we want to transition that to private funding. Who is the "we" in that sentence?
The arts foundation. We would—hopefully, with an invigorated foundation, that they would be able to generate the kind of funds that we would need to support future phases.
But where is that idea generated from? I mean, who is the "we" that's proposing this?
The Arts Commission.
The Arts Commission. Well, first of all, I think it's great that we seek additional private funding for the arts, and I think we have the capacity to develop critical mass that can attract significant contributions for the arts, and I think we should encourage this in everything that we do. But, I had an opportunity when I was mayor to spend some time with Joe Riley, who was the mayor of Charleston, probably the most recognized leader in the arts of public office in America from his time there. And there's not a city in America that does not—where arts is a significant part of the culture of the community, where there's not a significant public funding component to that, whether it's Richmond, or Charleston, or Santa Fe, or Carmel, or Laguna Beach, or any of the cities, that you would think of where arts drives the local economy and defines the community and provides a touchstone for the community. The city itself is an active participant, and I—it's unclear to me whether the economics work if we decide that we're going to turn this entirely over to private contributions. Our commission has done a good job, by the way, I think, in bringing us world-class art and exhibitions, and really expanding the reputation of our community. For the second year in a row, the Sculpture Garden was named the best public art in Orange County. So, while I encourage the formation of a vigorous foundation and active fundraising, and I think they're all going to be, because of the nature of art, very opinionated about the kind of art that they're going to want to raise money for, and where it goes, and how it's exhibited, and I think we need to be open to those thoughts. The good thing about the Sculpture Garden is it rotates, so if you don't like it this year, wait a year, or wait two years, and it'll change, and you'll have something else. But, I don't want at all to be seen that we are retreating on the city's commitment to the arts, because it's one of the things that's helped our city blossom during the—coming out of the economic recession, and we should continue it.
Thank you. Any other comments from the council?
I'm waiting for your comments.
All right, let's go to—any more? All right, let's go to the public. Any comments from members of the public? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I support and enjoy the arts. I think we have a great library director in Tim Hetherton. I don't want to undercut his proposal. I did want to mention a—make a comment on two of the existing funding sources. One, we understand, is $150,000 a year coming from Visit Newport Beach. I wanted all the council to understand the city is already kind of the victim of a bait and switch with respect to that. The original proposal for the $150,000 was going to come from the tourism bid, which is a semi-voluntary organization of eight of the largest hotels, who the council empowers to impose an additional fee on guests at those hotels. The original idea was the money was going to come from that, so it was truly outside money, not the transient occupancy tax, which is what Visit Newport Beach is giving back to us. But, the tourism bid came to the conclusion that their hands were tied. They could only spend the money on themselves. They couldn't contribute it towards improving the culture of Newport Beach. I think that's a decision that perhaps should be revisited. And the other one that perhaps needs to be revisited is the money coming into the city from the development fees, which is happening with regard to policy I-13. This is one of those policies that appeared a few years ago before the city council, kind of out of the blue. There was no discussion or recommendation about that policy before the—with the Arts Commission. It dedicates a certain amount of the money to something, and I think that policy needs to be clarified as to what that money is exactly to be used for, and perhaps there should be a recommendation from the Arts Commission how that should be clarified. As to Councilman Curry's comment, I agree. It's a little curious where the recommendation—kind of the Arts Commission is wanting to sort of put themselves out of business and outsource their function, whereas in many cities, there is a public component to the funding of the arts. I believe the reason the recommendation is coming to you is the Arts Commission is afraid the council will no longer support public funding of the arts, but the council as a whole has not yet discussed the matter or expressed an opinion. So, I think they're kind of second-guessing what will be palatable to you, rather than actually forthrightly telling you what they would like to see the city do. As to what the city should do, I think for fundraising, private or public, to be successful, you'd have to have a very clear vision and goal for what you're trying to accomplish, and I think the city council should be the ones setting that goal, and I think the Arts Commission is floundering now because they have no clear direction from the council as to what the city's role or what kind of arts you want to support, what you want to do. And finally, depending on what that vision and goal set by the council is, I think you may once again need a staff position, because Tim is a very good library director. He's not an arts person. You may need an arts coordinator in the city staff. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
Good afternoon. My name is Arlene Greer, and I'm chair of the City Arts Commission. I, first of all, would like to thank you for working with us and collaborating on the plan that was presented today. We appreciate all the lengths that you've gone with us on this and meeting with us. I would also like to thank the city manager, Dave Kiff, Mayor Dixon, our assistant city manager, Carol Jacobs, and our director, Tim Hetherton, for helping on that as well. I've come up here to also answer any additional questions that you may have. We do have a pretty clear vision as to where we're going with arts in the city, and we're going to meet on Thursday, and we'll be presenting our master plan, the goals and objectives that you asked for some time ago. And I think you'll find it interesting. Our vision has already been created to some extent in that we provide programming for concerts on the green. We have our city sculpture garden, the Newport Beach Art Exhibition, our exhibitions in the public library, which allows us to exhibit collections of art from private owners here in the city. We're growing all of these things, and we would like to reach out into the community and energize the community with arts and culture by creating music, art, and bringing the culture of those particular neighborhoods out through the master plan that we're working on right now. In addition to that, and in the future, we see the Sculpture Garden as the vehicle that drives tourism to the city. It's a museum without walls and windows that's available every day of the week from sunset— from sunrise to sunset, and it doesn't require a staff to be there in order to enjoy it. And it has engaged the public, and it's a palette, and it does offer us an opportunity to create a new aesthetic every time we change it up, and I think I have mentioned this to Mayor Dixon, that we'll be reaching out to council on a regular basis, because we see the City Arts Commission as a vehicle for engaging the public that exists between the public and you. And we'll be reaching back to you to make sure that while we're in the process of cultivating that garden with the new exhibition, that we are also having your ideas on what you think might be relevant there, and then reaching into the community, much as you have done, Mayor Dixon, in conducting town halls, maybe down Marina Park and other here, and reaching out into the neighborhoods to know how they feel about the Sculpture Garden and what their vision is in the next particular rotation. So, I think that pretty much sums it up, and I'm here to answer any questions that you may have, and I've been given direction by mayor to make sure that I have clearly outlined the responsibilities of the commission and how the foundation responsibilities relate to us, so that we can move forward with a very well-oiled machine to be less reliant on public funding. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions of Chairman Greer?
Madam Mayor, if you don't mind, the Arts Commission, as far as who funds the development manager, are they looking—your proposal is for the city to fund the full three years, or would it transition over three years?
To fund the full three years, but if that person is up and running and funds are being created, then I assume that the development manager would fall back and maybe not be relying so much on that funds and—on the funds that are—that are being provided for that person's employment, but rather on the funds that are being raised.
Okay, so that would be a maximum of three years, and hopefully it would be less?
Yes.
And then the Sculpture Garden funding, again, are you looking at a maximum of three years for that?
Yes, we are, but then again, we have not explored naming opportunities in that garden, and I think that's a very real possibility for fundraising, and hopefully, the garden will become more self-sufficient much before then as well.
I'm sorry to interrupt, Mr. Pieter. Just for the record, I think the proposal was for two years for the Sculpture Garden, not for three.
That's correct.
Okay, so it's two, and again, you would anticipate that the fundraising opportunities for that are better and that you might be able to get it done sooner?
Yes, and there's grant-funding opportunities there as well. The—it is not really—we have a—the Newport Macy Unified School District, we provided a $2,500 cultural arts grant, and their high schoolers are coming to the Sculpture Garden to visit and go away. And I've also talked with some people over in the county, and they're very interested in working with us to collaborate and provide some grant funding for the Sculpture Garden, because it's unique, and there isn't anything like it, and it's available to the public at all hours of the day.
That sounds great. And, right now, if someone were to donate money for the arts, it would come to the city, but you're proposing this new 501(c)(3), so would you anticipate that all donations then would go to the 501(c)(3), correct?
Well, the—we are in the process of developing a—the foundation is a 501(c)(3) and has kept up on all of its paperwork. We've checked into that. The—it can either go to a city-designated account or directly to the foundation. We, every year, have a Newport Beach Art Exhibition, and 30% of the proceeds from the exhibition are immediately sent over to the foundation to fund future programming, so we can trust that as well, and we can—we need a museum—we need a memorandum of understanding so that we have clear administrative processes for money goes over, money comes back, what time of the year that happens, how much, and how much input is going—well, it'll be clearly outlined as we work with—the city legal department with respect to the revision of the bylaws and with the foundation, and what we see we need from the foundation in order to comport with the City Arts Commission, if you can understand that. It has to be settled on both sides.
Okay, so we have to figure out who's managing, who's looking over the fund, audit procedures, and that kind of thing. Mr. Muldoon brought up a good point. The development fund manager, or this development manager, he would be an employee of the 501(c)(3) right away, even though the city might be contributing to the 501(c)(3) to pay a salary for maximum of three years?
I'm not the attorney, but that's my understanding.
That's kind of your proposal?
Absolutely. Mm-hmm. Yes.
And Visit Newport Beach, you're talking about getting $150,000. Have they weighed in on that yet?
No, but I understand in talking with our director early on, and talking with another of our commissioners, that they've spoken and talked to Mr. Sherwin, and that he is just happy to see tourism promoted and providing that money through the city as an opportunity to increase the arts and the arts visibility in the city, maybe for marketing and publicity, maybe—I've even heard, "Well, I wouldn't even mind if a person were used administratively to help it move further and create more artist opportunities and more cultural opportunities, and have people visiting the city as a result of that."
Okay, so you have a vague yes, but you really haven't talked details with them. You haven't talked dollar amounts specifically, how many years?
Maybe we can—
Sorry to interrupt again.
Yes.
The city has a commitment and has been receiving $150,000 from Visit Newport Beach per year, and it just started last year, and we've just banked it. It's sitting there in the bank. There'll be one more year's worth coming in. Sorry, I mean, it's indefinite, but we have not—
But it's designated specifically for anything?
No. Actually, the—I think Mr. Selich will help remind me. Previous to this council being seated, there was a discussion, at least between Mr. Selich and Mr. Hen, about what that money should go towards, and there was never a determination made, a formal policy. I think there was— policy, I think there was just some concepts. I think the discussion was either art or offset a visitor-serving, low-cost visitor-serving hotel spaces at the Lido House Hotel. Maybe Ed can help me there.
That's correct, but I think the Lido House Hotel situation has resolved itself, so to me it would seem to stay in the arts bucket.
But that's something that we could bring back for the council to talk about, on the $150,000, and how to designate it and where to put it?
Yeah, I think if, depending on your comfort level with this proposal, we'd bring it back to you as a more formal proposal, an action item on your nighttime agenda, and with at least the staff recommendation that up to $150,000 go toward, to the arts foundation for a staff member, however, and looking at the numbers here, I don't think it's going to be, I think that person may be $80,000 or $90,000, then there could be an allocation.
The development manager?
The development manager, for those three years. Again, knowing that years one is already in the bank, and this would be like, you're kind of just forwarding money, if that makes sense, again, we've, we'll have saved up $300,000 in that fund already.
Right, so it could go towards both their proposed arts manager and the development manager, both of whom would be employees of the foundation?
That's true, if the, oh, sorry, the concept is close to that, the development manager would be employee of the foundation. I think when Mr. Hetherton talked about the Arts Commission's assistant coordinator-type position, that would be a contractor to the city on the Arts Commission's behalf.
Is that the way the library board works now?
No, the library board has those three positions, including the, sorry, you guys have the Library Foundation of the Library Board.
Library, well, either or.
The foundation has three positions that are not city positions, the library board has the city staff.
So Tim X is that director?
Tim technically works half for me and half for the library board, according to the charter.
Yeah, that sounds like something that I would love to see brought back as far as the $150,000 from Visit Newport Beach. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions of Chair Greer? If not, thank you. Any other public comments?
Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and council members. My name is George Schroeder, and I've been a 28-year resident here in Newport Beach. I just wanted to stand up and say a few words in support of the Arts Commission. I think they do a very good job, and I'm a little bit concerned when I hear people saying that we might want to be concerned if some members of the public don't like a particular piece of art. I think if we start letting people who don't like art, if we let anybody go into a museum, remove a piece of art they did not like, probably before it was all over, there would be no art left in the museum. I think the Arts Commission does a very good job, I think it's the council's responsibility to appoint competent arts commissioners, I think you have done that. I think the residents that I've spoken to, most of them haven't seen the art sculpture in the park, those that have, to a person, I would say nine out of 10 people really enjoy it and support it. The one person that does not, the 10%, that do not, they tend to be people who find a lot of things to complain about. So I just think the residents overall support what the Arts Commission is doing. I realize we don't have unlimited resources, I think you're going the right direction. And, you know, I just think with all of your commissions, be it the Library Board of Trustees, you know, there's a reason why they stand alone, and I think that there should not be politics involved in choosing books or politics involved in choosing art. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? If any other comments, people, why don't you come sit in the front row? Come on, one of you.
Hi, right here. Hi, I'm Carmen Smith, I'm the President of the Newport Beach Arts Foundation. I just want to say something very briefly, I think all of you already understand this, but the Newport Beach Arts Foundation, of which I'm the President, we don't decide what's going to be purchased, we collect the funds, for example, the 30% that comes from the art sale that will be held in June, that goes to us, we hold it, we don't run around and have a party, we don't go out and buy a sculpture that we like by ourselves, we go back to the Arts Commission and say, what would you like to do? It is true that over the time we have raised enough funds, that we think we will be able to purchase one of the sculpture pieces that are here from Phase One of the sculpture exhibition, and donate it to the city on a permanent basis. However, we ask the city's Arts Commission if they approve of that, and then it's going to go before Parks and Recs, and then it will go before the city council. So at no time does the Arts Foundation, because it sounded a little bit like some of you were concerned, that we would get the money and we would make a decision about what art we're going to put in place, we're kind of just there as a 501(c)(3) for the money to come through to us, and if you tell us it has to go to the city's arts fund, then that's where the check goes. If they tell us that the money has to go to the artist to pay for the sculpture, then that's where the money goes. And when we hold art in the park, we're going to earn some money, that goes into our own coffers, but it's not our money personally, it belongs to the Greater Arts Commission and of course, the Greater City of Newport Beach. So I just felt like I had to say that, because it felt like somebody thought maybe we were going to make decisions about this, we might raise our hand and say, we'd like to do something, but we're not making the decisions, okay?
All right, thank you very much. All right, next.
Hello, I'm Rita Goldberg, and I'm in my eighth year as City Arts Commissioner. Having private investment in the arts is not a wholly new concept. Statues like the Ben Carlson statue that has been in the works for a year was privately funded, and before that, the Sphere down at McFadden Square was also brought to us through private funding. So I think that the City Arts Commission has proven that they are very capable of working with the private sector to bring art to this community. What I hope, though, is that there is a distinction between artwork and some of the programs that are viewed as community amenities, such as our concerts that attract 3,000 people and require overflow parking to accommodate the crowd, and really transform our city from just a city into a community. So I hope that no matter what, the city will always ensure that there's funds to continue those programs as amenities, and then of course, works closely with the private sector to grow the arts and bring us some fabulous arts to make the city wonderful, even more wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
Leslie Miller. I am very interested in the arts, some of you know I'm an art commissioner in Palm Desert, and I am now on the foundation here. I, I'll start by just saying, I opened the Mother's Day LA Times this Sunday to find that this sculpture was, it appears from the article that it's going to go into Balboa Island. It's of two very old people. Some people will not be offended, I was at first offended because I never would have chosen that sculpture or approved that sculpture in any of the many capacities that I've held. But moreover, and to you, I say that in every city that I have reviewed, on arts foundations, arts commission, I mean, this is San Francisco, Palm Desert, Palm Springs, et cetera, there's always a review process, and this kind of thing cannot happen without the review of an arts application, and I can cite to you, a model statue, preliminary sketches, photographs, or other documentation of sufficient description clarity to indicate the nature of the proposed artwork, and this is for artwork that goes on private property, it's much, much more stringent if it goes on public property. It's yet to be clarified, but I have heard that this may go on a public bench. In other words, for every visitor to see, we are associated with the geriatric community. To me, that is offensive. Okay, number two, as an appraisal or other evidence of the value of the proposed artwork, including acquisition and installation costs. Three, preliminary plans containing such detailed information as may be required by the Public Art Department to adequately evaluate the location of the artwork in relating to the proposed development and its compatibility with the proposed development, including compatibility with the character of adjacent conforming developed parcels in existing neighborhood if necessary to evaluate the proposal. And lastly, a narrative statement to be submitted to the Public Art Department, in our case, it would be to the commission, to demonstrate that the artwork will be displayed in an area open and freely available to the general public or otherwise provide public accessibility in an equivalent manner based upon the characteristics of the artwork or the placement. Most ordinances in cities of our size and our financial ability have ordinances in place where a proposal is made by the artist, even donated art, where it's totally free, to the commission, a group of people with sufficient education goes through it, votes, hand votes with names attached, and then the council reviews the proposal. If the council says no, then it's no. This did not have any of that sort of procedure.
All right, thank you very much. May I just follow up with staff or the commission? I wondered the same thing frankly when I saw that in the paper, was that, is that going through a process with the city right now with the Arts Commission?
Not yet, but we're going to be discussing that in the very near future.
Okay, very good. All right, next speaker, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Mike Kerr, and I am the newest member of the Arts Commission, and thank you for appointing me in December. I'm currently Chairman of the Board of Pacific Symphony, which is the largest arts organization in the county, I'm also on the board of the Irvine Barclay Theater, and I'm Chairman of Backhouse Dance, which is the only professional dance company in the county, so I spend a lot of time in the art world. I just wanted to come up and say very briefly that, at least as the newest member, I understand that the mandate is to come up with a combination of public and private funding in order to make the art successful in the city, and I at least will believe that the commission accepts that, understands that that's the direction you'd like us to go. The proposal in front of you today is the first step towards that direction. Raising money privately is difficult, and it's a long-term endeavor, so the reason we want a development manager is to assist in the process and kind of get everything jump-started to help both the foundation and the commission towards the end of raising private funds. Will we ever be 100% privately funded? I don't know, and honestly, I think that there's a place for public funding as well, but it has to be measured and it has to be partnered along with private funding, and we accept that that is the direction that council has asked us to move, and that's the intent of the proposal, that's the subject of the study session today. And I thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none, back to council. My screen doesn't work, so if you want to speak, raise your hand. Mr. Petros?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just, I want to, something Mr. Kerr just said resonates with me, that our message to the commission was to look for ways to develop public-private partnerships. That's my understanding of this whole investigation. It isn't necessarily to wean the commission from the general fund, it is to partner along with them. And I think that that's a good objective, we should partner with those in the community that find art to be of value to the community, and we should be expressing as an organization the will of the people in the expression of that art. But it should not be to completely wean the commission from general fund revenues, it is to partner the commission with the public side and the private side. So as we do march forward and look at this, I think, Mr. Kerr, you point to a very, very bright path for me to evaluate our success, so thank you.
Out.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I think this is a good first step going down this road. Obviously, a lot of details need to be fleshed out on it, but at least it starts putting together a roadmap of where we want to go. One of the things is going to be the Arts Master Plan. A year ago or so, the council asked the Arts Commission to put some meat on the bones on the plan, so when we get that back here in a couple of months, I'll be looking forward to see what the commission's done with that. The subject of the $150,000, you brought up a good point, Mr. Kiff, the T-bid money. There was a discussion, I guess in my mind, I had pretty much figured that since the Lido House Hotel situation worked itself out through the Coastal Commission, that by default that that money was now going to the arts, but I think it's good that we bring it back to council and just take a formal vote on it and make it clear that that's where the money's going, or not. And, you know, other than that, I just think that this is a first step, there's a lot of details to work out, I think the model that we have of the Library Foundation and the Friends of the Library and the Library Board working together is a good model. Obviously, it isn't going to be exactly the same, but it certainly provides a good template for us to build on, so I think it's a good first step.
All right, thank you. Any other comments? Mr. Mayor Protem Muldoon?
Thank you. A flow chart would be helpful when it comes time to actually vote on this. So there are a couple of policies that are involved here, I-9 and 13. Mr. Harp, would you be willing to opine on whether or not those funds are allowed to be applied to moving statues? I'm sorry, policies, excuse me, yeah.
Yeah, I believe that they could.
So you don't, you're not concerned about I-13 requiring for permanent structures?
Well, I think to the extent that there's any conflict, you could always waive the policy, it's pretty broad on what you could spend the money on.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? No? All right, let me try to sum up where we are. First of all, I want to thank staff, thank you, Mr. Hetherton, for your work, thank you, art commission members and foundation members who are here for your hard work. I think this has been a work in progress for the last couple of years, even from the prior council, and we are, I believe, with today's discussion and what we know what will be coming back to the council, I think will be constructive for our path forward. So as, this is a study session, so I'll try to articulate, if others agree with me, but just to sum up where we are. First and foremost, the staff report, which all of us were informed for today's meeting, confused me in some ways, and so I had a meeting with staff and members of the commission to clarify in my own mind what it is that we wanted to accomplish, and the reality was, the solution was staring us all in the face, because we do have this existing organizational structure with the Library Foundation, the Library Board of Trustees, that can be replicated almost precisely, even with the governance and structure bylaws, operating procedures with the Arts Commission as parallel to the Library Board of Trustees and the Arts Foundation, and maybe there can be Friends of the Arts to even parallel the Friends of the Library to look to small gifts. So I think the structure has, which has been in place, as I understand it, for the library since 1989, and it wasn't without its startup evolutionary challenges at the time, and I think is really operating a smooth model, and our community, most importantly, among other facts, our community is accepting of that structure, and I think it would go a long way to clarify, so my directive to staff, point number one, let's clarify the roles and responsibilities, the mission, the roles and responsibility, the legal status, the requirements of each of these bodies that we're talking about, specifically the Arts Commission and then the Arts Foundation. And then we therefore clarify under the operations of both, that any employee or employment arrangements that would support the development programs of the foundation would obviously be an employee to be determined of the Arts Foundation, and the Arts Foundation Board of Trustees would be making those operational guidelines, subject to the review of the Arts Commission. So all those roles and responsibilities need to be articulated and defined, and that's where the city attorney's office will be helpful, to also look at the existing, I think there are four council policies that have some overlapping jurisdiction... there are four Council policies that have some overlapping jurisdictional authority over all of these things. So, I would ask staff to step back and look at, with the City Attorney, looking at these policies, how can we consolidate? And so, just to be clear, the Development Manager person would be a Foundation employee and not a City employee and not on any City salary program. The contracted position for the Arts Commission, just to kind of get this all up and running, I think, Mr. Kiff, remind me, didn't we approve this a year ago? That would be used, Visit Newport Beach Funds that were part of this 100,000, which would be used for this, but this person or this position has not been filled yet, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, that, for the short term, maybe one to three years, that would be a contracted position, again, not a pensionable type of position. So, also, the existence of the Visit Newport Beach Funds, of which I understand that the money's in there total, maybe 300-some thousand dollars. Also, the Development Agreement monies that are now held in reserve for arts and culture-related expenses, I think all that needs to be sorted out, the policies need to be determined. Maybe there should be a cap on that because once Development Agreement monies start coming in there at 2%, we're going to be deluged with monies in there. So, I think we might want to look at a recommended cap of $500,000 or less, somewhere between 300,000 and 500,000. And I look to those monies now that are currently there, no general fund monies, but these are monies that are already there according to Council policy, be used as the startup funds to get these two separate organizations working. So, I look, you'll be coming back, Mr. Kiff, back to Council in the next few weeks to lay all this out and the flow chart and everything else, so we understand where the buckets of money are coming from. So, just to also sum up with what Mr. Petro said, I've been using the term "public-private partnerships" now for a couple of years, and I am very appreciative of the support that we have heard from the Commission and Foundation members. It's not a novel concept, it's not new to the world, many, many, many cities operate under the same model, and I think it can be, in my personal opinion, I think it will be a resurgence, and there'll be, by taking politics out of it, it will, the private monies will allow arts and culture in our community to really thrive and see greater heights because it will come through the processes and controls and approvals, but it will be unlimited in terms of the opportunity in our community. And I think that's what our community will most take great pride in. So, after all that, do you understand what I'm saying? Okay. So, thank you again, community. And one thing, Chair Greer, it's in the Master Plan, I look forward to seeing this again, but we've talked now for a couple of years, I'd really want to see community engagement in the selection, I mean, I personally, I hope others will agree, community engagement in the selection of the art. So, there's broad-based voice in the selection of the art that's placed in public spaces. Okay, well, thank you very much. Good discussion.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yes, happy to bring you the look at the 2016-17 capital improvement budget for your review tonight. Tonight, we have Mark Fikoyevich, our City Engineer and Deputy Director with us, and Jamie Copeland, who's our Administrative and Financial Manager for the Department. Also, Chris Miller's in the audience, who will be here for the Harbor Division of our Department. So, what I like to do is go through this, there's a couple of areas that I'll need to stop and have various Councilmembers excuse themselves because there is some conflict items in here, and I'll stop at the various different sections that we can take your comments and review, and then at the end, if you want, we can open it up to any other comments or public comments on that, if that's okay.
Sure, thank you.
So, to start with, I always like to kind of, for the folks at home and in the audience tonight, to kind of see about our capital improvement program, what it's about. The program basically sets priorities and appropriates funds for the city. It provides for project planning and identifies potential conflicts in our programs and projects, develops and constructs public improvements, and it addresses significant maintenance projects. It also responds to changing priorities and conditions, and that is that the city's priorities change, the CIP also evolves and changes too. And then it communicates and responds to the public. We get input from the public and we do outreach with the plan. Before we get into this year's plan, I always like to take a look back at our current plan and where we're at, and this is the 2015-16 CIP. And we're coming to the conclusion, it actually runs through June 30th, but at this point, snapshot-wise, this, this slide kind of sums it up. We have two performance measures, we like to watch it, we like to look at our schedules and how we do, and also our budgets. So, in regards to our schedules, with coming in within two months of the planned schedule, we're about 95% performance on that. And then in regards to our budgets, this includes our contingency, our goal is 90%, and we're running about 88% on that. This year, we had a few projects that we actually added or increased our contingency amount, we had favorable bids in some areas and some other things we had to cover, so that number was a little below our goal, but it was, it was a positive effect on that. 21 major construction projects completed so far for $35.6 million, and there are 16 projects underway right now for about $26 million on that. There are a few projects that aren't counted in this, we count as the notice of completions come up, we have one tonight, and there'll be a couple more maybe by the end of the year, so that number will grow, but again, it's a snapshot as of this presentation. Construction projects in work, here's a list of them, I won't go through all, but some of them you're familiar with, if you've been on Newport Boulevard, we're doing a lot of work there. In fact, that project, we just switched traffic lanes today, if you're on Newport Boulevard, we're standing four new signals, and we went from an outside-inside rotation, so now the lanes are on the new area that's widened on the outside. It'll be a little congested for the next couple of days as we get the new signals on board, so bear with us on that, please. 15th Street, Baboa Boulevard is also under construction. We're a little behind in that schedule, just, well, I have a chance to give you a notification. We found an old street under 15th Street, must have been there when the Peninsula was built, and it's caused a couple setbacks in some of our construction methods, so we're about a week behind. We're hoping to have the majority of it open for Memorial Day. The portion on the Bayside will have some problems, it'll be closed probably towards the Legion for a few more weeks there. East Coast Highway Signal Rehabilitation is underway now, that's going from Irvine Terrace all the way down to Newport Coast. Our concrete program we do annually up in East Bluff this year is underway. We just are at the tail end of the Coron del Mar Entry Improvements, which you've seen, the landscaping's going in now. Park Avenue Bridge is well underway. Mark's doing a great job out there, it's a very difficult project in a very confined area. The temporary bridge, I believe, if Mark, I'm incorrect, is going to be going in at the end of this week or first part of next week?
The delivery of the temporary bridge is going to start on Friday, and the installation will be starting to take place next week.
We have a tide valve program underway right now that's changing out some of our tide valves. We are also under construction on a portion of Coron del Mar Water Main going across Goldenrod right now. Baboa Village Entry Sign is on your budget tonight to approve, that was a project that was in the 2014-15 budget going into this year's budget for award. We also have a residential street program underway this year, we're looking to replace all the streets in Cameo Shores, we've been working on this for several years, looking for an opportunity. This will be a very big project, every street in there gets taken out and replaced. And then Newport Heights sewer replacements are coming up in the near future, along with the alley replacements right behind that. A few things on tap there for you. So, how are projects selected? This is often a question we get often asked, and basically, here's how we do it. We identified in our master plans, we have a series of master plans, many of them listed on this page. We also get requests by Council, the community, staff, we meet with all the departments every year and collect from them what the needs are. Support from Council goals and objectives, as your goals change, we also direct the CIP towards addressing those. And sometimes we have lawsuits or laws or things that change that require us to do a project. So with that, we have some goals associated with the capital improvement program, some of those which the Mayor's identified this year. One of our goals is to maintain a $5 million general fund investment commitment to repair and replacement of our infrastructure. Additionally, this year, you've talked about adding some additional money identified in the general fund surplus, maybe up to 50% towards what we call neighborhood enhancements. And we're also doing additional investments in the harbor infrastructure, our water systems, and our water quality systems. We were looking at enhanced per-storm protection, we really got interested because El Nino was coming this year, we did a great job, we didn't see El Nino, but we're much better off now. But we still have some things to do in drainage and slow protection. And also continued revitalization efforts in our villages, Lido Village, Mariners Mile, Baboa Village, Peninsula, Baboa, I'm sorry, Peninsula Point, and West Newport, Baboa Island, some of the areas we're concentrating in right now for revitalization. Addressing other city goals and priorities, looking at just the general fund investment, we're looking to maintain rehabilitated aging infrastructure and continue advancements in our smart traffic signal management system, improve our storm protection, increase our multipurpose trails and routes, our bike trails, et cetera. We have some master plan updates involved, address requested recreational amenities and facilities, we're looking at. Water conservation is going to be a continued item, as you saw Governor Brown just increase that to continue on for the end of the year with some of our goals, runoff reductions. Undergrounding overhead utilities is still a priority, this year we have several dollars in there to pay for some city commitments due to our city parcels in there, and also neighborhood revitalization. Under the harbor, we have a lot of investment going on there, you'll see in the CIP, protecting the public and private properties, we've got seawall and bulkhead rehabilitations, we've got capping going on on Baboa Island and also towards the Bay, the Bay Island Bridge over on Island Avenue. We have improvements for boating and visitor needs, we do a lot of sand management, one of the big ones you'll see is that we have an opportunity with the County of Orange dredging the San Ana River to get a lot of good material and bring it into some of our bay beaches this year, along with other dredging we have in this year's budget. Ocean and harbor piers and maintenance of those piers and repairs. We're also still actively looking forward to getting the Central Avenue Pier and the Street Inn improvements underway, that's currently under design right now and should be going, hopefully, to permitting soon. And then we have long-term stability, I'm sorry, sustainability in our water quality areas, our harbor finance plans and other things we do to try to show that green effort and sustainability of our improvements. So with that, going into this year's budget, and I'll be referring to this book, if the Council's been given this copy in the Finance Commission, you also find this online, it's on our website, all the projects in here, this is our proposed CIP. In that, there are 85 items, projects, programs, and studies this year. The total is about $64 million, $64.7 million. Of that, about $27.3 million is new funding and $37.4 million is rebudget. Rebudgets for us are ongoing programs, not everything gets built by the end of June 30th and some things carry over. As I mentioned, there are several projects we may or may not award in time for June, they'll carry over and be awarded in July or August, but we rebudget that money. So, there's always the flow of money going across the budget borders. I include this slide just to give you a sense of the history of our CIP budgets, and it's, it tells a lot in here, you can see various things like the rebudget amounts, the new funding we've appropriated, the total budgets, and then you see that black line on top. Historically, some of our big buildings and parks and things have been budgeted mid-year or as we approve the projects, so we don't carry a large amount of money in the budget. So, that tends to spike as we do various projects. The key there is that we've, we've got an up-growing trend since the 2000s, we've been, we've been increasing our CIP. The good news for some and the bad news for us is that our staffing levels have stayed the same, if we, we put our staffing levels on the bottom there. We've actually decreased staff in 2012 where we inherited, or we merged several divisions like the Harbor Division and the Water Quality Division came in and we lost a few staff, so we, we gained a couple, but we, we lost some engineers in there. We've turned to contracting out, we have a lot more contracts and professional services used to make up the difference on that because we have to get the work done, but it does create some challenges, this kind of creates that picture for you. So, the CIP's broken down into several categories. The first category is facilities, and of facilities this year, we're looking at a total budget of $12.3 million. We added a little on each slide here, you'll see a little delta underneath of it that kind of shows you the difference between last year's, just to give you a flavor of that. So, facilities is going to go up about $1.3 million. And the primary projects under a facilities category are the Coron del Mar Library and Fire Station, which is under design right now, and it'll be, the construction will be part of this year's. We also are going to be getting our Lido Fire Station replacement, the design will be going on this year, we have to work out the details of the site. We have two other fire stations that need remodeling, the fire station on Baboa Island needs a new kitchen and living bathroom area remodel, and then there's some remodeling going on in the Newport Center Fire Station. And then we also have a capital facilities maintenance master plan, and this is about $1.5 million the Council's put in every year towards major capital maintenance items, which would be painting of buildings, changing out air conditioners, re-roofing, things like that. There is a large rebudget this year, we were going to do a lot of re-roofing for El Nino, and we just could not get bids, the roofing industry was just too tight for us to, we tried several times and too costly, so we're going to be working on those projects coming up. Luckily, we didn't get all the rain we had, but we're still going to attack those roof problems once the market settles down a little. We have some work at the police station, they need to remodel the detective areas and shooting ranges. And then the West Newport Community Center is still in there, it's a rebudget, it's holding until we decide what we're going to do, part of the discussion was looking to see what happens with Banning Ranch, which is, was going to be here this week, but I know it's been postponed another month, so we'll be waiting on that. And I'll ask a real quick, is there any quick questions on facilities before we move on? With that, I'm going to move on to our next big category is streets and drainage. This is a large area of investment, $23.5 million this year, again, down a little bit from last year, 2.4, but we're still doing significant amount of work. It covers our arterial highways, our highway modifications, streets and alley construction, rehabilitation's in here, our annual slurry seal program is in here, this year Park Avenue Bridge is a large investment in here, storm drains and water quality, street light replacement, we've been doing a lot in there, our median turf replacement, we've been talking about, and we have some money in there for that, and also various landscaping and streetscape enhancements are in this category. And if I could just go off a little bit, it's always nice to educate because we get some questions on our pavement management and how we do things, just to show some, how we, kind of the background and how we make these decisions. We have a pavement management plan, and some time back, the Council determined that they wanted to have a goal of what we call, we have a pavement condition index, you'll see on the far left there, goes from 0 to 100, 100 being best. And the Council asked that we keep a goal of at least 80 PCI. So, we were lower quite some time ago, and we've been actively lurking to get towards 80, and I think we've achieved that this year. And that little graph there you see is basically on the high end of the hundreds, we have things like slurry seals and stuff that run about $2 or $4 a square foot. As you go further down and you let your maintenance go to another level, you're paying like $15 to $20 a square foot for light overlays, heavy overlays might be $30 to $40 a square foot, and then you get into complete reconstruction at $70 to $100 a square foot. And you really try not to get down there. Little chart down below, it shows you kind of the optimum as pavement deteriorates, you want to kind of catch it on the high end, it costs you a lot less money. And we've been doing that, so it extends the pavement life cycle, reduces our life cycle cost, improves the level of service. Here's a picture of our pavement management plan for those who want to know how we come up with the decisions we make on pavement. We actually go out and survey our streets every two to three years, we check out their pavement condition, that's put in a program, it's run, and it dictates kind of where our PCI's run, and then we plan off that. The colors here represent the various, we, we have an eight-year cycle, we're going around the city, so we have slurries in here and also major overlays, along with, there's a concrete program in here. If you look at this, you kind of look at where our network stands now. In our arterials, we have about 83 miles of that, and our current PCI is 82. Back in 2009, we were about 82, so we've, we've been trying to do, just keep the arterials the same and work on the residential area. Right below that, we have 158 miles of residential streets. Back in 2009, we were down at 72, and now we're currently, this year, we've come up to 81 on that. So, a citywide average for our PCI now is 81, right about where you want to be. If you get too high in that, you're kind of wasting money, you're putting good money after a good street, but we, we're, we're at a good point now, which is a good news item. We put some news on here that Newport Beach basically is at 81, if you want to think about a countywide average, they're basically 77 is their PCI. And if you look at the state overall, they're a little lower in the 66 range, they're more of a fair range overall. So, you're in a real good spot now in your pavement. Again, pavement comes in different preparations and ways we address it. The easiest one is usually crack seal and slurry seal, in this example here, you've probably seen this, about every eight years, we go through every residential collector in the city, we do maintenance on it, we seal it, and this is more of a preventive maintenance, it's not a structural maintenance. It protects the street from water damage and getting in and causing potholes and things like that, it's a very good thing. Not every city does this, by the way. It's, it's a good news item, but I know a lot of cities that are budget-challenged will forego this and then will pay the price later with larger pavement reconstructions. The next level down from that is usually a grind and overlay, you'll see on the top slide there, well, you'll see oftentimes we'll come in and just grind off the top of the street and we'll put a new AC overlay on it, that's a structural enhancement, it also gives a better wearing course. And it can run down to another level where we actually have to do a complete reconstruction, that bottom picture where we take the pavement section entirely out and rebuild it. That's where we don't want to be, but sometimes we do get there, that's very expensive, where you have to rebuild the pavement. That's very expensive where you have to rebuild the pavement. A note on that, for instance, Cameo Shores has been in that reconstruction mode for some time, but to further that investment, once you get to a reconstruction mode, you might as well just let it keep going because you're going to replace it anyway. So we've been buying some years trying to save some money after getting there. And this year, we're actually going to go in there and replace those streets. So further down on that same area, street and drainage, um, this is our arterial section. And what I'm going to ask is we'll talk about anything on this slide other than Bayside Drive because we'll talk about that first and then I'll need Councilmember Selich to step out because Bayside Drive is within his sphere of influence. So these are the streets we have in our, our budget right now. And if there's any questions on anything besides Bayside Drive.
That's a fan.
I'm sorry. Any, anything besides Bayside Drive, we entertain questions right now on. So you've got Fifteenth Street under construction, Irvine Avenue coming up that we're going to be working in the S-curves doing pavement medians. MacArthur Boulevard from Ford Road all the way up to PCH is going to be repaved this year. And we're working at Newport Coast, Coast Highway on some modifications. And then we also have money in here to start the development of a concept to redo Marine Avenue on Baboa Island. So I could entertain any questions on those if you have at this time.
Dave, how far north does the old Newport Boulevard Coast Highway modification go on Old Newport?
It's mainly regards right at the intersection there. We're trying to get that third lane going, it would be westbound through the interchange. So it would start right by the arches there and go underneath.
Would you characterize Old Newport Boulevard between Coast Highway and Sixteenth Street at an eighty PCI?
I wouldn't know off the top of my head.
I would not.
It's a concrete street with some asphalt on the outside.
With cracks and, and flowers and weeds growing through it. Old Newport Boulevard really deserves our attention as an item for not only just mobility, but economic development.
We will, we will put a note on that. That used to be the old highway before Newport Boulevard was built, so. But without that, I'm going to ask Mr. Selich to leave and if you have any questions on Bayside Drive, we can speak to that.
And just for the record, that project is near his residence and that's why he's recusing himself.
So nothing on Bayside Drive? All right, we'll ask Mr. Selich to come back in.
Dave, does this, does this include the, either, what do you want to call it, road diet type of concept, multimodal complete street concept?
Yeah, what we're trying to do on Bayside Drive, it's come up for its major pavement rehabilitation. We figured, let's look at the street before we just go pave it curb to curb because it's a very wide street. It's light traffic. It's about ten thousand ADT, which is right in the lane, that margin of having two lanes or four lanes. One of our thoughts was to maybe go to a two-lane road and we floated that to the community. We've met with Promontory Point. They're not real thrilled with that. They'd like to try to keep it a four-lane road. So we're looking at that. There are other connections we want to do. There's some missing pedestrian links. There's also ability to maybe put some medians in. We've had speed and accidents concerns on that street, so maybe trying to slow the traffic down with adding some side frictions, some center medians. So all that's on the table right now. We need to take that plan back out to the community and see what they think. If we can get some positive legs on that, what we'll probably do is bring it to council and say this is what we'd like to do on the street.
Thank you.
So I'm going to move on to our local streets. And in here, we have about ten point four million dollars worth of improvements. This is our concrete sidewalk and curb replacement. Every year we go around on the same cycle as our slurry seal. We usually do our concrete in the fall to try to get at the, ahead of the slurries, do all the fixes and patches. And then in the spring, we come back and slurry the streets in those neighborhoods. We also have some concrete pavement replacements. There's a lot of that in town. We're starting to take on some, on some larger ones. Ocean Boulevard, we did a little bit of that a year and a half ago along with Marguerite. Now this would take care of Ocean from Marguerite to Poppy. And as we've talked about before, we need to replace Poppy from the Coast Highway all the way down to Ocean Boulevard. Park Avenue Bridge is in here. It is a local street and we're real happy we've got federal funding for that. And then we have the Newport alleys up in the heights. We're planning on replacing all the asphalt alleys with concrete, so the money's in the budget. We have residential street rehab and again, Cameo Shores is the big one in there. And then this year's slurry program will be up in the Mariners Dover Shores area. Any questions on local? All right. We also have various items under street and drainage, landscape, drainage, other items. Baboa Village, streetscape and wayfinding. We have some improvement requests in here from the BVAC. Landscape enhancements around town. We've got a couple of spots we're working on. Also our median turf replacement, we have some money in here. We're not sure how to address that yet because with the governor saying we're going to keep the conservation on, we have a little concern about starting to rebuild those medians and watering them now. So we may just keep that money and hold it unless something changes on that. Slope replacement maintenance, we have some erosion slopes that we want to take care of hopefully this year. And then we have some storm drain concerns that's been brought out by a recent video study of our storm drain system and some water quality improvements under this section. And then street light retrofits and some master plan updates will be involved here too. And any other questions on that? So under transportation, we've got about two point four million dollars program. This is down just a little bit. We're looking to do smarter traffic management, some more smart programs, maybe directional signage, speed controls, things like that as we broaden our modernization fiber optic backbone. We've got two bike trails in there that we're looking at, Arroyo Creek. We've been working with the TCA and maybe doing some work there. And also Coyote Canyon Bike Trails is continued on from last year. We never got a chance to really get to that. Coronado Mar Bypass, we had a discussion on that recently with the CDM bid and the Resident Association and working with the TCA on looking at maybe a possible bypass solution. Also that kind of ties into our signal coordination and smart signals on that. And then we have usual regular money for rehabilitation of signals and some more synchronization. And then we also have signing, striping and markings, modeling money that we use every year to mark up our streets and do various programs. Any questions in this area?
Yeah, just for clarification, you have a discussion about everything except for Mariners Mile, then we'll need to have Councilman Duffield step out.
Correct. So Mariners Mile has a conflict, but anything besides Mariners, I'll take questions on that. With that, then I'll ask Councilmember Duffield to leave because Mariners Mile is a conflict for him.
And, and just for the record, it's adjacent to his business and that's why he's recusing himself.
And just a note on this, your next council item, a study session on the twenty-fourth, we're going to be, bring two items to you, actually three items. OCTA will be coming back to you to talk about their quarter study throughout the county. They're now at a point, they have the draft study done. They'd like to bring it to all the coastal city councils, so you'll hear about that next council meeting study session on the twenty-fourth. We'll also be bringing back to you some work that staff's done with the same consultant on the capacities of Mariners Mile. And then our planning department will be bringing forward a proposal for you to approve to kick off the land planning portion of Mariners Mile, something council committed to revitalization of the area. So all that'll be talked about next time.
Uh, Dave, this is on synchronization. I thought we were pretty well done with our synchronization program. Is this the last phase or what is this?
Uh, we are pretty well done. We have some fill-in gaps. We're also currently working on Coast Highway. So there are some software issues that we can upgrade, but most of the backbone's in.
I have one observation, Dave. The Mariners Mile effort is, is absolutely necessary in terms of what the, figuring out what the demand is and how to satisfy it, both again, from the mobility and the economic development side. But it's my observation that we already have a Coast Highway project teed up, on deck, ready to go. And I just, to my colleagues, I would just have, ask you to think about the fact that the West Coast Highway Landscape Project, one that came out of a citizens advisory panel, has been conceived, funds have been spent to design it, funds have been spent to clear it through Caltrans, and now it is time to implement that. The last of the citizens advisory panel projects should be implemented, I say, before we do anything on Mariners Mile. Let's, let's finish our commitments before we start something new.
I'll ask Councilmember Duffield to come back. Parks, Harbors and Beaches is another category. In this area, we're looking at spending thirteen point three million dollars. This includes amenities, recreational amenities, beneficial uses to public lands and waterways, park and harbor improvements, protection, sustainability and safety efforts. All that is kind of wrapped up in the Parks, Harbors and Beaches area. Under park improvements, about one point nine million dollars this year. We're down about one point five, or I'm sorry, one point two million from last year, but we've got several efforts in here. We've got Baboa Canyon Sports Park Pickleball Courts. We've had a big demand for this. We couldn't fund it last year, so we've put it back in the budget this year. Lower Sunset View Park, we owe you to come back. We talked a little bit about that last time. There's a development that we need to kind of start working on in that area. Back Bay View Park, we have some additional money in there. We've done one phase of some additional enhancements in there. We've got a little bit more work to do in there and that's underway right now. Park walls and staircases, a lot of our, a lot of our parks are rather old. You notice old railroad tie walls and some of our staircases and our municipal operation folks have asked that we rebuild some of those walls that are starting to show signs of age and also some of the staircases. So there's money in there for that this year. We put some money in for Veterans Park modifications. The American Legion is discussing with us some options down there, maybe ability to add some additional parking at Veterans Park now that we have Marina Park right there next door. So we'll be looking at that. And also we had a discussion last time on Sunset Ridge Park Access Road. There's, there's money in that to go forward with some of the permitting of it. Again, we're waiting on what Coastal does with Banning Ranch and we'll keep you apprised of that. Any questions on this slide?
Are you talking about making the, the grass area a parking lot there next to American Legion?
Um, there's a strip there, actually what we're, we haven't got the design yet, but there's a set of parallel parking along the alley there. And we think if we just turn them and take a few, let's say eight feet of the grass, we can go from four stalls to maybe fourteen. So we'd end up taking a little lawn there to add a lot more parking. But we're hoping, there's, there's a discussion with the American Legion. They're looking for more parking in the area. So is the community. That might solve some of that problems. But actually, we'd like to help with the American Legion, maybe work on their frontage if we do that because there are chain link fence along the alley. It's actually city leased land, but they're, they're interested in maybe improving that alley. So maybe there's some cooperative efforts we could do there.
Are you talking about perpendicular or angled parking or what?
Uh, we'd, we'd go ninety-degree parking into the turf there versus the parallel we have right now.
Well, if we're going to do that, I'd suggest seeing if we can get them to maybe make some other improvements on their property if we're going to be improving their parking situation. There's some relatively inexpensive things I think they can do there, particularly adjacent to Marina Park to help things.
We'll, we'll take that and see if we can do that.
Excuse me, Dave. On the Grand Canal, I know this says Parks, Harbors and Beaches, so I'm hoping I'm in the right category here, beaches. The Grand Canal, we spend a lot of money every year, or we have recently, to increase those beaches and within the canal. And just wanted to ask if it's feasible to explore methods of sand retention with an engineering firm to just briefly understand if, if there are ways to slow down the erosion as it looks like every year we're going to need to continue to do that. So I'd just throw that at, at you.
And I'd say, yeah, we'd be happy to talk to anybody about that. As you know, we're actually right now in the process, Chris Miller's already applied for applications to do the final dredging of the Grand Canal. We did some emergency sand work there, put some really high-quality sand and it seems to be holding its base. The residents, we met with them, gosh, several months now. They would like the bottom of the canal dredged out because it's got a lot of silt and muck down there and then we put fine quality sand in there. That's the plan. So hopefully, once we get our coastal permits, we'll start that. We'd be happy to talk to a firm and see if we can make sure it sticks. With that, highlights for the Harbor and Tidlins area, again, eleven point four million dollars in this area. We have the seawall money in there for designing capping of the Baboa Island seawalls. We have some money in there for the American Legion Bulkhead Cap. That's actually a city leased property, the Legion is, as you know, but there's some responsibility on the city's part for maintenance of their cap. Newport piers, there's a platform possibly going in there for maybe a new building. We need to get out on the pier, get into those piles and replace the piles at the end of the pier, getting ready for that. We also do ocean piers and inspections and repairs about every two years. We have money in there to do that work, fixing railings, fixing hardware, stringers or anything that's broken on the piers. They take a lot of beat out there, beating out there, so we want to keep up with that. Harbor piers and gangways, we have money in for maintenance of those this year. Also the Central Avenue Pier and Street End. Note on that, we keep saying Street End, but not just adding the Central Avenue Pier, but if you look at the end of the street of Central Avenue, it's, it's pretty old and worn, some of the planners, landscaping is tired. And now with the Lido Partners doing a complete redo of that area, it's starting to show. So when we do the, the pier itself, we'd like to probably do some work at the street and just clean that up and maybe match.
And just to clarify on that, the funding for that, if, if the New, if the Newport Harbor Yacht Club does decide to do their project that's just been approved by the Coastal Commission, then they, the yacht club will be contributing the three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
The good news is that I think we're funding rich. I might even have Chris, if you'd step up and talk to that, but we not only have money that the yacht club's going to put in, but I believe Chris was successful in getting a grant for some money additional to that. So if you could maybe go over that real quick, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Yes, we're in a situation where we, we do have a lot of funds for Central Avenue and assuming Newport Harbor Yacht Club's membership does approve, that'll be three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We've also in the process of officially getting a grant from the state for some funding. We, we don't know the exact number, but it's under a hundred thousand for helping with Central Avenue. So we don't know how the funds are going to play a part or mix come in together. Once we get all that figured out and once Newport Harbor Yacht Club's membership decides, then we'll have a clearer picture in the next couple of months. But we're in a fortunate position to where we have funding for that and hoping we can use some of that fund, some of those funds for the actual street end hardscape improvements that Mr. Webb was talking about.
That's very good. I will say, Mr. Webb, on Central Avenue, on the via Lido side of the work that's been going on this past week and now it's finishing up, it really does look great. I mean, some new landscaping and parking and I think we have more parking. Did we get a couple more parking spaces in, on that street?
I think on Central, they were able to add some parking.
Looks very nice. So on the other end, on the bayside, it's going to look a really nice promenade area there, parking and access. Thank you.
Yeah, once we have a plan on that, as Chris mentioned, we'll bring that back to you. We'd like to spiff in the public street into that too, so. With that, also sand management, I mentioned the county sand. We, we have a half million dollars planned in the budget. I don't know if that'll be enough, you know, bring fifty thousand yards of sand. It's a great deal. It's great quality sand. It's one of those once in a lifetime opportunities. We don't get too much time. So we may need some additional funds there in the mid-year once we get a better, better handle on that. Grand Canal dredging, there's about three hundred thousand dollars in that. Again, once the core permits are done with Chris, he's ready to jump in and start the dredging of that. And then our eelgrass survey, the RGP fifty-four permits. Chris may have told you, we heard at the Harbor Commission the other day in Tidlins, we have, is it sixty-four permits in play right now with private people coming forward and trying to get dredged? to get dredged? I think what'll happen, we're hopeful, is when the city does the Grand Canal and hires a contractor to do that, which brings in a small scale to do it, then a lot of folks can maybe jump on board and have some economics of scale savings there. So that's our hope, to get that momentum going. I know, as we talked at tidelands yesterday, there's a long-term goal to do some long-term improvements in dredging. I promised Councilmember Duffield we'd stay right on top of that, so we're going to keep working in that direction. Also, the harbor capital finance plan, Mayor. You'd be happy to know that we brought that to tidelands yesterday. There is progress on that. I'm hoping we can start putting the financial numbers on that. We'll bring that back in maybe a few months, maybe towards fall for you to look at on that as council. Any questions?
Dave, on the American Legion Bulkhead Cap, as recently as, I don't know, a few months ago, I thought we were talking about a much larger number rebuilding the seawall. Now we're just talking about the cap. Can you explain how we went from one concept to the other?
Maybe Chris can do that. It's an agreement with the city, with the Legion, but...
Sure, thank you. The original intent was to take care of the cap, which was part of our agreement that we made with the American Legion when we dredged the Rhine Channel. We thought maybe we could tackle the seawall at the same time, but as we decided just to focus on the cap, which was part of that agreement. So I think that'll extend the life of the seawall. I don't think the seawall is in bad shape. If the seawall does need new tie rods and supporting members like that, that can be a part of that, but as far as rebuilding the seawall from scratch, I don't think it's necessary, and we've had an engineer out there who concurs.
Thanks. And we probably will want some further discussion with council, or maybe at the tidelands committee and guidance there. There's been generally a commitment to address their cap, but as you know, the seawall's different. It is a leased property from the city, but I don't know if we're 100% on the hook to be obligated to do that. Maybe going into a further negotiation, as you mentioned, Mr. Selich, about some improvements they need to do and things. There's a discussion there, so...
Dave, you mentioned a few slides back about the Island Avenue. Is that the Edgewater, the same Edgewater seawall?
Yes, actually, under the Babo Island seawall cap and design, we have another little cap project in there at the end of Island Avenue by the Bay Bridge. There's an area there that overtops regularly, so we're going to go ahead and raise that cap to address that area, too, at the same time.
Good, thank you.
So real quick, I mentioned a little bit about the seawalls. I wanted to give you a little update on the status of that. We have the two projects going forward. We are looking at capping the north and south seawalls. We're looking at the coastal applications being submitted. The cap construction on this, starting around January 2017, probably take four or five months to construct. We're looking at, is there ways we can even speed that up? Maybe work on both sides of the island at one time? So that's actively going forward. Mark Vokovitch just made a presentation to the tidelands committee last night on some design details on that, so going forward with that one. On the west end, that's one of the walls we have the most concerns about. We're looking at either repairing, rehabilitating, or maybe having to replace it. We've had some contractual problems getting someone to enter in a contract to test that. Again, there's a lot of concerns about liability, the wall's old, what we're going to get out of that. So we do now have a contract, a consultant on board who's going to do some less invasive testing, hammering, visual inspections, things like that, to give us a better read on where the wall is. And then we can make a determination, should we rehab it or replace it. So that's going forward. About eight weeks to finish our testing on that, and maybe another 15 weeks before we actually get the final report. Either way, we'll have to probably go through Coastal to get a permit to do work on that. Well, maybe not. If we do a rehab, we'll have to look at that, so it is moving forward. Any questions on Babo Islands? Water quality and environmental is another large category for us, $6.6 million this year. These improvements generally have to do with, again, water quality runoff improvements. Arches Storm Grain is a project we've been looking at. We have a bacterial problem up by the Newport Boulevard crossing over the harbor there, up by Arches. We're looking at putting a dry weather diversion in here to take out the flow coming down, which should solve the bacterial problem, hopefully, in the bay right there. We had a project up at Bayview, up in Santa Ana Heights, to put in a storm grain and a new wetlands filter up there, and that's underway. We've been working with the property owners on that. New project this year is Big Canyon Golf Course Treatment Ponds. This has to do with the selenium TM deal we have with the regional board in trying to better address some of the selenium residuals that we have, the high readings we have there, along with the, we've already talked about the Big Canyon project itself. We've already awarded the lower portion with is the treatment facility. Big Canyon rehabilitation, there's money in there. There's an item tonight for the mitigated negative deck, approving that and moving forward the project on the RMP on that. And then a little Corona infiltration galleries is a project. Some of these projects are a couple of years old because of the details and the permitting, the regulations we have to go through. We've got the coastal approvals on that. We're looking to get that wrapped up and start doing the infiltration gallery at the end of Buck Gully just before it comes into a little Corona there. Santa Ana River Delhi, a regional project, is something we're working with our county and Costa Mesa and some of our watershed partners up by the airport on the Santa Ana-Delhi Channel that comes in the upper bay. That'll be a reduction of trash, and also low summer flows will be taken off and diverted into the sewer. And then the Seminole Slough dredging, I'm happy to report those. We're in for permitting on that, actually, Mark, and we're ready to go come February, I'm sorry, fall. We'll be starting that project. We've got a couple little issues with some private property there, but we're moving forward to do the dredging of that for the residents out there. Any questions on water quality or environmental? Moving forward with water, not too much this year. Total budget of $3.3 million. We've got a couple of projects, Lido Village Water Mains. This is, again, down in the peninsula area, but we're off the main strips. This is some of the cast iron mains that support Lido Village in and around the area, some of the alleys. There's a couple over on the Finley Track that we have to address. Babo Island Water Main Replacement, we've been looking for some time to start looking at the design of a couple of major mains on Babo Island. Again, that might kick off some pavement work after that. We have several major water main crossings in the bay, and these are rather old, and we need to address those. So we're starting the design of how to replace those. These are things that might run between Lido Island and the mainland, between Babo Island and the peninsula. They're major backfeeds for our system, so we want to make sure they're in good shape. In years coming up, we'll figure out how to actually construct them, and we may have to lay a new pipe in the bay. We may have to bore something in. And then we have water valves adjustments. That's typically when we do pavement jobs, we have to adjust the cans in the street. And the water main replacements, there's other things in the master plan. We have some money in there for various other mains in the city. And then the utilities folks and us have decided we need to probably update our water master plan on the hydraulic model and on the bacteria model, and also probably the funding model. So we'll start to work on that. It'll take probably a couple of years to do that. Any questions on water? So then we also talk about wastewater. We have an area in our budget, $1.9 million this year. There's not a lot of programs money in here, and part of that is that we have a funding issue that we've talked about a little bit. We need to do a general fund transfer to keep that facilities, or the actual capital improvements going on that. So we do have money in there this year for the sewer main replacements and the laterals in the Newport Heights. We have a little money for sewer main repairs. This is areas we find low spots or cracks or breaks that we need to line. And we have a little money in there for manhole covers and replacements when we get into street adjustments. Any questions on sewer?
What is not there if you, if we had had the money in the extra fund?
I don't know off the top of my head. I have to look down in the master plan on other projects. There's probably additional repairs that we would get started on, mainly mainline repairs. I think we have some lift stations coming down the road, so... And then under our miscellaneous category, $1.4 million, up just a little from last year. This is the Babo Island enhancement areas. We have a little money in there for various beautification enhancements and portions of Babo Island. Babo Village Facade Improvement Program under the BVAC, they have money in there. They want to do some additional work there. We have one area here that I'll need both Councilmember Muldoon and Councilmember Curry to leave these last two items, so...
Yeah, and just for the record, Councilmember Curry owns stock in AT&amp;T, and that's why he has a conflict, and Councilmember Muldoon has conflict related to his employment.
So as council is aware, we passed several 20B assessment districts this year, so we have some commitments for the various parks we own, and there's money in there to pay our share of those undergrounding assessments. And there's also money in there to do a future assessment district engineering. We need staff support in that. We have at least five, maybe six, assessment districts out there, including one tonight we'll talk about looking to form, so we need assistance on that. So we've got some contract engineering money in there. Any questions in this category? I think then we can bring the two council members in and continue. They thought they had time to sneak in a piece of pizza or something. So as a summary slide, this is our various categories, and you can see the new funding on each category, the rebudgets, the percentage of the overall budget there making up our $64 million. We've broken that down in several ways. This area shows kind of the various segments that we've talked about and how that's funded and how it's proportioned. And then also, this slide, if you want to look at it, gives you some of the general funds that we use. We use general fund, grant funds, Mezzaram gas tax, sewer, water funds. You can see kind of where the money comes from to support your capital improvement program.
Dave, let me just say, since I've been on the council and I understood where this money, this is an amazing, well, I want to say it this way, I want to commend staff. We wouldn't, those monies just don't fall over our transom. Staff goes after these grant monies. So just, so I could say this, so people understand, where the general fund is obviously funded through largely property tax, sales tax, and transient occupancy tax. These other, and so $5 million of our general fund plus the neighborhood enhancement, you're adding another, so that's about $12 million in general fund. But out of your 64, whatever your total, what is it, 64?
64.7 million.
64.7 million of your total spend this year is coming from these external sources that we have to proactively apply for and get, and that money comes back to do the improvements, the public works improvements. So we just celebrated Public Works Week because of going after that. I just want to commend staff because it's a lot of work going after this grant money. And I want to thank you on behalf of the property taxpayers of Newport Beach that you really save the taxpayers a lot of money directly. I mean, maybe ultimately, they're paying it, and their property taxes are their state income taxes, but we're getting it back to Newport Beach, and that's the important point. So thank you.
And we thank you, Mayor. We have a terrific staff. We have great managers in municipal operations and public works. People really care about their job, and I thank you for that recognition. They're a great bunch of folks to work with. So one thing we added new in your budget, we hope you'd like this. We've always talked about looking forward. We have a lot of master plans, so Jamie Copeland took the lead on this and basically started producing our five-year plan. We've always wanted to go to a five-year budget snapshot. So in your budget, you'll see basically all the various categories, and you'll see this year, 16, 17. And what we've tried to do, coming out of our master plans and things we know, is start filling in the gaps of what it looks like for the next five years. So you have a better picture of how things are funded. We can keep this, I think one of the requests from the mayor was, could we show what we spent on projects to date? So we could add a column next year that says, okay, let's say this facility, the library fire station, we spent X amount of dollars to date, and this is what we have to do to finish it. So we're hoping this is a tool for council and the community to look at, kind of see what's coming up, and we're surely welcoming any suggestions. If you have areas you think we want to fund in the future or need, please bring it to our attention, and we can start populating this sheet. So that's in your budget this year, too. So with that, coming towards the end here, this is the projects that are included in your 5.5. This year, we added about a half-million dollars. Mr. Kiff added a little money to that, your general fund baseline, and you see it broken down there, and those are the way the projects are funded, from the general fund. The next slide talks about the additional money you've added through your surplus into neighborhood enhancements. So you've added to this date about $1.7 million. So I drew a line there, basically, with the surplus money, and below that, those are funds and requests that we had that we couldn't fund. Mr. Petros mentioned the West Coast Highway Landscaping. It's about $2.6 million. We didn't have enough money to reach that this year. Planning would like to do a general plan update. I think that's important, but again, about $800,000 on that. We had one request from Newport Island for some improvements. We couldn't get to funding that, but I do know I worked and looked at municipal operations to look at that. Mike Pizzani and Laura Detwiler had talked, and some of the improvements we can do through our operating budgets, some are going to happen, like, for instance, they wanted a chain link fence replaced on the south side of the park. There's a house that's about to redevelop there, so maybe we can have the developer replace that property fence. There are some facilities, they like to do some sheds and things like that, that we really feel is the HOA's responsibility, not the city's. And then there's some improvements along the road right there, I can't remember the frontage, that I think municipal operations said they could do some curb work and things. The HOA would like a little fancier level. I don't know, we'll have to work with them on that. Maybe they can kick in some money. But we didn't forget them, but there are things, like they wanted to do something that would stop basketballs from going out in the street, and it'd be a much bigger, higher capital expense, and we didn't have the money to address that yet, so... We also had a request from the Newport Elementary School to help level their playfield, and some of you will recognize this, there's an issue with their field out there. It's about a half-million dollars. The school district, so far, has not been able to fund it. I know they're a great PTA and raise a lot of money out there, but this is a little beyond their reach. They did ask if we could help fund that. We didn't have the money at this point to do anything, so it's on the list here.
Help fund it, does that mean they'll help as well?
I'm sorry?
They say help fund it, will they help fund it as well?
We got the impression they can raise some level of money. We haven't got to that. Mr. Kiff was going to talk to the school district and see, I don't know if we had any luck there, to see if they would actually help these, because it really, it's a city park, but it's used as a school, so there is some ability for us to do something, but...
Why don't we suggest that they pay half and we pay half?
The school district or the PTA?
School district.
Yeah, I have been exchanging phone calls with Dr. Navarro, and it's more, actually, it balls in my court to get back to him, so I did want him to discuss those kinds of concepts with him.
The good news at this point, our planning staff has really helped, and we've already got the coastal development permit and approval to do it. Now it's just a matter of funding it, and we may have to, I think they'd like us to run the project, to do it as a capital project, which we're happy to do if council chooses to use our staff to run the project. We'd do that for you. So more discussion on that. And then there was one other request. The CDM bid asked us to contribute $36,000 to their gang newspaper racks they're doing. I don't know, we just spent a lot of money on the CDM entry, that'd be a council discussion, but we couldn't fund that. I think maybe they, if we can't fund it, they'll probably go off forward with the project, but I can't speak for them. I don't know if they're here today, but that was on the list.
People still want newspapers in their racks?
What they'd like to do is take all the individual newspaper stands and put them in a nice-designed rack, so there's some order and cleanliness to it, and we told them we'd install the racks. I think they were in the impression they were going to buy these gang racks, so...
The newspapers want the racks for people not to buy.
So that was the list of projects that didn't get funded, that we know of, and we may have others, the public yourselves may have something that we're not aware of. But the good news for what our CIP looks at, community revitalization is continuing. That's exciting. Investment in our core infrastructure is continuing. Our city pavement conditions improved. I'm really excited about that. It's been many years, but we're basically hitting the council goal that was set back in about 2009. Babo Island seawalls are starting to receive attention. You've got a lot of investment pointed towards the harbor, which I know is an important area for the council and the community. Progress is being made on the environmental stewardship and resource conservation stability that we've talked about recently. We're doing efforts in there. Efficient delivery of services, as I mentioned, we're a real thin staff. We're staffed at the valley or maybe a little below that, but we're, there's a big chore, and I appreciate all your patience, there's a lot of capital projects, but we use a lot of consultants, and Mark and us, we're always trying to be creative on how to get these things delivered, but there's efficiencies in that. Fiscal responsibility, as you can see, I think we've shown a lot of that. And also, there's a proactive communication outreach. Got to thank Dave Kiff, he's really been a cheerleader for us to be more communicative, and staff's doing a great job with traffic advisories and handholding and going out in the community, telling, talking, and going out with projects, so a lot better outreach and stakeholder buy-in on that.
In fact, with all the programs going on, particularly in District One, I mean, I really thank you. I mean, our residents know the staff, Public Works by name, first name. You all, you know all the people on a first-name basis, the business owners. Incidentally, I was talking with one of the business owners at the 15th Street, the market there at 15th Street, and they were really unhappy with the project because they were, their street access, parking access, months ago, was limiting their customer access, and so they were very grumpy. And you worked with them, and they were able to put their "we're open for business" sign, and they couldn't stop talking how pleased they were. So they had a little bit of hiccup, but the staff worked with them, and they were very grateful. So thank you for working with our community, residents and business owners, because it really makes a difference, and it's all for the common good, so thank you.
You're welcome. And I think that concludes our presentation. We're open for any comments or questions you have with the public.
And as Dave does wrap up here, it's always helpful to hear back from you, either directly to Dave or to me, not necessarily at this meeting, whether you have concerns or questions about any of these, because without further direction, we bring these together to you for adoption in June. So if one project or another doesn't seem like it smells right or fits right, you want more detail, again, don't hesitate to ask, either here or offline. Thank you.
Questions?
Now, do, so wait, off to the public? Do we have any comments from the public?
Chair Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mojer. I had two comments, one about the funding mechanism for this year's sewer CIP improvements. I believe that may be a topic this Thursday at the Finance Committee meeting. I wanted to clarify that at past council meeting, I had suggested that the city may have some general fund obligation towards the sewer improvements to pay for its own use of the sewers, which it's not been doing for a number of years. But since making that comment, I tried to estimate the dollar amount of the city's own use of the sewer system, and I think it's outstanding. Bill is relatively small. I think it'd be useful to know what that outstanding amount is, so it can be properly handled. However, beyond that, I don't think it's appropriate to use the general fund for bailing out the sewer enterprise fund. The logic that would allow you to do that would suggest if you're going to bail out the Newport Beach portion of the sewer fund or sewer use, you would have to make the same offer to the people who are in the Costa Mesa section of the sewers, help that district out with their repairs, or the people who are in the Irvine Ranch Water District section of the sewers, make the same offer to them. Otherwise, you're singling out one group in the city for a benefit that you're not offering to the others. Other comment I wanted to make, well, kind of tie this into the previous item about arts and culture, and also to understand how this CIP budget works, which is a little different than the other budgets, because generally, when you dedicate money for something, it stays in the budget until the money is spent through the rebudgeting process. And I noticed last year's, or actually, the current year's CIP budget has in it an allocation, which was actually rebudgeted from earlier money, in that odd grab bag of things at the end, the miscellaneous category, had funding for the Arts and Culture Master Plan. There was $64,685 left over in the current year's budget. I'm not aware of much effort having gone on in the last year on that. And if the money is not spent, I'm wondering where it is, because it's not in the budget this year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. That's, we, that's, do we have an answer for that question?
We actually do. There was, in the current budget, we had $64,685, and we didn't rebudget it, it would be going back to the base fund. That would be something, we checked with the library folks, and they didn't need that additional money. So at this point, we weren't planning to put it back in the budget.
All right, we could apply to the West Newport Landscaping Project. All right, any other comments from the public? Please come forward. Seeing none, come back to the council. Any other comments or directions to staff? Want to make a comment?
It won't take long, it'll be fast. I wanted to chime in on what you said with you guys on this fundraising with the, that are out there to get. I had an example this year, we are very excited about a machine that is going to do amazing stuff for our harbor, it's a solar-powered water wheel. And Baltimore, City Baltimore has one, it removes 350 tons of trash from their harbor, solar-powered. And we are actually working on one of these through a joint venture with the public and the private sector and, excuse me, the funding public that you guys... So we had this opportunity to get this fund, and you guys jumped on it. We had like two days to do this, and it was a time thing. We didn't, we didn't get it this year, but we're not going to give up. But boom, you guys were on it, and I've forgotten the gentleman who's the fun, the fellow, he's so good.
John Kapler.
John Kapler, he's just amazing. And so you guys go beyond, you know, they throw so many hurdles at you with these things. You just, you would say, well, anybody would just normally just give up. But I'm just so, your perseverance and your steadfast, you keep trying and trying and trying, and a lot of times, you get them, and it does show. It is amazing, and I commend you guys for it, and I keep doing it. So thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, well, thank you, Dave, and staff, and good presentation, and we'll look forward to continued discussion. All right, next item, number six, John Wayne Airport Next Gen Update. Mr. Kiff, I guess, will be updating us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. I'm going to be cognizant of your time, too, because we want to, I know you have some closed session items to go through. I'm going to go through about a 10-minute presentation, and then welcome your comments and questions. Actually, I'm not going to start with what's on the slide yet, but just a next-gen update for you, and this is in your staff report. We have heard back, kind of indirectly, from the FAA on a couple of different things. One is that we do, they are sounding like they're going to respond to comments on our environmental assessment, and that comes from a larger meeting they had with airports in the region, where they, they said that before further next-gen steps are taken, they will address some of those comments, possibly within their final document versus a side, side-by-side comments. They did, they did, they're still on time for, sorry, the timeline slipped a little bit for the adoption of the more, the RNAV or the more narrowed pathways. There's one called the PIGON, which again, this is for flights going east and south, about half the flights. That's supposed to be finalized by January of 2017 now. Previously, I think that was November of 16. And then in April 2017, the Fins and a new replacement for the Halo called the Hero would be adopted, and those would be for flights generally going to the north, the other 50%. So the other next-gen update, which is in your staff report, they did respond to our letter, the letter that you suggested sending, the aviation committee suggested sending, that would have a curved departure pattern in the upper bay. So not necessarily one turn, but maybe two turns for, in this case, the Fins and the Hero. And the comments back to me was, hey, we're interested in talking about that with you. We'd like to see your presentation, city. So balls back in our court, we're going to work on some technical work to hold that meeting with the FAA staff. I'll keep you posted on that. So I was intrigued that they had said, kind of gave a tentative, it's not necessarily a yes, but hey, we'd like to hear more about that. So if no more questions on next-gen, I'm going to move to the other subject in this item, which is air emission studies. So I'm back to the screen, please, Leilani, thanks. So a quick update of, we're going to throw back to 2009, in an air quality study that the city contracted with Dr. Carleen Boyle at the time. And what she was looking for was, on your screen here, the different sites that she looked at, she was looking for a footprint that showed that aircraft emissions could be identified separately from other emissions. So that was the primary reason for her work. I'm going to thumb through what some of her conclusions were. Oh, by the way, this is what the stations looked like. They're, they were only up for a short period of time. This is the one that I think is by the Orange Crush. I don't know if we still call it that, we used to call it the Orange Crush there, 57, 22, and the five. These were her conclusions, though, of the study. She said that in terms of particulate matter of a micron size of 2.5, that the concentrations, even despite the airport, were within federal air quality standards. She did detect some type of difference between some of those locations in terms of PM 2.5. And she said that with some further study, which we had not embarked upon yet, have not embarked upon yet, we may be able to more refine into a chemical fingerprint that might allow you to actually source these, these emissions. She also noted some, some things that other previous studies did. And then I'm going to, she did suggest that, she said that the results of the 2009 study did suggest that there were peaks associated with takeoffs and landings related to PAHs when averaged over hours, as well as particle-associated metals. And then that last one, that particle, particulate emissions can persist up to 10 kilometers from an airport. And this is 10 kilometers, that black line, that's about 32,800 feet, couldn't quite get it precisely. But you could see almost all of Newport Beach, then, would be within that boundary. So that's what the 2009 study looked at. Sure.
In conclusion of that, to that study, there was, it was still within, the emissions that she tested were within the standards.
Yeah, regularly Newport Beach, because of our proximity to the coast, we are always within federal air quality standards, especially relating to particulate matter 2.5. And that arguably is one of the most health-consequential things, because it, not only, we can't see it, we can't smell it, it will get into our lungs and into our bloodstream fairly So I also took a look in preparation for this discussion, just some of the material that others have done, including the FAA. And the FAA puts this out, and I just thought this was thoughtful to share. They're looking at when, in a particular metropolitan area, what are aircraft emissions contributions to the problem? And here you have nitrous oxide, volatile organic compounds in the PM 2.5. You can see it's fairly small. And again, these are, these are fairly major metropolitan areas, and what the, most of the studies will show is that the predominant problem is with autos and buses and things that have a less efficient combustion system than, say, an aircraft, airplane. This is from a symposium that the University of California-Davis puts on. I went to it a couple of years ago. Aaron was able to go this year, so this is some of the material he brought back, which talked about, in this case, greenhouse gas emissions by sector. This is again, across, this is actually across the planet versus just in our locality, but aviation is about 2% overall of GHG emissions. So this would vary by geography and proximity to an airport, but just to frame it a little bit.
Excuse me, on the previous slide, do you compare with Newport Beach with those metropolitan cities, a previous one to that?
No, we have not done a study that's that detailed for Newport Beach, if that's what you're asking.
Right, and the slide where you had the metropolitan cities?
Right, we don't, we don't have Newport Beach or John Wayne Airport numbers associated with that. These were other studies done in other major airports. And this slide talks about, of that 2%, what, what's kind of the problem, at least with greenhouse gas emissions? And generally, 79% of that comes from the aircraft in cruise mode. The area that we'd be concerned the most about is that 12%, which is landings and takeoff mode, primarily takeoff in this case. And John Wayne, to its credit, has done a lot of different things to reduce emissions on the ground, including how they operate their tanks and their fleets of the little carts that run the luggage around, et cetera. They're, they're one of the most efficient airports that we've seen. So some promising trends, notwithstanding any studies that we're doing. The FAA has been fairly aggressive in a program called CLEAN, and I didn't write down the acronym, what that means, but it is part of their next-gen effort. They've got five-year agreements with Boeing, GE, Honeywell, Pratt Whitney, Rolls-Royce. The latter four are engine makers, of course Boeing is making the plane. And they're seeing that some of the things that they're working on and succeeding in are cutting, landing, and takeoff emissions, again, that 12% that we're concerned about, 60% below what are international standards. They're seeing that already, and this is from documentation, again, that was at the conference that Aaron was at. They're also embarking on CLEAN 2, which is to improve technology even more beyond that. They're working on alternative fuels called Farm-to-Fly. These are actually biofuels for airplanes, airlines. And one promising thing for us involving how many general aviation, these are the small commuter planes, the private planes, leave John Wayne Airport, is that aviation gas, which is what they use, they're, they're working to remove lead from that by 2018. So that'll be a significant change nationwide, and certainly in our area. I think that might be in the last slide. No, oh, sorry, this is the transition plan for the ABGAS, the ABGAS. So again, hopefully, that, that will give some improvement to us. So the question for you, and I'll stop talking to my presentation now, is the aviation committee, and Bonnie's here, Bonnie O'Neil had said, expressed some concerns, you know, I've got that gunk on my patio furniture, I've got it on my railings, I've got it on my house. I'm concerned about what it's doing to me and my family. And she was hopeful that we could spend some time and resources to further identify what that might be, whether or not there's a marker, and then use it for some good. And Bonnie and I have talked about this a number of times, to try to figure out what the good is, and arguably, there are different things you could use it for, including hopefully keeping John Wayne neighborhood-friendly, or to going to the EPA and the FAA and saying, continue to make improvements in terms of your efficiency. And the good news is, again, the air carriers want to do that, because it saves the money on fuel. But the question for you is, should we embark upon another study? Then Dr. Boyle had proposed a scope of work, that's the attachment to your staff report, anywhere from 77 to $106,000. And it would look at more sampling and maybe more robust sampling, and just kind of further the work that was done previously. I am admitting to being on the fence about this. I always worry, I think more data is always good, but I don't quite know what we do with more data. The, this is a, an national, obviously, it's international industry, and highly regulated by the US EPA through the FAA. And I don't know whether we'd have any shot at making any changes with that study. But I did want to bring that to you as a promise to Mr. Petros and to Bonnie O'Neil, so certainly welcome your comments or questions.
Can I just ask a quick question? Why, why wasn't that recommended study filed up in 2009? Was there an active discussion about that?
There was a discussion about Phase 2. Dr. Boyle proposed what could be a Phase 2. We were hitting right in the middle of the recession at the time, and we weren't allocating funds towards, towards much like that.
Okay, questions?
Dave, hasn't there been studies like this done at other airports, like Santa Monica and places like that? And what's ever happened with them?
Generally, they're just information-only. The, the only action that's, that's ever been taken involving, as I understand it, an air quality study was, was done by Earth Justice, and it was more a nationwide effort. And Earth Justice sued the US EPA and the federal government to actually start to have them regulate aircraft for greenhouse gases, in this case. And the US EPA just start, as a result of that lawsuit, started rulemaking of that this past July. But that's the only impact I've ever seen in terms of moving forward on that. The rest has been just FAA and carrier-initiated, again, mostly to save fuel.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I'd be concerned that if we're just doing something as a one-off study like that without, I mean, if we're part of a larger group or something, it might have some effect, but just us by ourselves, I'm not sure what would come of it.
Any other questions on the site? Oh, I don't have my thing. Mr. Mayor Protem, Muldoon.
I'm sure I know the answer to this already, but does UCI have a department that'd be interested in doing something? I personally would be open to contributing, but probably not this much, to this kind of information. Are there any other organizations you consider? Just because I don't believe there's anything we could do with it. I think plaintiffs could, if they had a suit in mind, if they wanted to pursue that, they could show us egregious enough, but I don't think the information's going to be a game changer for us, so...
Well, I haven't asked, but I'm sure, I know UCI likes to get involved in more things.
The follow-up on that, AQMD, do they do studies of this?
Yeah, they, they look at, for every area, everything from nitrous oxide to PM 2.5, and they'll actually study that daily. And we're all, the, the sampling area that we're conglomerated into is Huntington Beach and Newport Beach, roughly. It's kind of north-central Orange County. And again, we're, we're always well below every standard. But there, to my knowledge, there isn't a sampling location, for instance, right at Galaxy Park, or right in the anniversary tract. It's a, it's a more conglomerate that combines our two cities' averages.
Any other questions up here?
And Mr. Kiff, I believe that the AQMD monitoring stations have been selected based on their proximity to the more offensive modes, like at the 405 and the 55 interchange, up on the 57 freeway. They know where air quality emissions are generated and could cause an impact, and they've located them there.
You know better than I do about that. I wasn't able to determine exactly where the stations are.
Okay, let's open it up for public comment. Questions from the public, please come forward.
Thank you, Dave. I appreciate you bringing this up to the council. I do also like your idea of contacting...
If you could just say your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Bonnie O'Neil. I do appreciate, Kevin, your, your comment about possibly working with UCI on a study that, we had considered this before, to find out, does the community that lives directly under the flight path, or how far would that extend in Newport Beach? Are there more lung problems? Are there more cancer rates? What is happening with the health? Is it, is it, is it higher among these residents than it is in other places? I think that'd be a pretty fairly easy one to do, and since UCI has a lot of research capacity, that I think if the city council actually asked them about that and proposed it, it might be interesting to see if we could get some actual facts without going into another major study with Dr. Boyle. That's, that would be a suggestion that wouldn't really, I don't think, cost much money, especially if it came as a request from city council.
Very good.
I'd be willing, if the colleagues agree, to author a letter, just requesting at least the appropriate person at UCI, see if there's any interest in one of the departments, and just start it from there, if...
I would, I support that.
If that's okay with everyone. I'll do that.
Any other public comments? Thank you. Any other public comments? Please come forward. Seeing none, all right.
Before we left that, Madam Mayor and Mr. Muldoon, so is your thought that the UCI review might be more of a health impacts versus emissions? Because...
Well, I think offering either angle may interest one of the departments, and they could find some funding or ask us for a much smaller amount. So I'd be more open to, to working with them. I just wouldn't support right now this, this ask.
All right.
That's me, but...
Okay, Mr. Petros.
Madam Mayor, I, the aviation committee has done some really good work of late to really focus on the issues where we have some possible outcome to. Mr. Kiff spoke of the FAA's willingness to even enter into a dialogue with us on the takeoffs, and that was something that came out of the aviation committee. I believe we should be focused in pursuing those opportunities where we can have the greatest impact. Dr. Boyle's study already tells us that the, the emissions profiles are well within the federal standards. And I'm not sure that getting any more data is going to help us with what, an outcome. Here, we've got a perfect opportunity. Here we've got a perfect opportunity to marshal our resources and get an effect that will improve the lifestyle of those people under the flight path. It'll, it could possibly get the planes up higher faster, it could make the turns such that the noise profiles are different. We have this opportunity. We should be marshaling our resources to make an effect there. And so therefore, if there is a desire to want to do this, I would support Councilman, or Mayor Protam Muldoon's suggestion to partner with others for the purpose of just information gathering. But I think we're on good stead to really make some change, and we should really be using our resources for that.
Very good. Any other comments up here? Seeing none. So, Mr. Kiff, thank you. Are we clear on next steps? A letter to UCI and then continuing to push on the FAA on the improvements on flight takeoff?
Yeah, I think I'd take it from, not an official council direction, but Mr. Muldoon will, I'll help Mr. Muldoon with the letter, and he can send that as a request just to go further on that. And obviously, we'll be working on the curb departure pattern with the FAA.
Very good. Okay. Moving on, Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are invited on items listed on the agenda and non-agenda items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items.
Any public comments? Please come forward.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, as you know, my name is Jim Mosher. I wanted to speak to you this afternoon about dogs and seals, the dog beach and the city seal. You may recall that back in February, there was a staff recommendation to help the county get the dogs off the de facto dog beach at the mouth of the Santa Ana River, and the city manager properly referred that to the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission. What you may not know is, at the end of a very raucous PBNR meeting in March, the public was told that they would get a second chance to debate the matter when their recommendation, which was to encourage the county to legalize the dogs, came back to you. In view of that, two weeks ago, I questioned the propriety of four of you appearing on television, apparently backing Supervisor Steele's proposal to implement the PBNR recommendation prior to the council as a whole having taken a position on it. Because the county is rather slow to post documents related to their meetings, what I didn't know two weeks ago is, on that very morning, all seven of you and the city manager had taken the time to write to the county board of supervisors supporting Supervisor Steele, and that's where the city seal comes in, the proper use of which some of you chose to make a really big deal about last August. And while the end result of that was the unanimous approval of some pretty incomprehensible legislation, I believe the intent was that the city seal was not to be used to give the impression that personal positions were city positions. So what I found interesting about your correspondence with the board was with the three gentlemen on this side of the dais, carefully avoided using the city's seal and wrote to the board of supervisors on plain stationary, while the four of you on this side and the city manager acted as if last August had never happened and wrote on the very official-looking city stationery. So you all may wish to reread that city code that you unanimously adopted last August and check that you all understand how it works the same. Independent of that issue of whether the city seal is supposed to be used to give the impression of officialness to personal political positions, I also found it interesting that nearly all of you said you were joining your colleagues in supporting the off-leash dogs. Now, since no discussion or correspondence among you had supposedly taken place, I leave it to you and perhaps to the city attorney to ponder what's wrong with all of you knowing what your other colleague's position is. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none. Mr. City Attorney.
The city council adjourned to close session to discuss item 4A, conference with legal counsel regarding anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation, and there are two items in that matter, and this relates to facts that are unknown to potential plaintiffs. Thank you.
We are adjourned to closed session. Thank you. May 10th, 2016. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Dixon. There's no closed session report this evening.
Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance led by Mr. Selig, followed by our invocation by Rabbi Young of the congregation Benet Zedek.
Please follow me in the pledge to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Again, take your seats for just a sec, if you would. I'm Rabbi David Young from Benet Zedek, and I want to say that I'm very impressed by a city that holds a study session. I had never heard of that before. And the word rabbi, in addition to being a clergy person, the word itself means teacher. So if I may, I'm going to begin with a very brief teaching, and I have the microphone, so I guess I may. Today, as the sun sets, a Jewish holiday begins. The holiday is called Yom HaZikaron. It is a modern holiday. It's a holiday that was started after May 14th, 1948, after the inception of the state of Israel. And it is, the words Yom HaZikaron mean literally day of remembrance. And just like later this month of May, we'll, sir, we will commemorate our own memorial day in America, this is Israeli Memorial Day. It's a coincidence that it happens to be in May. The Hebrew calendar fluctuates, I'm not going to get into that, that would be a two-hour What's also interesting about Israel's Independence Day is they commemorate it with two full minutes of silence, which is nationwide. I'm not going to do that to you tonight either, but they set off sirens, the same sirens they use for air raids when necessary. The whole country can hear them, and people will get out of their cars on the highway, in the middle of the highway, when they hear the sirens, and stand outside their cars and silently observe these two minutes with the rest of the nation. It's an incredibly moving experience. And this is all for the purpose of remembering those who were lost to Israel's wars. And as Americans, we can empathize. We have lost many, many soldiers in our wars, and this being Memorial Day, I hope that we would honor our soldiers, our veterans, and our lost brothers and sisters with a little more than picnics and beachside frisbee this year, but with our own moment of silence, be it personal or communal. So I'm going to ask first that if there are any veterans in the room, if you wouldn't mind standing. And if we could all join them in standing for just a moment of silence, not two full minutes, and after which I'll offer a memorial prayer and then the invocation. May God remember all those who exposed themselves to mortal danger in our days of struggle prior to the establishment of the state of Israel, and may God remember the soldiers of the Israeli Defense Forces who fell in the many wars in Israel's short history. May the soldiers who fell in American conflicts also be remembered with blessing as they fought valiantly to protect the rights and freedoms we hold dear. May the people of both Israel and America keep them in their memory and blessed with their seed. Let them mourn the splendor of youth, the charm of valor, the holiness of will, and the devotion of sacrifice, which came to an end in the heat of battle. May the loyal and valiant be sealed forever within the hearts of those two nations. May Israel soon know peace, and may God bless America. God, and master of all, we are assembled in the fellowship of humanity to reaffirm your eternal truth that cooperation and concord are the basis of social order, and that through the devotion to the cause of humanity, we realize the purpose of divinity. Teach us, we pray, to live in harmony with our neighbors and thus prove that we are united as your children. You command us to labor in your holy name. Teach us to labor in your spirit, in patience and in justice. May our generosity toward our neighbor and their forbearance toward us teach us the true meaning of your loving kindness. May our efforts to bring about unity clarify our vision and give fuller meaning to the words of our mouths and the meditations of our hearts. May we always remember the words of your prophet Micah who taught us to do justice, love mercy, and walk humbly with our God. May we remember that as faith leads us to peace, so too peace and concord lead us to God. Amen.
Madam Clerk.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements.
Ms. Mayor Protam Muldoon.
This is for your announcement. Yeah, for you. Okay. Thank you. I hope to put a resolution on the next council meeting, second meeting of May, honoring local legend and American hero John Wayne. His birthday is May 26th, so I hope to waive Policy A6 so it can be adopted on the 24th before his birthday, and we can officially recognize May 26th as John Wayne Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Duffield. Mr. Pieter. Mr. Petros.
No announcements.
Mr. Curry.
Thank you. Three announcements. First of all, last week, I was privileged to join my colleague, Mayor Protam Muldoon, and attend the SCAG General Assembly meeting with representatives from Southern California cities from all over the region to talk about the future. And one of the big issues that we focused on that cities need to be thinking about is the advent of driverless cars. What does that mean for our traffic laws? What does it mean for our parking regulations? What does it mean for the safety of our community? The DMV is working on that. We need to be engaged in that as we think about our future as a community as well. Secondly, we recently had a press conference, as was alluded to in study session, regarding the so-called dog beach. There are some city policy issues that we need to resolve. I'd like to have that issue brought back. I understand the county also has some capital project issues going on with that, so that the council can provide some input relative to policy as it relates to the city's interface with that project. And then, thirdly, I've been asked by our CERT team, I was a CERT volunteer and did go through the CERT training, to read the following announcement. On Saturday, May 14th, from 9:00 to noon, the city's nationally-recognized and award-winning community emergency response team, or CERT, will conduct its third annual multi-neighborhood emergency preparedness drill as part of FEMA's American Prepare-a-Thon event. Participating neighborhoods from all over Newport Beach will set up neighborhood CERT command posts in accordance with FEMA City of Newport Beach activation procedures and protocols. CERT signs will be displayed in participating neighborhoods to indicate a simulated disaster incident. Members will survey their neighbors, discover and respond to these incidents using search and rescue techniques, first aid, CPR, radio communications, and organizational skills to manage command post personnel and the flow of information. Residents of Newport Beach are encouraged to visit any of the clearly-marked CERT neighborhood command posts, observe and help these dedicated volunteers in action, and learn more about the emergency preparedness of our community. For information, email newportbeachcert@gmail.com, that's N-B-C-E-R-T, board, at gmail.com, or caller text 949-287-3807. In a disaster, organized neighborhood teams provide a bridge between residents and the city during times when normal operations and communications are disrupted. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Selig, any announcements?
No items.
Mr. Muldoon.
Yes, thank you. City Attorney gave me the look. I have to disclose a couple of things. One is, I attended a conference here locally, a Lega Cities event, that actually our city attorney, Aaron Harp, invited the whole congregation to. I was very impressed by his presentation of the city. And also, as Councilman Curry said, I attended his SCAG events with him, and that event's focused mostly on transportation and some of the technologies that cities are adapting, mostly with bicycle sharing, car sharing, the future transportation. It's very interesting, and I look forward to some SF coming to our city. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. And I have a few announcements. I was, had the pleasure to participate, to enjoy and celebrate the opening of our, a number of our yacht clubs in our community. Newport Harbor Yacht Club celebrated its centennial, and then followed by the Balboa Yacht Club, the Bahia Corinthian Yacht Club, and Lido Isle Yacht Club. It was a beautiful weekend of celebration, and I'm happy to announce that all the waterways are free of ice, so I think I did my job. A couple other items of note for the community on behalf of District One, the Balboa Peninsula, we are overjoyed, thrilled, and ecstatic that the Lido House Hotel has begun to, the project has begun, and the demolition of the old city hall, I guess that is a moment of sadness, is taking place. So it's been fenced, and the work is going to begin to proceed. So I know that makes the residents of Lido and the Balboa Peninsula very happy. Also, speaking of Lido, we have the theater, the Lido Theater is open and functioning and operating first-run commercial movies, so I was there last weekend, and there'll be more first-run movies coming, so please, let's all patronize our movie theaters in our community. A reminder that the deadline is tomorrow for residents who are interested in submitting application forms to be considered for an appointment to a council-appointed board, commission, or committee. So tomorrow at noon is the deadline. And I also have two announcements for our library, which are always fun to announce, Bunnies and Books for Kids Festival, the Third Annual Bunnies and Books for Kids Festival is this Saturday, May 14th, at the Central Library and on the civic green from 10:00 AM to 1:00. And kids can enjoy bunny-themed stories, crafts, games, and have their faces painted, and you could go to the website, newportbeachlibrary.org, for more details. And also, another item, on Saturday, May 21st, from 8:00 AM to noon, the city and CRNR Trash Company are hosting a shred event at the Central Library parking lot, and so please come and turn in all the papers you want shredded. And then one final note, and so many people are here this evening, and I have to announce that I'm going to be departing the council chambers at about 10 minutes to 8:00, and not because I don't want to participate and listen, but I have to get on a red-eye flight to await tomorrow the arrival of my grandson, who lives, will live in New York City once he's born tomorrow morning, so I promised my daughter I would fly tonight. So I have to leave a little early to catch the 9:30 flight, but I want you to know that I'll try to listen anyway. I can't vote, but I will try to listen until I get on my flight. And then Mayor Protam Muldoon will take over for me. All right, so let's begin. Madam Clerk.
Public comments on consent calendar. This is a time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion, items one through 11. Public comments are invited on consent calendar for members of the audience. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
So we'll take the matters at the council level first. Mr. Petros.
Mr. Petros.
I'd like to pull Item 5.
Mr. Curry.
No items to pull, but I will be recording a recusal on Item 5 to an AT&amp;T shareholder, stockholder conflict on the advice of the city attorney.
Mr. Selich.
No items.
Mr. Pieter.
7 and 9, please.
Mr. Duffield. And Mayor Protem.
Can you remove Item 5 from tonight's agenda?
No, it's going to be discussed separately.
It's going to be, it means it's being pulled for continued open discussion.
Oh, great.
An opening of discussion.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
That's okay. Recusal on myself for Item 5 and 10 due to my business employment.
5 and 10. All right, so now...
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I would also record a recusal on Item 10 as well.
All right. Do we move affirmative action on those items that remain on...
After public comment on those items that are still on.
All right, so we will now move into public comment on, I'm going to change the order, we're going to, because I'm going to be leaving. If I may, let's put Item Number 9 first, Mr. Pieter, and that is the, let me get to my page.
I'm sorry, we're going to take public comments on the items we're not removing, and then vote on that part of the consent calendar first, and then come back to 9.
That would be the right way to do it.
Oh, I apologize. All right, we're taking public comments on the items we are not removing, so everything excluding 5, 7, and 9. All right, sir.
I'm Craig Smith. I'm a member of the Balboa Village Emergence Association.
Are you going to be speaking on 9?
Number 9.
We're going to hold that. These are just items that are not being pulled.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, hold your thought. Everything but 5, 7, or 9. Any other comments?
I move adoption subject to 5, or I second Mr. Muldoon's motion.
Made a motion yet? He hasn't made the motion.
I have not, but I accept your second.
I agree.
I move the balance consent calendar, Items 1 through 11, with clarifications on Item 5 from staff, recusal on Items 5 and 10 by myself and Councilman Curry, Item 7 and 9 pulled by Councilman Pieter, and Item 5 pulled by Councilman Petros.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for Item 3, Ordinance Number 2016-9, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Newport Beach approving Code Amendment Number CA 2016-001, amending setbacks for property located at 1902 East Balboa Boulevard. The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right, now we'll move to the three items that were pulled. That means that they'll be brought forward for continued discussion. Mr. Pieter, can we start with Item Number 9, please?
You want to go backwards?
Yeah.
Reason I pulled this item, this is the sign for Balboa Village, and I'm concerned about its cost, I'm concerned about how it fits in the overall improvement of the district. I don't, I'm not sure that I can support the taxpayer funding for it, so I don't know if there's a staff report that we want to talk about, or if we want to just discuss it. It's up to you.
Any other comments from the council?
I'd like staff to chime in for the record for those, how it will be funded.
Sure. This is a project that started out in 2014. Councilmember Han worked with the BVAC, and they wanted to do an entry arch sign coming in on Balboa Boulevard. The original CIP in 2014-15 was included, $200,000 to do this sign. There was an artist rendering approved by the BVAC. As that rendering got further along in finance, the BVAC also added lighting to the sign, which added to the cost, and that's why you see an overrun today. We illuminated the light and added a little more detail to the sign. So right now, we're planning on funding it with the original amount that was in for the sign. In addition, we have wayfinding money that the BVAC set aside, and this is one of the wayfinding elements that would cover the difference.
From the Parking Assessment District?
Parking Assessment District.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
So we've got, we call it the wayfinding signs. So we've got, what, 20 some odd signs that are going to be big blue ovals on streetlights up and down the peninsula?
That's correct.
And so is this actually part of this overall plan?
Maybe Kim can correct that, but the BVAC actually had an individual budget line item for additional wayfinding in Balboa Village as a specific look. So they have money set aside in their planned budget along with the entry sign, if I got that correct.
Yeah, that is correct. If I could just tag on to what Dave was saying, is that this entry arch actually went back to 2012. The Balboa Village area was a revitalization area that was identified by the city council. There was a citizens advisory panel that came up with a master plan for Balboa Village, which included the wayfinding. We had an Urban Land Institute Technical Advisory Panel come in, and two years ago, and as part of their concepts, they included an entry arch. And then that entry arch design concept was then further identified through an additional study that the Balboa Village Advisory Committee has undertaken. So the city council has adopted a wayfinding sign program, a component from that master plan, that subsequent master plan, which is what Dave is responding to. So that's where that funding is coming in addition to the $200,000.
So we've got neighborhoods all over the city. Are we looking at putting similar arches in all of these neighborhoods around the city to identify them?
Not necessarily. I think what's important here is that this was part of a revitalization effort for Balboa Village, where we're looking at a comprehensive master plan of different types of improvements that could occur in the public realm, which would help stimulate economic investment into the village by private property owners as well.
Okay, so two of our main property owners down there, one of them's Explore Ocean, which has just been, let's say, partnered up now with Discovery Museum, and the Balboa Theater, which now the same developer that did the camp and some of these other innovative shopping centers is, we're in negotiations with them. We haven't concluded negotiations. Does it make sense to get input from those two entities in this? Because I presume they have not had input into it.
That's a really good question. Explore Ocean has been on the, a member of the Balboa Village Advisory Committee, so they have been a voice and a stakeholder in the various plans that have been developed and adopted for the village. If the sale of the property goes forward with this, with the lab company, that would be a new property owner, a new stakeholder, and as somebody that we could certainly work with as we move forward. But I don't think that there's anything here that the archway sign, which would preclude any of the plans that we're anticipating for those two properties.
We're not getting input from those two, but we're not, it's not going to get in the way of developing it.
Correct, correct. So there is a subsequent, the archway sign was a key component to the wayfinding, to the wayfinding project, but there's still more wayfinding signs that need to be designed and go through the Balboa Village Advisory Committee, which then they would be a part of, too, you know, in terms of soliciting input from stakeholders.
Yeah, and that's part of my problem, is that we have these blue ovals that we approved, and if I recall correctly, that was not a cheap sign program. That was a couple hundred thousand dollars on that program, too. Now we've got another $260,000 for this, and we still don't have a complete picture of all of the signs that everybody wants and that they're proposing. So I have a difficult time supporting this. I have a difficult time wondering why we even need an arch down there, and I would like to see the innovativeness of some of the newer partners down there and the major projects have input into it. So I would like to, well, maybe after public input, I'd like to maybe table this for a year until we can get that kind of information.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Petros.
I would just point out that Mr. Sadegi of the lab was on the ULI panel and had direct input here. The folks from Explore Ocean have been a member of the BVAC and have, in fact, provided input to this and to all the wayfinding signs. In terms of a comprehensive overall sign plan, there is a sign, a comprehensive sign plan that includes all of the elements. There isn't something that's going to come later, or next, or around. This is part of and implementing a complete and comprehensive overall sign program. One element is interconnected with them all. So there, it is complete. It does have the support of those that you refer to, and is seen as something complimentary to the vision of the redevelopment of Balboa Village.
Thank you. Any other comments?
All right, let's open it up to public comment. Please come forward if you're, there are a number of you, if you would, please form a line so we can move through it quickly.
Okay, I'll start over. Mayor Dixon and council members, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Again, I'm Craig Smith. I'm a member of the Balboa Village Merchants Association, and I'd just like to make two brief points. One is that the merchants in Newport Beach contribute $37 million in sales taxes to the city's 2015-2016 budget of $197 million. That's in addition to property taxes that the businesses pay. The revenues from a parking district in the Balboa Village is a major source of funding for this sign. We've had several years of discussion about this and the importance that the merchants feel that it will play a role in bringing additional customers to the village, and that, of course, is going to benefit the city indirectly through additional parking fees paid into the parking district, and more importantly, to increase sales taxes. So I don't think, as a businessman, it's an expense to the city. I think it's an investment in future revenue growth. I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Greetings, council, council members, Mayor Dixon. I've been a member of BVAC, and I'm a member of the Merchants Association down there, and this whole revitalization of the...
Excuse me, Craig, could you say your name? Did you say your name?
My name is Craig Batley.
Okay.
I've been, I've been involved in this process for years, and this is a landmark sign that identifies the, if you will, the village and home of the Fun Zone. And this is a sign that's going to last about 50 years. The city has spent millions of dollars revamping that whole area down there, sidewalks, improvements. This is a long time coming. This is sort of a last stamp. It's not out of the general fund. It's already been pretty much paid for. Everybody's had input, and to even have a discussion about whether we should have this sign or not is, I think, kind of incredulous. This is a done deal. There's been many, many hundreds of hours of time spent on this whole project down there, and this has been a topic of conversation, and this is a sign that helps identify the village. They did a survey some time ago about Balboa Island, Balboa Village. Nobody knows about Balboa Village. They know about Balboa Island. They also know about the home of the Fun Zone. But this is a sign that incorporates both those names, Balboa Village and home of the Fun Zone. It's going to be a landmark sign to be part of all the advertising, drawing the customers down there, the visitors. I'm totally fair with this, and so is everybody that is involved in the peninsula down there, as far as the merchants are concerned.
Thank you very much. Next.
My name's Marcel Ford. I'm the president of the Balboa Village Merchant Association. I apologize for my appearance. I would have gone home and dressed up a little bit, but I ran out of time. It's my first city hall meeting, so please bear with me. I wanted to say thank you very much for your time, as I know a lot of you guys essentially volunteer your time to be on the city hall and to make this city a great location, a global iconic location for a lot of visitors. Balboa Village, unfortunately, has been a forgotten area for decades, in my opinion, until recently receiving a lot of your much-needed help. The BVMA is working really hard on nickels and dimes to work our way out of this blighted image. If you just walk around the Balboa Village for about an hour, the place needs a lot of help. So, you know, if you look at it, it's really not, it's hard to believe it's in Newport Beach. When you see Fashion Island, and you see Mariners Mile, and you see, you know, a lot of these different locations, Balboa Village is kind of beat up, needless to say. So we're working our way out of it. We started a very successful, the Balboa Village started a very successful car show. It's every Sunday. We held two Balboa craft beer festivals that have been sold-out events, and we had no incidences. We also had the Christmas tree lighting ceremony, which helps a lot of elementary school kids. They sing choirs, and we have music, and cookies, and hot cocoa, and so forth, introducing the first Balboa chili cook-off concept. Balboa Point, or Peninsula Point, is kind of phasing out of the chili cook-off, so we're adopting it, and as well as the Chalk Art Festival with a lot of your support and participation. We need a lot of help. We've received a lot of help. We've had the facade improvement program. We've got the police presence to reduce crime. We're getting brighter streetlights to encourage evening strolls, and the trolley concept, obviously, to fight our parking issues. I realize the processes must be followed, and I know that there's systems to be in place and so forth, but once the BVAC has reviewed, approved, accepted, and we've done all the due diligence, I really encourage you guys to keep the gateway sign moving, get it accepted, get it improved. The village really needs as much help as we can possibly get, and I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hello, my name's Bud Waringa. I am from Cruiser's Pizza Bar Grill. The only thing I would like to add is, I don't think that this should be seen as a cost, as it should be seen as an investment. You know, we've really only been a Balboa Village now for, what, two years or a year since we've been branded, and our biggest problem is having an identity. And since being part of the Balboa Merchant Association, it's so difficult to, A, run a business down there because it is so seasonal, and the beach doesn't really provide the business that most people probably think it does. And so now that we finally have this brand that we can build ourselves around, it's very exciting to us, and to actually say something that Mr. Pieter said about the new businesses coming in, I think that makes it even more important so that we have this archway, and we have this, this thing now that says, hey, guys, look at what we are. There's this village down here. No one knows about it, but now you do, and we have this archway, and we have something that we can really stand behind. So, you know, in terms of a cost, I don't think it should be seen as a cost. You know, see it as an investment. I think that, you know, we work very hard for no money at all, just to improve this district, all of us merchants. We're fully all behind it, and I think that doing this, doing the archway and the additional, you know, things that we're trying to improve the village with, will bring in more businesses that are going to be able to be more successful. Therefore, you're going to get more city tax dollars, and I don't think, I don't think it should be seen as a cost, and I'm very much for it.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Kelly Carlson. I'm actually vice president of the Balboa Village Merchant Association. My husband and I own Balboa Water Sports, and last May we opened the Balboa Beach and Bicycle Boutique. For any of you that come down to the Fun Zone area, the parking lot right there, you'll see a big, beautiful sign. I might have designed it, but I still am confident to say that it's beautiful. My husband and I have put our heart and soul into this area. We've spent lots and lots of money, but it would have been way easier to go vacation, to put good businesses down in Balboa because we care about it. And I attend the BVAC meetings very regularly. I would say I was at every meeting that they went back and forth about this archway and the design of it, and do we need this light? Do we need this component? And I know it wasn't this exact city council, it was the past city council that actually started this revitalization and created the BVAC, but they did that because there was a reason, and we needed it. We needed revitalization, we needed a group of people that were focused on getting us what we need. They have hammered out the design of this. They've gone back and forth for over, gosh, 18 months now. So it's really, really concerning and painful to see that it's now going to get pulled from the consent calendar because it's a little bit extra money. Well, it took us this long to get here, so yeah, it went up in price. And signs are expensive because things are expensive. I can't even imagine what Irvine Company spends every year on signage. So the village needs this. We need an identity. We need people to understand where they are when they get there because they're going in circles lost because there's nothing identifying that they've arrived in Balboa Village. So I just want to make sure all of you know that as small business owners... So I just want to make sure all of you know that as a small business owner, that obviously is kind of young to own two businesses, we need this for our business to succeed. And if you want that area to succeed as a business entity, we need this sign. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. If anybody else wants to speak next, why don't you line up there so we move it through faster? Okay.
Hi. Mike Thompson. I'm also a member of the Village Merchants Association, and I agree with everything they said. But I grew up in this town. I've seen all the changes. My parents moved to a place in the peninsula, which we just recently sold a few years ago. But when I was three years old, I've lived around here since I was three years old and worked here. And, you know, that village down there is like, it's old town. It's--that's represents what Balboa really is. And I think we need that sign. I really do. So that's it. That's all I have to say.
Thank you very much.
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I personally don't see how this sign is going to revitalize anything, but if the council did want to approve it regarding the funding, contrary to what one of the previous speakers said, my understanding, a few years ago, when the council was planning to set aside $180,000, $260,000 for this, that money came from the citywide taxpayer-funded general fund. And the reason for--since that time, this council has created what is called an area benefit district for that area funded by the parking fees that are from people frequenting these merchants. That was not an option when the money was originally being considered where it would come from. I think you might want to rethink that because it would seem to me, if you were going to pay for this, that would be the appropriate source of funds, not the general fund. Thank you.
On that point, Mr. Kip, do you want to clarify where the source--
I may need Dave to do that for me.
Yeah, there's two sources of funding on this. The original $200,000, which there is $179,000 in your staff report left, that was general fund at the time. We had two signs in the budget. That was from 2014-15. We are also augmenting that with parking revenue that's been identified for wayfinding of $81,000.
The parking assessment is--
Parking assessment is part of this, but the majority is the original general fund investment.
Okay. Any other public comments? Please come forward.
Leslie Miller, homeowner down there. I'm in favor of the sign, and I'm aware of a precedent. And in fact, I suggested it. It's on Palm Canyon Road in Palm Springs, and there has been exactly the effect that these people say. It separates off the area that is the main part of that village. And also, I just wanted to remind you that it is a piece of art, so it needs to be submitted to the Art Commission. Thank you.
Good point. All right. Any other comments? Bring it back to the council.
Madam Mayor, I would move the item.
Second.
Any comments? Let's have a vote.
Oh. Councilmember.
Mr. Duffield wants to speak.
It's a done deal, so I don't know. Well, I contacted several people that I respect down there, and I appreciate all the time and energy that's gone into this. And I don't like to be on the opposite side of a popular thing, but I just, I have to say, I didn't get very far with the folks I spoke to. They were confused as to why this sign would stimulate business or locate the, you know, there's only one road there. You can't miss it. If you can't turn left or right, you're going to--it's one road, and you get there. So I'm not sure wayfinding, I'm not sure I buy that. I wish it could be smaller. I wish--I know a sign is a great thing, but it's just so dominating. And I'm not sure that that's going to--is the exact thing that is necessary for this economic boom to happen. I would definitely say you need a sign. I just wish it wasn't so domineering. I think that the residents I spoke to, I guess they don't like coming to public meetings and voicing their opinion, but they weren't thrilled about it. I don't--I think it's a lot of money, but it's in the big picture of, it's probably not a lot of money. But in the end of the day, I just wish it would've been smaller. And, you know, I just, I think, I'm a big businessman guy down there. I love the business, the business world. I'm a businessman. I just don't see the connection of the sign saving everybody's business. You know, you have a very seasonal, and I do too, business, and, you know, we have to just live with that. It's what it is. Winter comes, it rains, it's cold, and it's not going to stimulate business in the winter. Suddenly, you have a sign, and now all of a sudden, your winter is going to be better in business. I don't, I just don't see it. I wish it was smaller, and for that reason, I'm going to oppose that. Thank you.
Just one final comment. We've had the BVAC, and I was privileged to serve on the BVAC for a while, have been working for years on strategies to revitalize Balboa Village. They've held public hearings. They've met with the community. This is a part of the outcome of their process. It is so incredibly short-sighted of us if we substitute our judgment for the businesses that we prefer to testify here tonight, for the people who live on the peninsula, for the people who are invested day in and day out in the revitalization of Balboa Village, for our own personal political views on this. Utterly short-sighted. I think the arch is a critical part of revitalizing the peninsula. I'm proud to join Mr. Petros in supporting it, and I am confident that it's going to help part of our overall strategy to revitalize Balboa Village.
Well, and I will make a comment in support of it. And I've gone to, for the last two, some years, gone to the BVAC meetings and the Merchant Association meetings and see the passion and the commitment to revitalizing our community in Balboa Village and the hours and time and blood, sweat, and tears that people have to really care about Balboa Village. And I'd like people, more business people, who care about our community to attend these meetings and witness for themselves the passions of business owners who want to make the season in the good months so that they can get through the slow months. So I will support this measure too because I think it really will create an identity, a sense of identity in this newfound revitalization that will be occurring in Balboa Village. Thank you.
We've reset the vote, so if you can vote again.
Okay, that would happen, yeah. I originally voted yes, then I was swayed by council over here, Duffield, and I thought it was not the most pleasant-looking sign, but I, there's no man I trust more for his judgment of the business in the harbor area, so I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Duffield, thank you. Yes. With councilmembers Petros, Duffield, and Mayor Protem Maldun voting no, the motion carries for three.
Pieter.
I'm sorry. Pieter.
All right. Now we go backwards still. We're on item number seven. Mr. Pieter.
Madam Mayor, what I'm looking for here is just a staff report to kind of explain a little bit about what's going on. I think what the city's doing here is really good, and I think we need to hear it.
Okay. That'll either be Chief Lewis or Director of Environmental, sorry, Emergency Preparedness, Katie Ng.
I'm John Lewis, your police chief. It's my pleasure to introduce Katie Ng. She is our emergency services coordinator, and she is the author of the staff report and is also the main force behind this mitigation plan. So with that, I'd like to give it to her, and she can give you an overview of the project, the work that has gone into it, and will be available for your questions should you have some when she's concluded. Katie.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As the chief said, my name is Katie Ng, and I'm your emergency services coordinator for the city. What we're putting before you tonight is the updated local hazard mitigation plan. This is an update to our 2008 plan, which is a requirement by FEMA under the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. Basically, what this plan does is this plan is a comprehensive document that goes into great depth of what our natural hazards are in our city. So it really takes you back to the very beginning of our city and discusses, when is the first time that we have seen a tsunami, an earthquake, any of the natural hazards? Then it walks us through, going forward, now that we know what we know about those hazards, what can we do about it to mitigate it? Basically, FEMA's taken the approach of, instead of always paying for damage after the disaster, they're saying, why don't we give you some grant dollars beforehand, and let's fix these projects beforehand before they become disaster areas, and we're spending a tremendous amount of money more after a disaster? So by having our local hazard mitigation plan, it makes us eligible as a city for both pre- and post-disaster FEMA funding. So part of the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 is that we have to have a plan, which our plan was formally adopted in 2008. Then every five years, we're required to update the plan. So the city put together a committee of members of all departments to come together to look at this plan, look at what we've done the previous five years as far as in terms of projects and mitigation activities, and what should we be looking at going forward? Things that we can apply for FEMA pre-disaster funding, any projects that we want to look at in the city are covered under this plan. So I think it's a good thing. I think it's kind of our insurance policy that we can apply and are eligible for grants before the disaster. And after the disaster, we are much more likely to receive both state and FEMA funding to bring that money back into the city.
And Katie, how much, I mean, we have a cost for this thing, too. How much did we end up paying our consultant to put this together or to update what we had?
So we used the same consultant that we used in 2008. For the 2016 update, it was $13,500. We did a request for quotes, and the consultant that, Earth Consultants International, who was the author of the previous plan, they were the lowest cost to come in to update the plan for us. It's a comprehensive document. It requires a lot of maps and different things that really takes a technical specialist to do.
And really, whether or not we get FEMA grants or eligible before or after, this is something that we need to have, to have updated so that when, you know, it hits the fan, we have people that are on-call, they know what to do, and our city government doesn't fall apart in whatever that scenario is. Thank you very much, Katie. You did a great job. I like the plan, and I'll move approval of the item.
We still have to have public comment, though. Any other council comment? Let's go to public discussion. Any comment, please?
Mayor Dixon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to clarify. My understanding, this is not an emergency response plan. This is an emergency mitigation plan that is supposed to guide the city through sensible planning and various other measures that we will be less vulnerable to disasters. And that's why FEMA is encouraging us to have this so that there will be less expense when a disaster happens. And for that to happen, for us to be able to use this as a planning document, I would just like to say, I hope that this plan gets better visibility on the city website so the public knows what mitigation measures we're trying to make, and also so that the planning division uses this in guiding land use planning and so forth. So it would be very nice if this plan was available on the city's website, which the 2008 plan I do not think ever was. Thank you.
Okay. That's a good suggestion. Any other public comments? Seeing none, bring it back.
Second, Mr. Pieter's motion.
Second. Do we have any other comments? Let's vote. Okay.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
All right. Moving to item number five, the petition certification for proposed underground assessment district number 114.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Again, Madam Mayor, I'll need to recuse myself. On the advice of council, because I own AT&amp;T stock, I'm not allowed to participate in this decision.
I will also recuse myself as I work for a telecom company.
All right. Mr. Petros.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I pulled this item. There has been a long history in the heights of desires and opposition to undergrounding utilities in the area. I have been party to dozens of meetings with you, the residents, either in small groups or large groups, to go over this matter. When I saw this as a consent item, I knew that there would be enough desire to speak on this, that instead of passing it through on consent, I would pull it and allow you, the public, to join us and speak to my colleagues about your concerns, either in opposition to or in favor of, so that you get the full opportunity to address your elected officials. And with that--
Just briefly, the mayor and Mayor Protem have left, so there creates a vacuum of who runs the meeting. We could do it by seniority and have Ed run it unless the council has a different preference.
I'm happy to let Ed.
All right. Thank you. Okay. Do we have a staff report?
Good evening, council. Mark Bukowicz, the city engineer. As Councilmember Petros mentioned, we have the proponents within these two areas within Newport Heights have brought forward requesting city council consideration of their petition. We have a very lengthy staff report, and in particular, our abstract for the staff report is probably one of the longest ones we've written. But it outlines some of the questions that are being asked, in particular about our guidelines require 60% for petition certification in order for their proper, in order for these districts to move forward. Although for the last four districts that we've approved, there have been extenuating circumstances where they've been over the state law minimum of 50%. Leilani, could you pull up the screen real quick? This is the boundary for assessment district 114, and it encompasses approximately 250 homes north of Cliff Drive between Tustin and Irvine and south of 15th Street. The other boundary, and I apologize, this is the wrong direction here, but is another block segment there between Tustin and Riverside, approximately 50 homes in Newport Heights. And the question that's being asked through this petition is regarding the undergrounding of power lines here, too. And the extenuating circumstance here is that we have an upgrade of the alleys coming up. About a $4 million city investment is planned on all of the alleys in Newport Heights. This particular area encompasses approximately a quarter of the heights. So we, back on April 25th, our assessment engineer, Harris and Associates, they certified the petition at 54.2% and 59.7%. Since then, we've received several rescissions and comments and emails. And I'll ask Dennis Anderson and Allison Bulley to come up and explain all the correspondences that they've received regarding rescinding their petitions. Dennis?
Counsel, Dennis Anderson with Harris and Associates. So since April 25th, when we certified the petition for district 114, we had received 54.21% of the signatures in favor. And that certification that we did included evaluating 15 requests for rescissions of signatures to the petition. After that date, the city's received an additional 15 requests for rescinding signatures to that petition, in addition to some replacement petitions. Of the 30 total signatures that were requested to be removed from the petition, two were from properties where signatures had never been submitted, so they really had no effect on the petition itself. Two were from prior property owners. Those properties had sold, and the current owner had since signed the petition. So again, those didn't have any effect on the petition. And two more property owners have since recanted their rescission, saying that they're now in favor, and so the original signature is still valid. Six of the rescissions were from individuals that had not signed the original petition, so therefore, those were not counted. However, the 18 remaining requests for rescissions were from the individual that signed the petition, and so we did go through and remove those from our certification. So as of 3:00 this afternoon, the petition percentage had decreased from 54.21% to 51.23%, still over the 50% required by state law. In addition, I did want to mention that we did have four other signatures that were submitted that we were unable to, or the original signatures, we were unable to validate. Two of those were submitted by trusts, where we could not verify that the signature had come from the trustee for the trust, so we did not count those. And two of the signatures were from persons that did not match the ownership on the property, so therefore, we did not include those either. so therefore, we did not include those either. So finally, if no signature rescissions were counted, the district would have had a total of about 58% of the petition counted. This situation of rescinding signatures is very unique. I've been working on assessment districts for 27 years. I've never actually seen this occur before at this stage of an assessment district. It's quite common when we get to the ballot stage, because ballots have gone out and, quite frankly, people will change their vote during the ballot process. So this is fairly unique. And with that, I'm fearful for questions.
Thank you, Dennis. That basically concludes our presentation. There's a series of actions there, you know, if city council would like to approve the certification there associated with the design work and the assessment engineering. I know there's been a lot of debate and we've had—you have, I believe, the city clerk submitted all the email comments that have been received as of today. And there's a lot of opponents and proponents that are here to speak tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Selig.
Yes, Councilmember Piattar.
Mark, so what you're asking for us tonight, our policy is, we want to see 60% signatures. That way, we have some certainty that if we're going to spend all the money to run the election, that it will be successful. But state law only requires 50% for that same item, right? So what we're being asked for is, do we want to lower that threshold? We're not deciding whether to have the district, we're just deciding whether to have a vote on the district.
That's correct. It's about initiating the assessment engineering work so that actual dollars can be calculated for a balloting process. So the next step, if this was approved tonight, would be to come back to city council and consider accepting the engineer's report and then setting a public hearing and an official balloting process. You're not submitting a ba—you're not approving a balloting process tonight.
So we'll proceed with the engineering report if we decide that we want to have the election, and the engineering report will decide costs and prorate it on a per parcel basis so that everybody would have a review and be able to understand exactly how it's going to impact their specific property? And what's the city's cost associated with that? The engineering report, estimate?
Well, the contract—it's $115,000 to do the— to do all of the assessment engineering work from start to finish. So Mike's telling me it's $68,000 to go up to the balloting process.
So and then at the balloting process, if we don't get 50% of the homeowners approving it, then it dies right there and we will be out of pocket 68,000 bucks.
That's correct.
So that's the risk of it from the city's standpoint, plus the cost to actually run the election, whatever the city clerk charges for that, right? Or the—it would be the assessment engineer that would do that, too, as well, right?
Well, we have costs to date, $19,000 in costs to date, and it would take you up to $68,000 to that actual vote, up and including that actual vote.
But we've already spent that money to date, so the amount of money, if we decide to lower our threshold to— from 60 to 51.2 or whatever, that we're going to incur an additional 68,000, and that includes the actual voting by the assessment engineer. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Petros.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Selig. Can I—the fellow from Harris? You mentioned that in your rescission count, that you actually— of the 30 that were submitted, you counted 18?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yet you said there were six that were rescissions that weren't actually counted in the initial petitioning. So effectively, those six were opponents of undergrounding. You're just not counting them.
Yeah, what I meant was that there were six signatures that were received, and the city had received requests to rescind those signatures from people other than those who had signed the petition.
If you were to count those additional six, because they—if they were originally asked for the petition and said no, how would that have affected the 51.2%?
Their signatures are included, so they're included in the 51%.
They are?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, any other questions from staff? All right, just a little housekeeping thing here, just to think about while we're doing, going through public testimony, but under Charter Section 412, we need a quorum of the entire council, not a majority of those present. So in order to pass the resolution, we have to have all four yes votes. Okay, I'm going to open it up for public comments. How many folks want to speak on this? Can you raise your hand? Okay, can we form two lines here in the center and alternate microphones so we can move through this efficiently, please? Go ahead, sir, state your name, please.
Thank you for letting me speak my opinion here. My name is Douglas Smith. I live at 2404 Cliff Drive. My family has lived in this community for 67 years. We first purchased property in 1949. I was fortunate enough in 1975 to also purchase property in the city. I purchased 506 Clubhouse Avenue on the Finley Track on the Peninsula. And my older brother at the time, Dr. Bradley Smith, questioned why I would want to purchase a home so close to our parents. And I said, "Well, Bradley's because I can ride my bike to all the surf spots still." Okay, now we moved in 1998. The city comes up with this plan, they want to remove the telephone poles on Newport Boulevard. I think it's a terrific idea. I think it's fantastic. Me at 506 Clubhouse did the undergrounding, cost me $1,000. Loved it, great. My parents at 402 Clubhouse, cost them $1,000 to go underground. Terrific. In 2015, last year, my older brother, Dr. Bradley Smith, was at my Cliff Drive home and he says to me, "Douglas, do you realize that in just two years, available to the American consumer, a device called a Power Wall, invented by Elon Musk? And basically, it's the size of a 70-inch LCD television if it's on the side of your home, and it's a super, super new technology battery that will store all kinds of DC current from solar panels, so much that with two of these at your home, Douglas, you will be overflowing in DC current. Put it on your inverter and I'll be able to— my brother will be able to charge his Tesla for free at my home. These are items I want to purchase. As an American consumer, these are items I desire. I feel we live in a democratic, elected, free society as we just pledge of allegiance to. However, it seems to me that this thing that we've got going on here tonight is not representative of the individual making a decision, what is best for him, what is not best for him. I choose to purchase these Power Walls from Tesla. I choose to implement them on my home. And as Dr. Bradley told me, nowadays, Douglas, the sun power bypasses the utility companies, goes straight to the consumer. This is what I choose. This is what I want. Now, in retrospect, I have to say, those alleys—
We've got about 30 seconds left.
Those alleys should have been paved eight years ago. They're not. There's a reason why they're not, and I don't know why, but what appears to me is this keeps going on because this is not a free, democratic, elected government. This seems to me tyranny by minority, what is happening tonight.
Thank you.
My name is Burr Buhman and I live in Newport Heights. I've lived there for 33, 34 years, and I'm a lifetime resident of Newport Beach. The—not this speaker, but the previous speaker spoke of a unique situation in which there were a lot of rescind—a number of votes were rescinded, and I can address that. I received—about a year and a half ago, I received a letter on City Letterhead that basically described the underground process. And that city mailed item was a postcard that you could sign and give your name and address, and it was for further information, and that made me a signatory to the petition for undergrounding. It turns out that the wording of the letter from the city constituted a petition. I find this very disturbing, that the city of Newport Beach sends out correspondence to an area, a group of people, and by asking for further information, you now are a signatory to the petition for undergrounding. And I've been asking this question, how did this come to pass? How did the city get involved? Why was this done? And this is why there's so many rescind—there's so many people wanting to have their vote rescinded because they didn't in good conscience think they were doing this, they were asking for further information. So that's very frustrating to me, and I would love the council to pursue that, because it was on city stationery. It was mailed to me from the city as an official document, and all of a sudden, I approved. I had to fight to get my name off of that list, and I had no idea I was signing a petition. Very frustrating. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Okay, no applause, please. If you don't do that here.
Mr. Selig, could we have staff address that so that it doesn't get repeated 10 times?
Sure, yes. At the onset of both districts there on Newport Heights, the city mailed postcards expressing letters of interest. We also held two separate community meetings. Those postcards were turned in to the proponents, and then the proponents then went ahead and took those postcards and then contacted those owners and obtained their signatures on a separate petition.
Okay, so the city never solicited petition signatures from anybody?
We've lost a quorum.
Let me add this one comment to—
Grab the stop. Hold on just a moment.
Pardon me?
Well, we don't have a quorum.
Hurry up in the bathroom out there.
We're taking a temporary pause. We're missing one member of the council.
Take a pause? Can I ask a question?
No. Not to be rude, but we have procedures we have to follow.
Sure.
Who said that? Okay, Mr. Duffy's back, go ahead. Oh, now did the staff finish? Did you finish your comments? Okay, okay ma'am, go ahead, go on.
Hi, my name is Susan Kopicki. I've been a resident in Newport Heights since 1971. I first learned about the undergrounding petition in the spring of 2015 and soon met many neighbors who also opposed undergrounding. In talking to them, it became clear that many had signed a document without being told the real significance of their signature. I was told, when presented with this document, that it would, quote, "force the city to conduct a study and tell us how much it would cost." Some of my neighbors were told, quote, "It just means you want more information about undergrounding." What I'm describing is what people experienced, and their experience matters because that's their experience. Both of these are misleading statements, and people felt misled when several—when they realized the significance of the signature. At that point, they asked, "How do I get my name off that list?" We checked with city staff and passed along instructions, which were to send an email to the project engineer. Several homeowners who requested that their names be removed received confirmation soon after requesting it. Then last week, when we were able to see the submitted petition on May 3, their names were still included. Plus, several homeowners who always opposed undergrounding learned their names were on the petition. These people wanted to rescind. Again, we were told, send an email, so they did. Based on the memo we received late this afternoon, some rescind acqu— and this is—I wrote this before we heard from the gentleman. Based on the memo we received late this afternoon, some rescind requests have apparently been accepted because the approval percent has fallen from 54.21% to 51.23. We've not seen the list, so we do not know if all or only some of the requests we know about were verified. We're concerned that still some legitimate and honest requests haven't been accepted, and we hope to see a revised petition at some point for the sake of transparency. When opponents first met with the city staff last year to clarify various questions, we were told that the threshold was 60%. 60% threshold protects the city's interests and indicates broad support for a project. 51.23 fails on both accounts, and if the council moves this process forward by approving them tonight, it is acting imprudently, in my opinion. In all this discussion of numbers, we're forgetting the very real homeowners who lives will be severely and adversely affected by being forced to pay for undergrounding. Many approve it because they can afford it, other—I mean oppose it. Others oppose it because they don't see it fair for the people who are being forced to pay for it. I had more, but...
Thank you. Okay, next speaker.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jeannie Phobes. My husband and I and our son live at 328 Aliso Avenue. We've lived there and enjoyed this area for 45 years. Approximately a year ago, we heard about the possibility of the city undergrounding our utility wires to be paid for by the homeowners. The reason homeowners would have to pay for it is that there is no safety or security need to perform this project. The cost was estimated to be $25,000 per lot. Old timers like us, who objected to the cost, were advised on the Pro Undergrounding website to, quote, "move to Compton or Santa Ana." About this time—that was true—that about this time, two women knocked at our door with a signature list. This was a year or more ago. They told us they were collecting neighbors' signatures to request more information from the city about this undergrounding project. I was more than happy to sign. I definitely needed more information. I was distressed when I discovered that the information request that I signed in good faith was actually a petition requesting undergrounding. I was not told that it was a petition, and I didn't see anything to indicate that it was a petition. I was only shown the sheet to sign. When I learned that it was a petition I had signed, I requested that my name be rescinded from the petition. I was advised by the city, by city staff, that it had indeed been rescinded. Moved forward most of a year to this May 3, when I was informed that my name was still on that petition requesting undergrounding. I am so disgusted. I am true to my word. What I promised to do, I do, but apparently, the city doesn't do that. At least, it did not in this instance. I immediately emailed the city clerk to all—with copies—to all the same city people. I was again told that my name was rescinded. Was it rescinded? Can I trust that it was rescinded? Or is my name still on the list that my city is now using? I have also heard that my city is changing the threshold for AD 114 approvals from the 60% that we were originally given as the required signatures to 50%. We residents need to be able to trust our city, to be fair and honest with us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next—no, calm, no clapping, please.
Thanks. Okay. Hi, my name's Simone Wilson. I live on El Medina in the Heights. First off, I want to thank you for the chance to give comments. I'd asked the council that you would not approve certification tonight on a couple grounds. I don't think that you should go ahead with waiving the 60% threshold or combining the districts 114 and 114B, and I'll explain why. First off, I oppose undergrounding because of the huge cost to each homeowner. You know, for my family, we want to use those costs to help our kids get a college education, not pour them into the alley. But I—I'm really adamant about this sticking with the 60% because I think it balances out the lack of clarity through this process. There's been a lot of discussion about the rescissions and all that. I was in the May 3 meeting last week with city staff and Councilwoman Petros, where that was the first time that we saw the actual petition being made somewhat public, not to everybody, but to us. We could see which households were verified signatories as petitioners and which weren't. But this whole process has been mucky. It's been contentious, less than transparent on many sides, and it kind of started off with what you've already heard a little bit of, but my own experience was similar. Some of the neighbors in our area didn't know their names were on the petition, and some probably still don't know because they haven't seen it. We saw it because we asked for a copy. This is consistent with what kind of happened. Back in my neighborhood, about a year ago, a couple of women showed up at my door, they were talking about undergrounding, and they wanted me to sign a piece of paper. They said I didn't need to agree with it, but by signing it, I could get more information about undergrounding. I wasn't shown a petition, and I wasn't shown any details about it. I didn't sign it, but many of my neighbors did. This just doesn't seem like an ethical way to get petition signatures for something as important as this, especially when you're committing a huge amount of money from each homeowner and— homeowner in the area if it goes through. A lot of people are on fixed incomes or just don't have these funds available to pay for something like this. You know, later, as you've heard from some of the people, neighbors got informed and they were told if they signed something, or if they even think they signed something, they need to contact city staff or the petitioners and ask that their names removed. Some were taken off, some were not, but nobody really knew the status of whether their name was going to appear as a verified petitioner because it wasn't made public and it wasn't a transparent process. So, you know, as a result of the lack of clarity and transparency through this process, I'd ask that you would not approve dropping the threshold to 50% because at this point, you know, we got the report from Mr. Senacore at 3:56 today before you went into study session at 4 o'clock, and so weren't able to check to see who actually is still on the list. There may be people here who don't want to be supporters and are still supporters and don't even know it. And I don't want you to, I'd like you to ask that you don't collapse 114B into 114 because in AD 114, we've had a large group of people that don't want to have undergrounding and pay for it.[667.93][667.93](bell dings) All right, my time's up, but...
Thank you.
Okay.
Next speaker.
Hi, thank you. Wanted to just address one...
Your name, please.
Oh, sorry, Sarah Delia, and I live at 510 Riverside. Wanted to address one thing that I think is, is very apparent and very true, that there is a lot of adversity between the pros and the cons. I'm definitely for the undergrounding for many reasons, and I'll talk to you about those. But, you know, what I don't want is it, you know, the political fighting back and forth. I mean, we're not a negative party. I mean, if you've seen the undergrounding signs on people's yards, I think many of them start with the, the F-word and then undergrounding, so it's a very adverse...[712.11][712.11](audience laughing) Well, I've, I've seen that sign, but neither, neither here nor there. I've talked to a couple of neighbors, and the majority of the neighbors on our side really want the undergrounding. We're 14B, and I think we've got nearly 60%. We had people who signed as a pro last time, but we weren't able to get a hold of them. They're either gone, or we just haven't been able to visit them. The people who are opposed are very, very opposed, so we get it. We understand that not everybody's for this. The reasons we are for it, 14B, in essence, when you come up PCH and you come up our street onto Riverside, 14B is that first alleyway, and you see the, you see all of the wires and the, the street poles. And I think just from a beautification of our neighborhood, I think it would be absolutely lovely. I also think that with all the transformers that are being installed on the poles right now, they're becoming very unsightly. We have neighbors who are having difficulty backing their cars up because the poles are in the alleyways. From my understanding, what was I gonna say? Oh. From my understanding, the, the unders, the, basically, the not having the information in terms of how much the costs are really going to be, I think it inhibits everybody from really being able to make a true and valuable decision. And I think that all this would do going forward is provide us with that information so that we can all make an educated decision and decide which way to go. So I would just hope that you would take that under consideration, and I think that, you know, being nearly at 60%, it shows a willingness for a community to pull together and want to beautify and add value to our properties. I think the other thing that I would just love to, to say, I have 37 seconds, is that, my understanding is that if we go through and we get a negative or we get a no, we're not allowed to vote on this again for about five years. And in five years, if you add five years to the two years beyond the time that they redo the alleys, that's seven years. Those dollars, those, the $25,000 or $30,000 that we would spend today, if we looked at in seven years from now, at a 10% return on money, this is going to cost us double the amount. It'll cost us $60,000 to do these power poles and in the undergrounding. So I think the value is now, and the time is now, and I think it's Newport Beach, and there are a lot of people buying into it for a reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Linda Adams. I live on Aliso Avenue. I've been a resident of Newport Beach since 1960, and I have very clear memories of the Boy Scout jamboree, so I have tap roots here. I was one of the fir, I had the first meeting with Dave Kiff over a year ago regarding how to form opposition to this. At the time, Dave said to us, they wanted the 60% threshold because they wanted a reasonable expectation that any petition would be successful. With the decline of this petition from 54% and, and change to 51% and change, that reasonable expectation is gone. What is coming out in terms of the behavior of the proponents in securing signatures will be enough to turn possibly undecided people who, when confronted with the cost, will also be more, more than reluctant to support this. So I would say that you have lost the reasonable expectation that this will pass, and I think you should just call a halt to it, put the suit, put the alleys in, and we can go forward from there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. I'm Gina Sarita. I live at 522 Riverside Avenue. I grew up here in Newport Beach, as well as my father and grandmother, so I've seen a lot of progress in the city, and I've also seen some things that have just remained the same. One of them, obviously, is the issue at hand tonight. The alleys behind my home are desperately in need of some TLC and care. The poles are very unsightly, you know, just pure aesthetically. It's not fun to look out the, out the windows and see these poles. They're in the way. My kids have fallen into the one behind our house and had a rusty nail cut their leg. I just think, you know, I'm seeing, I'm also, my office is in Fashion Island, I'm seeing lots of improvements in the city of Newport Beach. I just think it's time to progress here. I do understand some of the opponents having difficulty managing the finances, and hopefully, you know, from a financial standpoint, you can give them some amenable overtime payment terms, but I just think that it's time to progress. I think it's time to catch up and get this area of Newport Heights beautified. It will be better for future appreciation. And I also have done the research, and I support my neighbor Sarah Delia, who's in the real estate industry and has well researched on it. I do think the costs of this are going to go up dramatically if it's just sat on, and this issue's not going to go away. So I do think it just should be addressed, and we should move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
For having me tonight, and thank you for listening. My name is Cheryl Canahan, and I live at 418 Tustin Avenue. I've been here my entire life. I'm on a fixed income, and I am opposed to undergrounding. I am opposed to lowering the threshold from 60% to 50% for all of the reasons that have already been stated. I am very disturbed that my impression is that the city council seems to be willing to let a vocal, a vocal minority bully the majority into doing unneeded work that is not cost-effective and will not increase property values, according to real estate agents I've talked to. Also, the expenses related to undergrounding will keep increasing, especially when considering that standard practices will require all the work to be done by digging by hand. My alley has just gone through some of that, trying to get a new gas line put in after something had gone wrong. And I just, the hand digging is required because there are so many utilities already in the ground, and they cannot run equipment closer than, I can't remember, I think it was 24 inches. If there's another utility within 24 inches, they are required to do hand digging. I really feel that you should not lower the threshold. You should stop the undergrounding situation now. One thing that just popped into my mind while I was in line was, do we want to go through more things underground and have think, have to remember that when the FEMA stuff happens, the problems happen, that when a problem happens with our utilities, they will fix what's above ground first. The things that are underground take longer. Do we want to have another Long Beach disaster going on in Newport Beach? So I just ask you to thoughtfully consider not putting the threshold down to 50%. You want to not approve something that is really not desired by the majority of the people in our area. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Guess that's high enough. Good evening. My name is Lynn Lorenz, and I've been a resident of Newport Heights for 40 years. I'm here tonight because I have a number of diverse questions that would like, that I'd like to pose to the city regarding the undergrounding process. First and foremost, why should residents be charged with paying for what is basically an aesthetic improvement to the city? Two, why has the communication between the city and the residents on this issue been nonexistent? Three, why are petitioners allowed to gather signatures from property owners without providing them with the details concerning the scope of the project at hand? If the proposed undergrounding goes to election, will the ballots be sent by certified mail to the property owners? Will transparency be observed by allowing the property owners to oversee the election returns? Six, why is the city ready to proceed to vote for a newly created sub-district which is not even listed on the city website? Why would the city even create a sub-district carved from a larger district which had already rejected the petition process less than a year ago? In other words, why is the city changing the process in midstream without adequate communication with homeowners? Why does the amount stated for the undergrounding process vary so greatly, and why does the city not inform more, residents more accurately of the total costs that will be incurred? Ten, what has happened to the funds which have been set aside for the valley, for the alley repayment process? Why is the city not respecting the rescind requests submitted to them, the city, since April of last year through May 10? Twelve, why is the city not requiring that the petition for AD 114 meet the 60% threshold that we were told originally as homeowners? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Rick Weiss. I'm a Newport Beach resident, and I'm talking tonight on behalf of myself, my wife Portia, and over 230 other Newport Heights residents. Please protect us from over the over 100-year-old outdated law that allows a single homeowner, as in the case of 114B, to hold the rest of us hostage, and lately, for some reason, with the full cooperation of the city. Recommendations for a sane way of updating the undergrounding process can be found at noundergrounding.com. In the meantime, here are suppressing requests. Number one, the 60% threshold absolutely should not be lowered. We wasted enough of the city's money. Number two, District 114B should never have been added to District 114. They were part of adjacent District 118 and have just successfully defended themselves from the undergrounding proponents at a cost of close to $10,000 and hundreds of volunteer hours. Allowing another petition to go forward less than a year after it was defeated is a persistent and recurrent economic assault to the city's homeowners. Three, please confirm that accurate and mandated information was given to all homeowners before being pressed for their signatures, including the fact that their homes could legally be foreclosed upon, which is in the, which is mandated to be told, and it hasn't been. I know for a fact that in the so-called District 114B, no complete information was given to homeowners, and in previous cases, as in District 118, the city staff also did not abide by this requirement. The current city council might not realize it, but the city staff is continuing a policy of being complicit in financially assaulting homeowners. For example, the city staff has repeatedly allowed the contentious petition process to continue in more than one district despite opponents clearly having more than 40% of homeowners needing to block. But on the other hand, in the case of the pro-undergrounding proponents, they're trying to make exceptions such as lowering the threshold and not ensuring compliance with information provided, and even putting it on the, the consent calendar tonight. Anyway, please be neutral in this whole process. If it was my bank account, I would not pay $115,000. And by the way, we are committing tonight to $115,000. That's what it says in the attachment on the consent calendar. Just to find the actual, in other words, even $65,000 just for, to find out how much it would cost in one alley where the wires aren't even visible from the street. That's $65,000 to an consulting firm just to find out what it might cost, and we don't even know if it's going to be passed. Edison doesn't want it. They agree that undergrounding is not safer and actually more expensive to maintain. The people don't want it. They don't want to be essentially taxed 10,000, tens of thousands of dollars for aesthetics. City councils should not force homeowners to defend themselves from spending tens of thousands of dollars and having the properties ripped apart for something that's not safer and has no particular benefits other than it might be more beautiful. If you, if you reworded the petition for what it essentially is, a tax of more than $20,000 per home for aesthetics, the answer would be a resounding no. Hopefully, the ideas of less government and fiscal responsibility will prevail. Newport Beach residents should be protected from the ridiculous law that is permanently dividing our communities.[1543.57][1543.57](bell dings)
Thank you. Thank you.
Can I ask something out to the clerk?
Go ahead.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Hefner. I reside at 422 Fullerton Avenue. I'm a proponent of the district. I'm one of the people that helped initiate this process, so probably disliked by a few people in this room, including my friends and neighbors. But we think it's a great thing. What I'm circulating to you right now is a copy of several, several letters that I personally prepared and sent to people in our neighborhood inside the district that included a description of what the city was proposing, what the cost would be, and made very clear that the cost for the alley improvement project, which was ongoing, may be available to partially offset the cost of the undergrounding, and that each owner would be individually responsible for any upgrades to electrical service that might be required to accommodate the underground feed. We spent, personally, personally, I've spent thousands of dollars on the mailing campaigns and along with several people in the neighborhood, hundreds of hours collecting these signatures. We've been very careful with each owner to describe exactly how the process works. Each owner was given a package of the petition and the proposed assessment district, which is attached in the package that you see. There's full disclosure. We're all professionals. We're very cautious about what we say to people. There's no misrepresentation. These people signed willingly. There's, no one signed under duress. The fact that these rescissions, these petitions have been rescinded is a little unusual, but the opposition has fought a vicious battle against us, including personal assaults, attacks, and threats of lawsuits. We have some of that information for you to review as well. We've also, once we collected these signatures, worked with your consultants to verify each individual signature that it was somebody who had the authority to sign. We produced a trust or a copy of the trust. We produced copies of the formation documents for the LLCs. We took all the steps that are necessary to verify a signature. If there are rescissions that aren't verified, it's because that information wasn't produced by the rescinding party. It's very difficult, as you can appreciate, to get 60% of any community to agree. It's a challenging task. We know that there are about 15% of our owners that are not reported for, whether they're for or against, they're absentee owners, or they're investors who own rental properties in the area, and we haven't been able to assess their position on the, is that 38 in running? That's all I have left? Okay, I'll be very brief then.
Moving.
So, we want the right to vote. Our opposition only opposes the district. They oppose the right to vote. You've lowered the threshold in multiple cases and allowed the vote to go forward, and those four districts that, that threshold was lowered on recently all succeeded and passed. We've worked hard and long. We're just asking for the God-given American right to vote on the outcome of this district. We're not going away. You already have the utilities on every new home stubbed underground. They're obviously designed for future undergrounding. This is the lowest-cost opportunity, but we're going to have to do this. The alley projects there, we get the credit for that.[1763.13][1763.13](bell dings) It's the best opportunity we have to underground our utilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. My name is Nile Barrett, 445 Tustin Avenue in the Heights. I'm here to request that the council adopt staff's recommendation tonight. I'll say that there's been a lot of misinformation spread by the no-undergrounding campaign. I have a copy, and I've handed you a copy of the flyer that was hand-delivered to my neighbors, but not to me, on the night of March 28 this year. neighbors, but not to me, on the night of March 28th this year. This flyer quotes me as giving a range between $23,000 and $35,000 as the ultimate price to do the undergrounding. Those estimates are much higher than any estimates I gave out. The flyer also provides a cost to finance the undergrounding at rates between 5% and 6%. I have not, to my knowledge, nobody has shared any of those costs because they are very unknown. The flyer goes on to tell people how to rescind their signature by going directly to the city clerk's office, and it also states "Contact made with Councilman Tony Petros." Therefore, I think tonight we should move to the voting phase. Let's not waste the past almost two years and let's not allow the no-undergrounding folk and the misinformation spread to win. The city will hold another public hearing, as mentioned earlier, tonight before the voting process begins, and that will help separate the truth from the fiction. And then, let's have the voters decide, fair and square. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Councilman, my name is Steve Byers and I live at 535 Tustin Avenue. So originally, I was in the District 118. So you can imagine my surprise when I learned that we were part of this new District 114B. Part of 118, obviously, they were not, the proponents for that were not able to get any traction there and they rescinded their proposal. So, we thought we were off the hook. So, there was never any notice to us that there was a new district created in 114B. So, we were obviously against it and at some point, you have to draw the line on, if you start with several hundred, what are the economics when you scale that down? Now you're only talking about 60 parcels. So, I urge you not, not to approve it.
You. Next speaker.
Hi there. I'm David Foltz. I live at 509 Fullerton Avenue. Family's been part of the community since 1941. I fully support this project and, and the investment in our community and moving forward with, with the vote so we can, we can have a fair vote and get, let everyone get their, get their, their say in whether we do this. And I support reducing our, the, the threshold down to the 50% and moving forward.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Stacy Foltz. I live at 519 Fullerton. I'm in Assessment District 114. I have two young children, one who goes to Newport Heights Elementary School and one who goes to St. Andrews Presbyterian School, preschool. We've been in the Heights for 10 years and I plan on raising my family there. I am in favor of undergrounding, however, that's not up for discussion tonight. Tonight, I just want the right to vote on it. I hope that you take that into consideration when you hear this approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Harry Barton. I live in the Heights. And a couple of times, staff casually threw out that moving from 60% to 50% was just a vote amongst yourselves. I'd like to remind the council and the assembled here, procedure requires, under federal and state law, any action of a deliberative assembly that may alter the rights of a minority has a supermajority requirement, such as a two-thirds vote or 60%. Absence or abstance, abstention from voting is equivalent to a no vote. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Carrie Slayback. I live at 426 Riverside Avenue, Newport Beach. Sounds funny. I spent the afternoon at Oasis and after that, the Central Library. I want to thank council for its part in providing such wonderful amenities for us. In the years I've spoken to council, you've been very careful in schooling me on individual property rights. As such, I would like you to respect the property rights of those whose residences could be encumbered for tens of thousands of dollars and therefore maintain the 60% approval that was your original, whatever it was, and not change it. Thank you. You know, I better say this. I'm the one who handed out that circular that Mr. Barrett talked about. My husband and I both heard him say the figure he disputes. I checked with my husband. I called your staff member. I read him my circular. He verified that everything I said was correct. I called Mr. Petros. He did not want to hear the whole thing, but I told him I was going to do it. And that circular, as far as I could check with your staff and my councilman, is correct and corroborated by my husband and my ear. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Leslie Bub and my husband and I have owned our home in Newport Heights since 1996. As homeowners, we have seen the need and desire from our neighbors to underground the power lines in our alleys. Over the past year, a group of us neighbors have gone door-to-door in our neighborhood to discuss the project of undergrounding our lines and getting their input. In most cases, our neighbors have been quite intrigued by this concept and readily signed the petition to allow the city to take the next step in this process. Most everyone wants transparency in our local council and are looking for the right to be able to vote on this project once the final cost of this project has been determined. In some instances, we have neighbors say that they don't want to sign the petition because they want to wait and see the hard cost presented in a formalized vote. And once that is established, they would then indeed vote to underground the poles. This demonstrates that we actually have more individuals who want this project to move forward. The opposition doesn't represent what I've experienced walking in our neighborhood. I personally thoroughly enjoy the chance to get to meet a lot of our neighbors. I don't typically venture out from my street. So, it was nice to be invited in some people's homes, to sit and talk with them and learn about their lives. At the end of the day, we are asking the council to allow this to go to a vote so our neighbors can have all the facts in writing and make an informed decision. Please do not allow the opposition to take away our right to vote.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Tom Newman. I live at El Medina, on El Medina Street. And I'm against the undergrounding and I'm against lowering the threshold from 60% down to 50%. And I, one of the things I wanted to tell you is I'm one of the people that received the two young ladies at my door that represented that signing the petition would give more information on the undergrounding. So I did sign that originally and was one of the people that had that rescinded. So I can verify that that happened. And as far as I know of, that was, my signature was taken off the ballot. I think that the proponents of this have demonstrated that they've done a very nice job in, in telling the neighbors, all of my neighbors in all of our whole district, the advantages that they would have by doing undergrounding. And they've done what they've passed out to everybody and shown you how, how this is going to be advantageous to the neighbors. Yet, we still only have 51% of the people in, in favor of it. And I think that if more people find out the costs and the true costs, I think you would, that's even going to get lower for them. So I urge you to stay the course. Don't move the, the goalposts in the middle of the game. I think that makes both teams anxious, so I think we need to stay at 60%. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Ernest Adams. I'm an architect. I have lived in the Heights since about 1975. I'm glad that slide is still up there because it needs to be pointed out what you see in the slide. You see a, you see an alley. You see driveway aprons. You see garage doors and you see blank walls and you see power poles. If those power poles were to be removed, you would still see an alley. You would still see blank walls, garage doors, driveway aprons, and maybe a tiny patch of green here and there. So to suggest that the aesthetics of the alleys would be improved by removing the power poles is a marginal thing at very best. On the other hand, any residential street in the Heights, whether you drive up and down it or walk up and down it and look around, you rarely catch a glimpse of a power pole. They are virtually invisible throughout all of the entire area of the Heights. 90% of the poles are in the alleys. There's a handful of them, about nine, that are on street corners. So, irrespective of affordability, the, the question is whether it makes sense for the residents to be required to, to throw money into the alleys in what would be a misguided attempt to create a silk purse out of a sow's ear, when in fact Newport Heights is a, is a silk purse as it stands. There is a beautiful street scene there, which really defines the aesthetic of the community. There's an absence of curb cuts. There's an absence of driveway aprons, which because of the required front yard setback, garages on the street are set back 20 feet from the property line and an additional 12 feet from the curb, which means you have 32 feet of 16-foot wide pavement wherever there's a garage. This is a standard way of laying out small R1 subdivisions with relatively narrow lots because if, with a narrow lot, a substantial proportion of that is taken up by driveways and curb cuts. So we have in Newport Heights right now, for anybody that looks up and down the street, a silk purse of a community. And unless undergrounding was supported by an overwhelming majority of the property owners, it doesn't make sense, either from an aesthetic or cost point of view.
Thank you.
My name is Scott Barnard. I'm a resident at 510 Tustin Avenue and I'm a proponent of the project and I'm a proponent of voting. I've lived in Newport Beach since 1960. I went to Newport L. I rode my bike through the dirt alleys to go to Enson and Newport High School. I purchased our home with my wife in 1986, so we've lived there 30 years. We bought our 850-square-foot house for $185,000 and have lived there continuously and upgraded it ever since. We, like most of the other owners, have upgraded our homes, enlarged them, redone a garage, what have you. And we look forward to the opportunity to work with the city on, just like you talked about with Babo Village, making an investment. Here, the property owners are making the investment. We look at it as an improvement not only to the aesthetics, but the functional turning in the alleys to get in and out of garages, because people don't set their garages back 10 or 15 feet. They're five feet off the alley in many instances. It gets us the potential, not guaranteed, I represented this clearly to each people, person I went to in my block, that they could perhaps be getting fiber optic when the new utilities go underground. And so there's an aesthetic, there's a functional benefit, and then obviously you get a lot of waste and dirt and everything else out of the power poles. So we look forward to the opportunity to have a vote. We worked carefully, when I gather signatures up and down my alley on both sides, to make sure that people understood it's a $23,000 number. I think Mr. Sinekory could speak to the fact that because you're moving ahead with the concrete, our $23,000 includes about $3,000 per parcel for concrete in the alleys. So that $23,000 could potentially be less. Now, it's been a year. There may be escalation and other things, but I don't think we should be using $23,000 and scaring people with higher numbers. It could potentially be less, too. Obviously, we have super-low interest rates. That benefits people that want to pay over many years. I can tell you anecdotally, in our neighborhood, some people that have chosen not to vote, it's not because of hardship. When we have 50 or 52%, that actually represents about 60 or 65% of the property owners that are responding. This isn't a vocal minority strong-arming everybody else. We have half or more supporting it. There's maybe a third that are opposed to it. And then there's this 15 or 20% that don't participate. An example for me is across the alley, a gentleman who owns the home, he and his wife, and they're renting it. They own three lots contiguous, that's their home, a yard, and a guest house. Three properties adjacent to the Newport Heights area, that's their home. They have no problem paying for the underground utilities. They just don't really want to be involved. We have a gentleman who's in an arrest home, that's one of the original purchasers from the subdivision in 1950. It's one of the original owners. He's in an arrest home. You know, they're not going to participate. The kids don't know what to do. They just don't participate. So, you know, that makes up that 15% or so. So this is a majority of the owners that have asked for the opportunity to vote and all we're asking for is that opportunity. I think to suggest that at strong arm there's been misrepresentation is sort of noise in the midst of it, but I think a vote provides the best clarity. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
My name is Michael Barnett. I didn't prepare anything. Didn't think I was going to come up here and talk, so this is all off the top of my head. Let's see. I lived at 518 Fullerton Avenue from 1962 to 68 and 442 Fullerton Avenue from 68 to 86, and then back in 518 Fullerton Avenue from 86 until about 2007, when my wife and I bought a house on Costa Mesa. I am a trustee of a trust that owns 518 Fullerton and my sister, Dr. Christine Sales, is a trustee of a trust that owns 442 Fullerton. And neither of us want the undergrounding. Over the last several months, when I'd go to my property, 518, the, I had a no-undergrounding yard sign in the front yard and I'd find it laying on the ground, face down. This happened many times. I got tired of it and started calling the police every time. And the police came out and said, "There's nothing they can do because there's no damage and it hasn't been stolen." So I installed a HD security camera system and I caught this woman with a dog pulling my sign up and throwing it on the ground. The video's on YouTube if you want to look at it, on noundergrounding.com. I think she lives really close to me, but I'm not sure. And if people want the, the undergrounding, they should sell their house and move to an area where the utilities are underground. I don't want it. I don't need it. It's hard, it's more difficult to work on and it's going to cost me double of my 518 address because I got two separate utility services there. So it's going to cost me three times and I don't, I don't want it and I just think the, the people that want it should move to someplace. So we shouldn't, we shouldn't change the, the rules of the game in the middle of the game. Thanks.
Thank you.
Planning on speaking? I'm Brenda Wilford and I grew up, I grew up, my family grew up next door to the Varnets, wonderful family. We live just down from the Hefners. I recognize a few of you here. I've had dental work, so I'll try to be, speaking for my neighbors, I'm going to talk for Brett Craig and Diane Edmonton. I don't know if they showed up, but we feel the same. We feel like the heart of Newport is being torn apart. The beautiful older citizens that we think are the beauty in our neighborhood are really at a disadvantage to come up with the money. When Michael had his signs out, my daughter and I were across the street where my daughter rented because her house was burned down on Costa Mesa, and we actually saw one of the people that spoke here tonight that's a proponent take Michael's sign and smash it into the ground. And that broke my heart. It's someone that just spoke. He was a proponent and I thought he was a nice person and a nice family man. That's beauty, to be nice to your neighbors. And when you talk about beauty, it's about personality, kindness, and that's our neighborhood. It always was. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other speakers? Come forward.
Thank you all for attending this evening. My name is Nancy Turner. I live at 435 Irvine Avenue. I've been there for 45 years. Am opposed to this undergrounding. I think that you should stick with what you originally legally says is 60%. This entire petition situation has been ridiculous. There are many people that live in the Heights that have been there a long time. They're retired. A lot of them have a certain amount of money in which they're going to be able to have to continue their retirement. To ask them to continue to pay this kind of price for something that is not necessary, we don't need it. We have a beautiful neighborhood as it is. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
My name is Rowan Jacobs and I've been in Newport Beach since 1967. I live at 500 Tustin and I just moved there within the last year. I want to share something about the safety factor, that somebody said that there's not an issue with safety and maybe it's an issue with safety, and maybe staff can address this. In the alley behind us, somebody alluded earlier tonight that they were digging by hand, there was a, from what I understand, a lightning strike that hit a pole that arced down and went along the wire in the gas line, and it cut holes in the gas line all the way down the alley. And they've been working on that now for about three months. So I think there is a safety factor here, which is maybe a good reason to look at the undergrounding. Staff, know anything about that?
I'll comment after the hearing's over.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Last chance. Okay, close public comments. Staff, did you want to address any of the items that were brought up by the public?
I think I'll just mention one thing, too, that over the last year, with all the different correspondences going out there, too, I'll say, you know, my name and Mr. Sinekory's name were used in a lot of flyers, and none of those flyers were actually approved by us. Folks had certain conversations with us, too, and we would lay out the facts, which are identical to what's on the website, and how the process continues, and the costs, and things like that, too. For example, there's a flyer out there that mentions $35,000. I specifically spoke to that person about that, and I said, "No, I disagree. That's not the number." And it went ahead and still had our name on there. So there's been some misinformation out there.
Ma'am, please be quiet. Go ahead, Mark.
You know, it's been a very contentious issue. You know, in regards to the safety factor, there's no comment there, too. There's information from Edison both ways about it. We know from a fact that ever since the 1970s, they've been undergrounding electrical lines, telephone and cable throughout the country, and that's a condition required in any time you develop a new property now.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councilmember Petros.
This is a tough one. I wanted to first make some comments on the overall process and what I see in the Heights. Whether it's 7:30 in the morning or 6 o'clock in the evening, I run through our neighborhood, and I run up and down the alleys. I see many of you out walking your dogs or out on the street. Carrie, I pass you when we run in the morning. The, this is something that I think somebody had mentioned, it is tearing the heart of the Heights apart, and it grieves me. There were comments made about a lack of communication and a lack of availability, and I say poppycock to that. I have been available at numerous meetings. I have responded to hundreds of emails. I have sat and made sure that Mr. Sinekory and Mr. Vikojevich were available for opponents and proponents, and that they were giving the same information to both sides. We held meetings at the local schools. We held meetings at the Cliff Drive Park building. So to suggest that the city is complicit in some type of opaque scam is not representative of the truth. The one thing that I have represented, since I have been representing the Heights, is appropriating funds for concreting the alleyways. I got that in two years ago on the budget. The design is underway, the sewer work is bid. We are going to move forward with those in this next budget cycle, if my colleagues will agree to it. It is, that is the commitment that I have made to you in the Heights. The notion of the undergrounding, as I have said repeatedly from day one, is a resident-driven initiative, and I promised you again, I would stay out of it. I would be there as a resource, but this is something that you undertook, supported or opposed. It's up to you. It's your future and your destiny. It is not the city forcing something on the residents of the Heights. Now, there's been some talk here, and I'm sure that when this is all done, I will be an anti-vote guy, but this is not a question of the ability to cast your vote or cast your ballot. It's following the rules. We have a set of rules that we would follow, and if you can pass that set of rules, then you can exercise your right to vote. It seems recently that this council likes to waive things, just throw this thing to the wind and that thing to the wind. But this is a significant enough issue that I believe that we should adhere to our rules. When the petitioners went out and started to collect petitions, they knew full well, 60% to get the petition approved to render the vote, and then the vote would occur. There was no mistaking that. There was, we understand that up here, we know that. The other point that I'm alarmed at is that the direction of this isn't going the right way. Instead of going from '54 to '56 to '58, or something closely approximating 60, it's going the other direction, closer more to 50, and I would suggest that some of those other counts might take it below 50%. So then I'm asked, am I being your good financial steward and willing to put up hundreds of thousands of dollars to do a study that will ultimately get voted down? And I don't think that that's appropriate either. I am a proponent of undergrounding, though. Every new community does it. It is what new building is all about. You can't find a home now on the market and see power poles in the backyard. That's a thing of the past. That's not, that's not what is going on. I have attempted to try and heal the Heights. We had, I threw a party, the Hootenanny in the Heights, and I called the Weises, and I called proponents from 118, the Bennetts, and I said, "Please come to this event, and let's have a healing." I threw a party, and no one showed. If you really want to be a community, then let's start acting like one. Let's start, instead of pointing fingers and saying, "You're the bad guy, no, you're the bad guy, no, you're the bad guy," let's turn it back around and turn this back into the neighborhood that the gentleman said is the silk purse. That's one thing that I can agree with. Newport Heights is a silk purse. I live there. Let's come back to that. I'm afraid in this instance, though, I can't support the underground.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilmember Pieter.
This is what, the fourth or fifth district since we've been on the council as newbies? I like the whole idea of undergrounding in that it does provide a cleaner, safer neighborhood. And in my neighborhood in Coronel Mar, I'm always backing around, taking an extra three-point turn or whatever, just because you've got a power pole right next to my house, so I can feel the pain. But the 60% number was a number that the council agreed would be a guideline, not a hard number, and that we would use it as a guideline, and that it would come back to us like it is tonight if there are exceptions. And that's because this council, all of us, I think I can safely say, do not take raising taxes lightly. It's important that if you're going to raise the taxes, that everybody knows exactly what you're getting into, and that you have a fair and honest, above-board vote. The other reason we had 60% as that guideline is because the city's going to be investing $68,000 to get to the point where we can actually have the vote. Now, what's different now is that we've changed the process in the last year and a half. It used to be that you'd go and get your petition, and it would take literally two years for Edison to come up with a cost that we can actually get back, prorate, and send out to the electorate. Now we're taking a much more concise route, and we're not spending a half a million dollars, we're spending 50,000 to 60,000 to 70,000 to be able to get to that vote, so that we can decide, or I should say, so that you can decide whether you want it or not. One of the things that I disagree with Mr. Petros on is that, you know, okay, the number is going backwards, but it sounds to me like there's a lot of misinformation out there, and one of the things that bringing it to an election is going to do is, we're going to have an engineer's report that's going to say, "This is the maximum amount of tax your parcel's going to have, and this is what your share is going to be." You're going to have exact information that you'll be able to vote up or down on, and right now, people just have this nebulous numbers. I agree with Mr. Petros. I am not pleased or happy for the neighborhood and how dissentious and acrimonious it's become, and the emails that I get paint me as an enemy if I'm going to vote one way or the other. Yeah, I take that back. It's usually the opponents that are painting me as a numbskull if I don't support or if I vary from the 60% number. I don't appreciate it. I don't appreciate the acrimony up here, trying to make decisions for the public, and I don't think your neighbors appreciate it either. And I don't think you need to do it in order to get your point across. I think you kind of lose some of your arguments and strengths when you do that. And I'm sorry, I get sidetracked. Because we've lowered the cost, and because I think that this situation, I mean, it's not like very many people in this neighborhood don't know what's going on, unlike some of the other ones where we might have had 60%, and the other 40% were in the dark. I don't think there's too many people in the Heights after these, you know, year and a half of process that don't really know what's going on, or that haven't made up their mind. And I agree with what Mr. Barnard said, that you've got over 50% that are saying, "We want this thing," and you've got 15% in other neighborhoods than Peninsula, and on Coronel Mar, you actually had more rentals, you've got 15% rentals that, or people that just decided they don't want to give input into it. So you really only have, like Mr. Barnard said, about a third that are actually against it. And to me, that's the minority that's wagging the tail of the majority, not the other way around. So I'm going to, I'm going to support this. I can count, it's not going to pass, so I'd be prepared to make a motion to continue this for two weeks.
Okay. Councilmember Duffy, any comments?
I'd second that, but I would like to make a comment. Obviously, I counted, there's 20 no's and nine yeses. So that says to me that people who say no seem to be the people that scare the people that say yes, because there obviously 50% did this, but 50% of yes and no, it didn't work. So the bullying, I think, is more on the no people than the yes people, but that's just me. So it's just a, but the end of the day, you know, I know where I live, we underground. And my father-in-law was on a fixed income, and he didn't want to do it, and, you know, we did it, and all it did was make our neighborhood 10 times better. I will tell you, the architect who spoke, it couldn't be more on the opposite of that. Our alleys are as good as our front streets now. People have gone and landscaped them, they've decorated them. It's, it's beautiful. Our alleys are beautiful, and all it did was raise our property values. I know there's 100 ways to Sunday to pay for it. My father-in-law wasn't burdened. He came up with something that was very affordable. So, you know, I'm, I know this isn't going to pass unless this motion works, but I feel for the group, and those are my comments, I guess. Thanks.
Thank you. So we only need a majority of the council present for continuance, correct? Okay. Well, I'm going to support the motion for continuance, and I'll call for the vote.
With Councilmember Petros voting no, the motion carries three, one to continue the item.
Okay. Mayor Protem Muldoon will return and continue on with the meeting. We'll take a two-minute break while the folks who are here for this item clear the room. If you could exit quickly and quietly, would appreciate it, so we can continue on with the meeting.
Is it recess, or are you just asking people to leave?
Just asking them to leave. As soon as it clears out enough, you can restart.
Yeah. Diane leaves the longest.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You got out of the car.
Where's Pieter? Oh, there he is.
Hey, Kevin, showtime.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, council's back in session. Public hearings. We're going to call--
Mayor Protem, we're on public comments on non-agenda items?
Thank you.
Public comments--
That's right, Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Muldoon and fellow council members. I'm Steve Rosansky, President of Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. Just here to let you know about two upcoming events that we have this Thursday at our Wake Up Newport meeting. We're honored to have the Coastal Commission Chair, Steve Kinsey, as our speaker prior to the Coastal Commission hearings in this chamber, which I believe are going to start tomorrow. And also, we have another great event scheduled for next week. We have a luncheon planned at the Marriott Hotel with Mohamed El-Erian. He's a, actually, a world, an internationally-known figure in the financial industry. I'm sure Councilman Curry knows him well, and probably others, too. And so that'll be at the Marriott Hotel next Thursday on the 19th. If anybody's interested, you can go to our website at www.nuitportbeach.com, and you can get all the information there. Wake Up Newport is a free event, open to the public, starts at 7:15, and they get a free breakfast to boot. So hopefully, I'll see some of you there, as well as members of the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosansky.
Mayor Protem Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Two weeks ago, you heard an important presentation about the general plan development limits in Newport Center, and as part of that, Director Brant created an image showing the four buckets she is required to keep track of because of the general, because of the green light provision in our city charter. Tonight, while that image of the four buckets is still in your mind, I wanted to reiterate the political problem that you face because of a major discrepancy between how much city staff says is left in those buckets for Newport Center and how much the voters see left in them. It is important to understand that green light does not allow for any trade-off between the buckets. So every time the general plan limits are increased, it makes all the difference which bucket that increase goes into. And it's also important to realize, as Councilmember Selich pointed out, it's important whether the increase was approved by the voters, in which case they don't go in the buckets, or approved by the council, in which case they do. In 2006, with Measure V, the voters were asked to approve new general plan limits for the whole city, which effectively set the buckets back to empty. As part of that, for Newport Center, the new starting point included 450 new dwelling units, which the voters were told would be sufficient to accommodate the growth in Newport Center for the next 20 years. So voters could reasonably expect 450 new units to be added. But since then, and prior to the applications you heard about two weeks ago, past councils approved changing 17 voter-approved tennis courts, which have no green light square footage, into 27 non-voter-approved hotel rooms, which do have square footage, and they approved changing 79 voter-approved hotel rooms, which go in the non-residential bucket, into 79 voter-approved residences, which go into the dwelling unit bucket. But those increases in the general plan limits are not-- But those increases in the general plan limits are not reflected in the tracking tables you saw. I would assert that any mechanism that claims to allow the council to increase the general plan limits without reflecting those increases in the tracking tables is inconsistent with our city charter. Once the increases are acknowledged, as I believe they need to be, I think you will realize that you don't have 100 dwelling units and 23,000 square feet of non-residential development left to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Speakers?
Hi there. My name's, my name's Ryan O'Grady. I'm a resident of East Bluff and within District Four. I'm here on behalf of the Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth, or NCRG, to talk about the Corona Del Mar High School field project and its negative impact on the city due to lost property taxes. Basically, we're looking for some help. I realize this is a school board issue, but the possibility of a stadium is already impacting home prices within District Four. Just here's some examples of what's going on now. 901 Almond, which is a City Light view, looks right over where the proposed stadium is. It's been listed on the market for six months at 1.995 million. There's already been three price reductions, a total of 12.3% from its original list price. And, you know, as an aside, the current assessment is only 500,000. So if that house sold, you get an instant bump in property taxes. That's being delayed by the uncertainty of the stadium. And when it does sell, you'll be losing $2,000 a year on just this one house because of its 10% drop in price. 2390, 2339 Aurelia Street backs right to where the stadium's going to be. Seven months on the market, 13.3% under original ask, it sold recently. Again, previous assessment was far below. So the stadium's not only ruining property taxes going forward, but it's, it's preventing houses from resetting at higher prices. 2351 Aurelia Street backs again right to where the stadium is proposed to be. Eight months on the market, six price reductions, now 13.1% off original list. And this is due to uncertainty. People, so, you know, when you talk to the school board, they say, "Well, we're looking at it." Well, that's costing people money now, and it's costing the city money now. So, you know, there's 60 homes in East Bluff that are impacted by this. There's more homes in the Plaza, the Bluffs, the East Bluff Apartments and Via Granada. Same situation, their houses just aren't for sale, so we're not seeing the impact. Over 1,000 homes could be impacted. I mean, in the case of 2351 Aurelia, if that sells for 500 a square foot, all the recent sales are going to come and reassess their, their, their tax value lower. So, you know, we're asking for allies, basically. We're asking for people to, to talk to this, to the school board about accepting our alternative proposal of two sports fields to actually allow more practice to go on, just no 80-foot light poles and no PA system. That's what's generating this uncertainty. So, that's it.
Name's Gray.
Hi, I'm Annie Lindt. I'm also an East Bluff resident and I'm president of, co-president of Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth. I'm here to say thank you. I really appreciate that Kevin Muldoon has bravely stepped forward to help us address the ongoing parking and traffic problems in our greater East Bluff neighborhood. Residents, school officials, students, and parents all agree on one thing. It's a bad situation. The school has assigned all available parking spots. Our Lady Queen of Angel has allowed students of parish members to use their lot. While their prayers may have been answered, the remainder of the heathens must park wherever they can find a space. And that space is in front of our homes. They say thank you by leaving their trash. Little calling cards to say, "We appreciate the fact that you'll let us sit here for eight hours a day," or actually, it's about six. The administration at the school was so frustrated at our last meeting, and Kevin will remember this, she said, "I am simply advising the parents not to buy their kids' cars." Oh yeah, that's going to work. That Newport Beach kid is going to go, "Okay, Mom, no problem, I'll bike over there." Well, what happens is, that's going to make more pickup and drop-off traffic. "Oh, great, more cars, we can't wait." High school traffic, Tony Petros, it's unfortunately familiar with all of this, aren't you? 10 years ago, when we took on that crossing guard. Yep, you've worked, you've tried everything you possibly can, and you came up with some really great solutions. However, it's still a problem. Sorry that we've all had to share our horror stories about traffic with you, but we live with them, we like to share them, you're welcome. Everyone knows there's a problem. Newport Citizens for Responsible Growth wants to work with you to find solutions. We're not here to complain, we're here to volunteer our help. Every time Corona Del Mar High School expands its facilities, we watch the problems escalate. The current proposed athletic stadium is now our breaking point. What is the rationale for deliberately exacerbating an already unsafe, overcrowded, and emotional situation? Newport Citizens created an alternative proposal to the school board's proposed 1,000-seat stadium. The plan includes two synthetic fields, a new track, no lights, no additional seating, no increase in traffic, and no increase in spectators. It was presented to the school board and it was included in the plan for the EIR, so it will be considered. Rather than go into it now, I encourage you all to visit our website, newportcitizens.com, and read about our plan. Thank you very much.
Speakers? All right, hearing none. All reports from city council on committee activities?
I have none.
Okay, Mr. Petros?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. On the 28th of April, on the 4th of May, we had finance committee meetings. We will continue to have weekly finance committee meetings as the budget is discussed. And I would like to compliment my council colleagues and commend the public members for their participation and their, their diligence in getting down to the details on the budget. We will continue to have weekly meetings until the study session for the budget so that the folks can come back and, and inform all of the council of the contents of that in a very thorough manner. So the next meeting will be held up on the second floor conference room in Module E, I don't know, is that Crystal Cove, Newport Coast, on the 12th of May at 4 o'clock.
Thank you. Councilman Curry.
Your reports?
Councilman Selich. All right, moving on to public hearings. Call for review of planning commission approval of Newport Dunes Resort Conditional Use Permit located at 1131 Back Bay Drive.
I guess, Mayor Protem Muldoon and members of the city council. Just in the way of a quick introduction, the project location is at the Newport Dunes Resort located at 1131 Back Bay Drive. It is a conditional use permit that was approved by the city council that would allow the Newport Dunes Resort to conduct a specified number of smaller Level One events without going through the normal special event permit process. As I said, this was approved by the planning commission and then it was called for review by Councilmember Duffield. Dorant U, the Newport Dunes Resort is outlined in red. We have the Castaways residential community here, Dover Shores, Harbor Cove, Hyatt Regency Hotel, and Bayside Village. Quickly, on special events, the city requires special event permits for concerts, sporting events, and other type of activities. They're issued by the Recreation and Senior Services Department. In 2015, about 436 special event permits were issued citywide, and 155 were issued for the Newport Dunes Resort. The city classifies special events as either 1, 2, or 3. And typically, when we talk about special events, we think of, we focus on the estimated attendance of the events. But there are other factors as well, including duration, whether they occur in a public right-of-way, whether city personnel, such as police or code enforcement is required, whether lane or road closures are required, traffic control programs, and city noise At the dunes, special events are generally conducted in these areas around the lagoon. The pavilion shown with the red dots, cabanas shown in the blue dots. A number occur as, the area known as the Bayside Pavilion, where the temporary tent is erected during part of the year. And some occur down at the village center near the recreational vehicle park. The planning commission approval allowed them to have a specified number of special events, of Level One events. And they were basically divided up during the peak and off-peak months. The peak months are shown in red, and they total 500 Level One events. In addition, through, going through the normal special event permit process, they were allowed up to 14 Level Two and Level Three events per year, for a total of 514. The planning commission approval included a sound curfew, which basically limited them to 9:00 PM on what we call "school nights," corresponding with the Newport Mesa Unified School District calendar. On weekends and during holidays and recess breaks, they could go to 10:00 PM. There are some exceptions for Independence Day, the Marine Corps Birthday, and New Year's Eve. The planning commission approval also included the noise mitigation protocol, which include employment of sound attenuation structures, having sound monitors where there would be a city-contracted monitor for large events and a dunes monitor at smaller events. Sound equipment would be city consultant-approved and supplied by the dunes. The dunes would provide a sound engineer that would also receive complaints, control sound event levels during events, and they may basically prohibit any independent sound factors, sound factors associated with the event. And it would also establish maximum venue sound levels. In other words, basically, noise levels that could occur on the site to ensure that noise standards are not exceeded off-site. During the time that the item was called up for review, staff has facilitated meetings with representative of Dover Shores community and the applicant, and agreed on some changes to the planning commission's approval. Essentially, the maximum number of Level One events would be limited to 250 for the first year, and then go up to the 500 for the year following that. There would also be a one-year review by the planning commission, and they agreed to have a city sound monitor at all events. And then, a last-minute inclusion that was a subject of a supplemental report. They're asking that the six, pardon me, the 21-day advance notice for Level One events be reduced to six days, which is what we currently require for a normal special event permit application. I also have one other update. On Saturday, there was a fairly large event, Stand Up For The Cure, which involved paddleboards in the lagoon. And the city's sound monitor was present and did observe that some sounds from the PA system were audible from Dover Shores, however, they did not exceed city noise level That concludes my presentation. We also have Gary Hardisty, the city's sound consultant, available to answer any technical questions.
All right, questions from council?
Well, I pulled this up because I had a resident who I respected deeply, who was concerned, and so we brought this back and we had a meeting, a very positive meeting with Dover Shores representative who represents most there about it, Kim Brant, and myself. And I believe at that meeting, from what I remember about it, was it was very productive in that the city was trying to create a template to work in other areas in the city that need this kind of permitting process to help reduce the cost of, of events and permits to those who apply and, and to the city. So they put up, what I watched, a lot of time into this. And I also want to say that the applicant, I guess, the dunes management seems to want to do everything they possibly can to keep Dover Shores from getting bombarded with noise, to such an extent where they've actually procured mobile sound, definitely, or whatever the word is, devices, and so on and so forth, and have continued to try and do these things as well as a sound engineer. I mean, I was amazed at the extent at what the dunes has gone to, to help these residents. Are they perfect? No, they're not perfect. Are they trying? They certainly are trying. They're not hiding in any way, shape, or form. I believe what is, been tweaked, if you will, since the, since when I pulled this up and today, I wish they were more clear to me, because I don't know what, it was kind of all in one, but maybe you could point out them again, that you guys did.
If I may, Councilmember Duffield, we did spend, staff has met independently, we've met with you, we met with representatives of, of the applicant, as well as representatives of the community, looking at ways in terms of refining the planning commission's conditions of approval on the, on the permit in such a way that there's a clear understanding to the residential community as well as to, to the operators at the dunes, is what the expectations are and how the property is going to, special events of the property are going to occur in, in the future. There was a concern about, well, we, we still feel that the, the noise attenuation procedures as well as the equipment that's been purchased is still in a trial phase. And so with that understanding and, and the acknowledgement that in the first year, let's go and reduce those total number of events by half, the Level One events, in this trial year, and then go back to the planning commission in one year to have a review in terms of, how did it go? Were there events that were, were, that were audible in the Dover Shores community? And with the understanding that this is still a work in progress, and I, and I think that the event last Saturday is an example where they had the stand-up paddleboarders in the lagoon area, and so the speakers were oriented in a way that they're not typically oriented in. And so with Gary Hardisty, our sound consultant, consultant was there and was observing the situation and, and trying to strategize, if that were to occur again, how could that better be handled? So that was a major, I think, point for the residential community is to have that one-year review and a reduction in the number of events in year one. And the applicant, the representatives of the dunes were amenable to that first-year trial period, so to speak. And then I think the other major point here is, is that the city's sound monitor will now be available or present at all Level One, Level Two, and Level Three events. The planning commission approval, the, the city-paid consultant was only going to be available or required to be at the Level Two and Level Three events. And this, I think, provides that safety net and that assurance that the sound equipment is being monitored and inspected prior to these events, and that it's an independent third party. And I do want to clarify that the city has hired Gary Hardisty to, to, to monitor the, the events at the dunes, but the, Gary Hardisty's costs are being paid for by the dunes. We are the, the, we are the overseer, but the, the dunes is paying for that. So that is something that I think is important for everyone to understand. So the dunes was amenable to having that city-paid or city-sound monitor at all of their events, whether it's Level One, Level Two, or Level Three. And that gives the residents the ability to call the sound, the sound engineer, Gary Hardisty, during an event. They'll have his cell number and say, "You know what, Gary? I'm hearing something." And that, there will be real-time adjustments to the sound levels occurring on the property. And, and I think are the, those three changes, I think, were- And I think are those three changes, I think, were significant, and I'm hoping that brings some confidence to the residential community that they will have an ability to have immediate feedback when events are occurring, and also that during year one, that there will be some consideration and understanding that they don't need to have their full entitlement in that first year, and they'll come back to the planning commission for a review. And I know that was rather a long explanation.
No, no, thank you. Thank you. You said that very well. Appreciate that. Thanks. I'll wait for the public, my next comments after the public hearing.
All right.
Mayor Protam Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I have no strong opinion about this, although 500 events per year does sound like a lot to me, and it makes me wonder how Mr. Hardisty can be present 500 times a year, since as I understand it, he's a very prominent sound engineer and he has similar responsibilities at other venues, sometimes in other states. So there must be a little more to it than we're hearing from the city staff if there's really going to be a city sound consultant at each meeting. What I really wanted to say, though, is to remind you that when the conditional use permit that's being called up for review tonight was approved by the planning commission back in February, the planning commission actually did not have the authority to do it at that time. So the approval was contingent upon you, the council, amending the Newport Beach Municipal Code, which, whether you realized you were doing or not, I think it was on a consent calendar. And the irony of that is the section of the municipal code that you were amending, which is Chapter 11.03, that entire chapter had been added to the municipal code not that long ago, 2004, specifically to address special events at the Newport Dunes. Presumably, it was created in consultation and in agreement with them. And they indicated at the planning commission meeting that not only that was it burdensome now, but it was extremely expensive. And I would like to point out that that chapter created for them, created for their benefit and other similarly situated vendors in our city, what was called a bundled event, a permit approval process in which 20 events could be approved at a time. The planning commission was told it costs something like $1,000 per event. With that bundled mechanism in that code, it was more like $133 per event. So the financial burden was not as great as they were representing to the planning commission. And it is ironic that you are bypassing the code that was specifically created for them. Thank you.
My name is Gail Jones, and I am a longtime resident of Dover Shores. We have been working with the city staff as well as the dunes, and I really want to thank the city staff especially for their time because they've been very patient, really great about getting back to us, and I want to thank you both for that. And also, I feel like we have come to a good place with the dunes. I just have one slight variation that I did send an email on, and that was just that I'm a little bit concerned about putting the curfew at 10 o'clock during the week, during the summer, as well as on the weekend. I would like to say that I think it would be important during the week because so many of the residents work and also they're all, even though their children may be out of school, they also have early activities. So I would like to propose the 9 o'clock curfew during the week and 10 o'clock on the weekends. Thank you.
Mayor Protam, council members, I've been attending and then later running events for the Chamber of Commerce.
Would you please say your name for the record?
I'm sorry, DJ Martin. Two people sitting up there have asked me over a period of time what DJ stands for. We'll be here all night to go through that. Okay, Dietrich Jebadiah Martin. Now, you can't ask me again. During the time I've been managing events for the Chamber of Commerce at the dunes, before this sound issue was a big thing, there was a man walking along the edge of the water. The fire chief gets up to announce who the award recipients are, and he's looking at this decimal thing, and he runs up and turns down the volume on the speaker. That's how concerned they are about taking care of the neighbors, the sound issues. They go out of their way. I've been to events there at 7:00 in the morning, and they're picking up paper that blew in, not because it was leftover. They keep that place immaculate. They've got a big parking lot. They really worry about their neighbors and the sound issue. The man's probably the knight that we were all there last fall when they announced a new city council and Mayor Dixon. I'm sure he was out on the boat dock with the sound thing while we were talking on the microphone. They are very good people to have in the neighborhood, and they should get their more events. I don't get up and talk a lot, so excuse my fumbling. Thank you.
Counsel, my name is Craig Batley, and I attended the planning commission hearing when all this was discussed, and the sound people made an absolutely unbelievably fantastic presentation, and they, the dunes is a tremendous asset to the community, and they have all these events throughout the year. They've been there for, what, decades? And I think their attention to not only the neighbors, but the sound and the money they're spending in order to be good neighbors is unbelievable. I'm actually amazed at the amount of money that they spend in order to put on these events in a way that is compatible with the neighborhood. The planning commission saw fit to approve this, and I think with the changes that have been recommended tonight, I would urge the council to go ahead and approve it as presented.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jerry Terry. I'm one of the Commodores here in Newport Beach. I just want to state that, you know, obviously, the Newport Dunes is a great economic force for the community. It's a very well-run business with Andy at the helm there. I like DJ. I put on and helped put on many events there with Lobster Fest and many other ones. Andy's first thing is always making sure that the neighbors aren't disturbed, always very considerate of all the neighbors and all that. With, like DJ said, you know, during an event, if it gets to be too loud, there's someone that will actually go up there and turn down the volume to make sure that the neighbors aren't disturbed. He's just very considerate of that, and the neighbors should be very lucky to have someone that's so concerned about them as Andy. With that being said, the current method for getting permits and going through this process is very burdensome for the city and for Andy. Streamlining this is going to free up city resources and be a much better way to process things as a business. So I encourage you to pass this, and I appreciate you letting me speak. Thank you.
Mr. Terry. Any other speakers? Please come to the front if you're going to be speaking on this item.
Good evening, council members. My name is Carl Kruger. I'm the general manager for the Fairmont Newport Beach. I'm also on the executive board for Newport Beach and Company. I've only been in this city four years. I have to commend the city for the way that they protect the quality of life for the residences. I've been in 12 to 14 different cities that have had similar situations between residences and the tourism and the hospitality business. And I think that what I've seen, the way that the Newport Dunes manages the noise situation, the way that they've gone through with the planning commission to mitigate the situation and come up with a solution for both the financial implications of event management and the quality of life situation with the residents, I think the planning commission has done their due diligence, and I think the dunes can manage this effectively. So I support moving forward with the recommendation of council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, mayor, thank you for hearing this issue tonight. My name is Ron Weinstein. I'm owner of Newport Beach Mediation, and I'm president of the Dover Shores Homeowners Association. And I owe Mr. Gelfend an apology because we spoke on the phone today, and I said I wasn't going to speak, and I had no intention of speaking tonight. But, sorry, Dave. The reality is, when I hear this parade of celebrities come down and speak how great the dunes are, I want you all to understand that we love the dunes. We are fans of the dunes. I've worked very closely with Michael. I think what they do for the community is wonderful. All that we are asking for is that we put controls on it so the neighborhood is not disturbed when we're putting our children to bed, which you people don't have children that you have to put to bed. We have to wake up in the morning. We have to go to work in the morning, and we're asking for a cooperative effort, which the dunes has lent themselves to. We're working very closely with them. We're very, very close. I concur with what Mrs. Jones said with respect to weeknights should be treated the same as they are in summer, in winter as they are in summer, because we do have to get up early. And once again, we're working very, very closely with the dunes. We're very close to mitigating all the noise with working with Mr. Hardisty. And as we have said very clearly, and I'll repeat it on behalf of our community, if in fact there is no disturbances, whether they reach city ordinance levels or not, whether there's no disturbances, so we can put our kids to bed, so we can have dinners, dinner on our patio, I don't care if they have 2,000 events, and I've made that very clear to Mr. Gelfend. I do, we do appreciate the dunes, we appreciate what they do, and we want to continue moving forward and progressing with them. And I believe what that takes is a slow approach to growth. They had 155 or 159 events in 2015. This number of 250, they probably won't even reach it, so that's a nice number for them. And then they've agreed to do a review, and that's what we're doing. We're going to have a review in 12 months. We're going to reestablish what we've already spoke of, and if there's no disturbances in any neighborhoods surrounding, move on and move ahead and keep growing dunes. Okay? And I do want to tell you, they are great neighbors, and they are working very hard to make this work for all of us. Thank you.
Any other speakers? All right. Counsel?
Mayor Protam?
Mayor?
I would move the action.
I second it.
I've got a question. Does that include the handout that we got that's already incorporated in that?
All right. Before we vote on it, any discussion? No need for comments?
Mayor Protam. Mayor Protam, thank you. The motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
Item 13, Community Development Block Grant.
Mayor Protam Muldoon, just one moment while we change our presentation and have staff available.
Mayor Protam Muldoon and members of the city council, this is the annual action plan for the utilization of the city's community development block grant. We have a brief presentation for the council if you'd like. Clint Whitehead is here, our CDBG consultant, and we can go through the details of the funding. If not, we recommend approval of the action plan as presented.
Any requests from council members for the presentation? All right.
Morena Ogbo, Council on Aging. I'm here just to say to the council, thank you for the proposed city block grant that you're going to be looking at for Council on Aging. We service 15 communities that are here in the Newport area, over 800 seniors that live in the Newport area in licensed facilities, and also adults with disabilities. We make sure that those individuals are safe. As you well know, the amount of eyes that the Department of Health does and CCL, which is community licensing, their budgets have been cut dramatically. So they rely on us, the state embusman, to be in these facilities and to make sure that our seniors and our adults with disabilities are safe. So thank you very much for your consideration, and see you next year.
Mayor Protam Muldoon and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. The community development block grants are a federal program, and some people at the city level kind of regard federal money as being free, but as I'm sure you appreciate, it's not free money. Taxpayers have contributed to this just through a different system, through our income tax and other federal taxes. And while it is impressive that for the $60,000 administrative fee, Mr. Whitehead each year does produce volumes and volumes of paperwork, but as it is every year, it's a little disappointing to see that it takes $60,000 to dispense $388,000, of which $162,000 is simply a routine loan payment that shouldn't really require very much administration at all to pay. One thing I noticed in this year's report that was perhaps a little different is that there is a surplus, it says, left over from last year, $28,542 that was not spent. You might wonder what that had been intended for and why it was not spent. Another thing I noticed that was new on page 13-17 of this staff report, it mentions as part of the improved process this year, the city made a special effort to outreach to low and moderate income people and actually get their opinion on what the block grant money should be spent on. So I would be curious what we learned from that effort and how it influenced this report versus other plans that we've had in previous years. What was the conclusion from that outreach? And finally, the report mentions that we're adding one new public service that we're supporting, the Council on Aging, that we just heard from. I assume that they're going in, they probably replace something else. The report does not highlight what we took out, if anything, or exactly why we made that change. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comments. All right, seeing none?
Mr. Mayor Protam?
Yes.
I would move approval of all the recommended actions.
Second. All right. Any comments on that?
Motion carries unanimously, 6-0.
All right. Item 14. Thank you, staff. Item 14, Regional Analysis of Impediments to Fair Housing Choice. I'm sorry, impediments, excuse me. Staff?
Mayor Protam Muldoon and members of the city council, this item is kind of a unique item. It's done about every five years or so. With the city's participation in the community development block grant, the city has to affirmatively further fair housing choice, which really means that we need to do what we can to combat any discrimination in the housing market. And in doing so, we prepared this analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. It's a regional effort, if you will. 16 cities participated, roughly 40% of the population of the county. And we developed, it's basically a recitation of a lot of the housing statistics that we might find in the community. It's an analysis of regulatory impediments, the housing market, the lending market, and it also concludes with a variety of recommended actions for the communities to act together as part of a regional group. And those are in the action plan at the back of the document. And there's also three items for the city to consider, and that's some changes to our zoning code potentially related to our granting unit law, reasonable accommodations, and our density bonus update that we all need to do. So what we'll do with this document if adopted this evening, and we hope that that is our recommendation this evening, is that this will be our fair housing plan for the next five years. We'll have to do this again, actually, in 2019. There'll be a new one that will have to come out based upon new regulations at that time. So we will use this as our guide going forward, and what we will do is, a lot of the programs will be will be implemented by our fair housing contractor, who we use every year, and it's funded by the block grant. We'll try to increase our education and enforcement and outreach efforts, and then we will look at those other individual actions that the Newport Beach needs to look at, the zoning amendments, as I indicated. Well, that's my presentation. The document is quite big, but we feel it's a pretty good accomplishment that the 16 cities were able to work together. And this was, by doing so, we actually saved quite a bit of money. I think the city's participation was close to $10,000 out of a $200,000 effort. If we had done this alone without the other cities involved, it probably would have been far more expensive than that. But with that, I'll answer any questions the council may have, and we recommend adoption of the document.
Well, thank you. Thank you for your efficiency. Questions from council?
Mayor Protam.
Yes.
Just real quickly, one, I actually read it, and I was very impressed with how it did cover the whole of the South County area, but I could find places, toeholds for Newport Beach. And I also am encouraged by the three recommendations for reconsiderations in our zoning code. I think that we should move forward with that. So with that in mind, Mayor Protam, I will move the action.
All right. Any other comments from council before I go to public comments? Okay. Let's briefly go to public comments.
Thank you again, Mayor Protam Muldoon. My name is Jim Mosher, and I do have a very brief comment. There was mention of the updating the zoning code regarding the density bonus units, which is apparently a county-wide effort, but there is the unique aspect in Newport Beach that with our green light measure, we keep track of how many residential units we add. And I think there's a somewhat open question of how the bonus units figure into that calculation. I know that the staff has an argument that they should not count towards the green light limits, but I assume there's an argument on the other side as well. There almost always is. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments?
The motion carries unanimously, six zero.
Thank you. On to current business.
Mr. Mayor Protam and council members, this next item is only on your current business because it's a large dollar item involving a contract for retrofitting of LED streetlights. We have a staff presentation if you'd like one. If you don't, certainly entertain your questions.
Second.
All right. Public comments?
Motion carries unanimously, six zero.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Kiff. Item 16?
Similarly, on item 16, it's a large dollar item involving the processing of our parking enforcement program, including citations. It is a new vendor for us. Went to a bid process. We welcome your comments if you would like a staff report. Dan and Steve are here to provide that.
Counsel? Seeing no requests? Public comments? Seeing none?
Second.
Mr. Mayor Protam.
Yes.
Couple of questions for staff. You've got shown in here that we're going to have an additional cost of $130,000, but what is the net cost or savings? Or is this the net cost?
We have to look at the revenue side as well. So if you factor in revenues, revenues are also increasing. We project that they'll also increase due to better collections. The net cost would be about $114,000 in the first year and approximately an additional $60,000 thereafter. That's our rough estimate.
Again, okay, so that's the cost side. Compare that to the, our income, so I have a net?
Right. So that is the net. So it's higher revenues, higher expense, and the net between the two, if you were to factor in what's left of revenue after you factor in the additional expenditure, it's about $114,000 in the first year, $60,000.
Okay. So the $130 goes to $114 when we count it as a net, and then the next year it goes down to 60.
That's right.
Explain real quick about how we've got three or four databases and what this is going to do.
Certainly. So over time, it's been 10 years since we started automating through electronic means our parking enforcement administrative citation process. It started back in 2005. Back then, the technology was such that systems were available in disparate databases. So we have an administrative and parking citation database. We have a collections database. We have a database that tracks the tickets that we write, so it's not very integrated. And we acquired these systems over time, starting in 2005. Now we're at a point where they're really not talking to one another, given the state of current technology. It's slow for both staff and customers, people who are trying to pay their citations or get permits. The system is really slow, and now we found a solution where it's all under one roof. It's an integrated system that allows us to process these things much more efficiently.
And it'll talk to our new financial software, and that's one of the key upgrades that we're getting.
That's right. We can integrate and build an interface to our new finance system.
Thank you very much. Call a question?
Okay.
Motion carries unanimously, six zero.
All right. Madam Clerk?
Motion for reconsideration. A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
All right. We are adjourned.[1776.97]